All right, everybody, we're ready? All right, so, welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I think we'll begin with roll call. Oh, and by the way, one of our supervisors is not in attendance today, so we'll be doing our votes through a roll call vote process.
He's not in attendance?
Yes, he's not in here in person.
Okay, good morning. We'll go with Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Supervisor Bass.
Present.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
And Supervisor Bone.
Here.
Perfect. All right, thank you, Nikki. So now we'll do our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. We are just one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm saluting all flags today. Anyone who's watching, half of my hearing is out, so it's a little bit affecting things. All right, so before we move on to modifications of the agenda, I just wanted to remind people, if you are at home and you wish to make comment on any of the items today, you'll call the number that's on your screen and press star nine to raise your hand. Once you raise your hand, you want to turn your volume off on whatever you're watching us on, because there's a time delay, and people have been missing their opportunity to comment, because they're not understanding that, and it is callers' opportunity, it's their responsibility to follow that process, because we don't know they're there if their hands aren't up, and then when we go back to the board, we do not go back to public comment. So at this time, I'll ask our CIO if there's modifications to the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bass. There are no modifications to the agenda today.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to the departmental reports. The first one comes to us from the CIO's office, and it's to discuss the censure of Karen Paz Dominguez, the auditor controller. Oh, and before we go to staff, I did want to say, this is the first one, this is the first time we've done this, because we have a new process for this type of experience. So I just wanted to explain how we're going to, how I'm going to try to do this similar to an appeal process, because that's something that we have that's an existing process. So we'll go to the staff. I think we can go to the board for questions. If the auditor is wanting to make comment, then we will turn it over to Ms. Paz Dominguez. We'll get public comment. We'll close the public comment period. We will then come back to the board. At that point in time, if, you know, there'll be a short rebuttal if Ms. Paz Dominguez wishes to do so, and then we will go to the board, and then at that point, the only interaction coming from the auditor would be if asked a direct question by any of the board members. So I just wanted to kind of explain how we're hoping to do that today. So, yes.
Thank you, Chair Bass. On March 22nd, your board met in closed session to discuss written communication of potential litigation regarding actions of the Humboldt County Auditor Controller. Your board unanimously approved release of the closed session update regarding workplace misconduct findings against the Auditor Controller, and directed staff to schedule a special meeting for today to discuss a potential censure of the Auditor Controller. In June 2021, your board authorized a fact-finding investigation into multiple allegations of workplace misconduct and delayed payments by the Auditor Controller. The investigator made sustained findings and determined that it was more than likely than not that the following behaviors took place. That Karen Paz Dominguez has engaged in retaliatory harassing and/or bullying behaviors in the exercise of her duties as an elected Auditor Controller. That Karen Paz Dominguez's financial decisions resulted in increased staff workload and financial losses to the county. In addition, workplace misconduct findings were also found from a separate investigation in 2018, and the current investigation also made findings regarding delayed transactions and reports, which have been discussed publicly by your board on numerous occasions over the past several years. Before your board today, as an item to consider a censure of the Auditor Controller, Karen Paz Dominguez.
Thank you, CIO Hayes. Any questions from the board members? Do we happen to have the Auditor Controller Paz Dominguez on the feed?
Chair Bass, I don't see her in the panelist.
All right, well, please do keep an eye out. So then, we will go to public comment, and before we go to public comment, I would say, press star nine now, if you haven't, if you're listening at home. We'll go to those on the phone first, and then when we have finished those on the phone, we'll go to those who are in person today. Yeah, Supervisor Bone?
On the, Ms. CIO Hayes, on the first part of the complaint, the retaliatory and harassing or bullying behavior in the exercise of her duties as elected controller and financial decisions resulting in an increased staff workload and financial losses to the county, the investigator, those aren't from the 2018 report. Those are more current, right?
Correct.
Okay, because I, and I just, I don't know if this is the place, but I, there's a, I was sent a YouTube video this morning that Ms. Paz Dominguez did yesterday, or posted yesterday, or whatever. Basically, it seemed demeaning to the person that made the complaints in 2018 from the 59-page report, because there was so much redaction, because we protect the employees' rights utmost because of retaliatory behavior by any official or anything like that. So I don't know, I was kind of disturbed by it, because it's almost looked like an election platform statement, but I just, I don't know. So I just want to make sure, the first two findings alone, the one where we've suffered staff workload and financial, you know, and financial loss to the county, and the bullying retaliation that we've heard so much about, or, you know, heard about, those are much more current than the 2018 report. The 2018 report is just the third leg of it, right?
Both reports reference retaliatory behaviors, bullying behaviors, and abusive conduct. The most recent report in 2021 specifically addresses financial implications.
Okay, I just, all right, thank you very much.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. CIO Hayes, can you explain what a vote of censure means?
Sure. A vote of censure is your board's opportunity to publicly reprimand the Auditor Controller for her behaviors, which have, are viewed as abusive and retaliatory towards staff. So being an elected official, your board has minimal ability to pursue progressive discipline, or you are not able to terminate or do any of those sorts of things. So this is, your board's saying publicly that you don't agree with the way that the Auditor Controller interacts with staff, and believe her to be, in violation of our abusive conduct policy.
Did you have another question? And then, and I have a question after Supervisor Bone.
And I just, we always, we've heard the same thing about things not being done, is staffing, and, and I know that we have increased staffing. I know that we've lost quite a few people with a lot of years of seniority over there. So I'm just, is this, does the report say, because we don't have a copy of the, does the report mention the problem with staffing that office because of the behaviors? Is it just because of the media, or is it, I'm just, I'm just saying, we've, I think we've increased staffing over there 40% more than the previous Auditor Controller, and we don't seem to be filling the positions. It seems to be a revolving door, actually.
I can only speak to that anecdotally. Our Human Resources Department hasn't been conducting exit interviews. That is something we've been discussing in the future, so that we can have data behind why staff might be leaving employment with the county. So, you know, just anecdotally, there have been indications that some staff members have left, because it's an environment that they don't see as healthy for themselves.
Thank you.
All right, so Supervisor Bushnell had more questions, and we're gonna, I'm gonna let you ask whatever questions you have, and then we can move on to the others, so that we make sure that we don't accidentally cut anybody off.
Thank you. I just have one clarifying question through the chair to CIO Hayes. The action of a censure is that the only appropriate thing that could come from our discussion as far as this, this item?
For today's, for today's discussion, yes, a censure is what is before your board. The other avenue available to your board to publicly express concern would be a vote of no confidence, which your board did discuss back in November. A vote of no confidence is more centered around the conduct of performing the vital functions of that office, like completing the audit, getting the cash reconciliations done, doing the cost allocation plan, portioning interest. The, a vote of no confidence would say, we don't believe that you're able to do the core functions of your job, where a vote of censure is more based on actions.
Thank you.
All right, I want a follow-up to what Supervisor Bushnell's first question, and when you were explaining the minimal ability and to do anything with progressive discipline, which I can, I understand that's not something we could do. Haven't we, though, through the years, brought in different coaching mechanisms? And can you tell me, can you just mention some of the different things we have tried? Because the way I look at this over the long term, that would have been what we would have offered to a staff that we, as part of progressive discipline. So to me, there was still a plan, but it was not something that we could force. Is that the, because I do believe there was some expertise brought in to try to help.
Correct, yeah. For many years now, I have tried, and the prior CIO, Amy Nielsen, has attempted to, you know, provide leadership guidance to the Auditor Controller. We worked pretty closely with her early in her tenure to prioritize work tasks. We also consulted with, you know, professional training services. Louisa Rogers is one that comes to mind. I believe she worked with her whole staff. We've sought out mentors for her. Your board has expended extensive funds for MCAUS, Jenny and O'Connell, also known as MGO, to help provide guidance to the office and to help develop sound financial policies, and to help complete some of the outstanding tasks that that office has. So I would say that your board and my office has gone to great lengths to provide resources and coaching to the Auditor Controller.
All right, and my other question is, my understanding is, there's also coaching that's being received from a firm that was not something that went through the normal contract process, and I don't know what we know about that, but my understanding was that was to help improve communication skills? And I don't know if you can provide any more information on what that, what is supposed to come from that contract?
No, I haven't been privy to a contract and what the stipulations of a contract would be. As the purchasing agent, that is typically something that would be run through my office, but that hasn't. However, the Auditor Controller has publicly stated that she has procured coaching services through EdgeCaliber. She was also conducting a payroll think tank to try to improve communication surrounding payroll, and Danny Kelly, who is owner or partner in EdgeCaliber, facilitated those through this work that he is helping her with. I have also been meeting one-on-one with the Auditor Controller for a couple weeks, and she has indicated to me that there is a tool that EdgeCaliber is helping her to develop to track payroll processes. So that's, I have minimal knowledge of what that work looks like, but these are some of my firsthand experiences.
It is ironic that it didn't go through the normal contract process, but I understand that I don't know all the information. So any other questions from supervisors? Supervisor Bone?
I wasn't sure about that, but is that the same Danny Kelly that's head of the Democratic Central Committee?
I'm not sure if that's pertinent to this.
Oh.
I think most people know the answer, if you want. Yes, it is the same Danny Kelly. I'll, I'll tell you that. So with that, Supervisor Wilson have his hand up, since I can't see him?
No, Chair Bass, he does not.
Anything, Supervisor Madron, before we go to public comment? All right, and so today, Nikki, I'm looking for speakers. I don't see any hands up from the public. Do you have any?
There are no hands up, no.
All right, well, we do not have any public comment coming in, so we will close off public comment on the phone. Are there any members of the public who are here in person that wish to comment at this Welcome, DA Fleming.
Good morning.
Can I tell you that's sad to see you leave, by the way?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I think this is a sad proceeding that we're at, and I know that most people would rather we not be here, and obviously, this is a very difficult process for the board to go through. I should start by saying that I greatly respect the mission of the Auditor Controller to ensure that county dollars are properly spent, and I have, I have worked very hard to support Ms. Paz Dominguez in that mission. We developed a relationship that I considered well-founded on candor and mutual respect, beginning when she was the Assistant Auditor Controller. I was happy to communicate with her. We had frank discussions on the challenges the heads of county departments can face when they must improve on institutional processes and face resistance to change. When significant problems in completing the Auditor Controller's duties arose, I was happy to communicate with Karen one-on-one, and also in a small group of other department heads that volunteered to provide advice. I also loaned the Auditor Controller's Office a highly capable staff person and placed no limits on their time for doing Auditor Controller assignments, and the Auditor Controller even chose the person she wanted from my office. The only issue I have is the need for the Office of the Auditor Controller to get things done. In an effort to safeguard taxpayer dollars, reasonableness needs to apply, and here's a regrettable negative experience. Assets seized by law enforcement officers that they believe are related to the sales of drugs are placed in a trust. If the person originally in possession of these assets can show that they came from a legitimate source, we return the money. It's understood. If we don't have sufficient proof, the money goes back. It's a court-ordered process. Under the current Auditor Controller, these simple actions became very problematic, because the Auditor Controller's Office questioned why the money would go back. We sent multiple emails explaining that it's a straightforward, court-ordered process, but it took many months for Auditor Controller actions on asset forfeiture to become reasonably efficient. In another example related to asset forfeiture, we set up a program to distribute a proportion of seized funds. It's supposed to be 15% of all funds seized are to go back into the community to support groups and organizations that promote keeping children off drugs, positive activities for children. We went to the board to have them set up a trust fund account specifically for this last July, and then it was moved to the Auditor Controller's Office to establish that. We've sent emails reminding and asking for this, and it has yet to be completed. It's $164,000 that would be crucial to families and nonprofits that maybe want to have a program for art in Southern Humboldt, or sports in Riedel, or any other of these areas that could desperately use this fund.
Hey, Maggie, what I thought I'd do is, after we're done with the public comment portion, I'll go back and for staff to speak, because I think there's more. So if there's more you wanted to add, can I just have you wait a couple moments, just to see if there's anyone in the public who's not a member of the staff who wanted to speak?
Yes.
I mean, all right, so, apparently not. Maggie, if you want to come back up, we're going, we're going back to the board now. And so I believe DA Fleming, there's, we'd like to hear some more, please.
Thank you.
Like I said, this is the new process.
I just, I just want to say, you know, we've had this conversation now multiple times and multiple places. I am 100% in favor of protecting taxpayer dollars, and our office will prosecute any county employees who steal or otherwise misuse county funds. But I think any actual misuse of funds will be most efficiently discovered by paying particular attention to processes where it most likely could occur, while recognizing that many of the processes that we have as county government agencies are very straightforward, and they're in fact as straightforward as they appear. Clearly, the current situation needs improvement. I think that's going to happen by focusing on facts and evidence, not by broad-brush accusations. For example, I did not appreciate the broad-brush accusation that county department heads have encouraged individual employees within their departments to complain. I would never do that, because I only want to improve the situation, not feed damaging conflict. On the other hand, I respect the right of individual employees to express their concerns about issues that affect them, such as whether or not they're getting paid. I stand ready to continue to contribute resources from the District Attorney's Office to allow the county to move forward and complete the necessary tasks we must do to keep the government of Humboldt County running. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, do any questions for the DA when she's up here? Oh, all right. Is there another department head that would like to come forward? Welcome, Director Ford.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford, Director of Planning and Building. I do regret having to be here this morning. This is not an enjoyable experience, but I do want to share a little bit with you some perspectives from the Planning and Building Department. First of all, we have worked very hard to not get embroiled in some of the negativity that has gone on. The staff has worked very hard to try to work collaboratively with the Auditor Controller's Office, and has never taken any other approach. So it's difficult when there is implications that behavior is fraudulent. And in the PRA that was released, there was one entry in there that was from the Planning and Building Department as evidence of fraud. This was the payment of a plan check for a building department plan check. We have an agreement with the plan checker to conduct plan checks, and we went back and forth with the Auditor Controller's Office several times, this is in the PRA, explaining to them why the fees were what they were. Basically, the plan checker gets 75% of the fee we collect for a plan check. They couldn't understand why it wasn't itemized by hour. That's not how the fee works. It's just a simple payment, 75% of the plan check fee. I'd also like to bring up that we're about to enter into another budget cycle. Since 2019, our fund balances have not been brought forward, have not been updated. We're about to develop a budget estimating what our fund balances are. We haven't been able to reconcile that for three years now. I'd also like to point out that the lack of a single audit is delaying receipt of CDVG funds. There's $4.4 million that are due to come into the county. They have said that we're not getting that until that single-point audit is completed. We're also not going to be in a position to apply for more money while that single-point audit is not completed. This may seem a little bit tiki-tacky, but it does bring up part of the struggle that we have in terms of additional workload. And that is, we unknowingly did not address departed employees in executive time, the payroll service is no longer working here. We'd completed all the paperwork with HR, but then, weeks afterwards, found out that they were still being paid. And nobody informed us that what we needed to do was go back into departed, for departed employees, and indicate that departed employees had not worked, otherwise, they got paid. So now, not only do we have employees that are still on the payroll, because they got overpaid, and they can't be taken off the books, but our staff, our payroll staff, has to go in every single pay period and identify that departed employees didn't work that pay period.
Director Ford, is that a new process?
It was to us.
Okay.
Then I'd just like to bring up something that's a little bit more current, which is the DCC grant that we got from the state. We've given $14.3 million to the Treasury's Office, because we're going to allocate that money. For several months, we've been in communication with the AC's Office to determine, how is it that they want to distribute that? What do they need from us? Let's set up a process ahead of time, so that that can be done. We have received no response. We have sent now four emails over a period of several months, asking for guidance in terms of what they want to see done, so that people can receive the money that's being allocated. We received no assistance in understanding what it is that they want or need to disperse that money. And then before I go on too long, I'll just close on one personal note. I personally still do not have a correct W-2 form. It is now April 4th, 11 days before my taxes are due. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ford. I do understand, we'll go to the phone, I understand that, yeah, several people thankfully are telling me that Tom Mattson has his hand up in Zoom, because I can't get it, but I'll go to, do you mind, Tom, waiting until, I'll go to those on Zoom after we finish those in the public, okay?
Yep.
All right, so we're gonna have, I didn't want to tell the sheriff to go sit back down.
I'll sit back down.
It's all right. You're here now.
Thank you, Chair Bass, board. This is, again, a very difficult discussion to have, but it's very, very relevant in the current climate that we're in today. And so I'm happy that you are taking this on. It's always difficult to take on an issue with, with a colleague, with a subordinate, when they're failing to do their job. We have expectations going forward. We all have a job to do and a duty to protect the county and the county finances, and to be able, we can function as a county. And like has been previously stated, we are in budget times, and this is going to be the third budget cycle now, that we're going to go to without knowing what the bottom line is. And as the biggest draw on the general fund through the Sheriff's Office and all of our programs, we're going to have a very, very, very difficult time trying to put our numbers together, because we don't know how much money we actually have. This is a problem for someone failing to close the books for the, for the second year in a row, and here we are, trying to manage a county. How is anyone able to do this? And so it is about time that your board takes this on. We've kicked this can down the road far too long. Something needs to happen. Before payroll was shifted back to the Auditor Controller, you had a lot of county employees that talked about their concerns, and honest concerns about things in the Auditor's Office that just weren't getting done. And then the board put payroll on top of this, and now we've seen the effects, that still, things aren't getting done, and now payroll is even worse than it was before. So something needs to happen, and you, as a board, need to do whatever you need to do to reestablish some consistencies, making sure our bills get paid, making sure our vendors are properly paid, making sure our trust funds are properly taken care of. There are several things that we've tried to do over the Auditor's Office, establish trust funds, get bills paid, contracts done, and things just don't happen. One of the things that I don't also appreciate is, if there is some, some questions about how, how things are being spent, I don't want to hear about it in public. That's inappropriate. I expect a meeting, an email, a report issued, so we can have a chance to address that. Before this last public spectacle of fraud that was brought out regarding the Auditor's Office, I asked Karen, Karen, I hear there's a report coming out. Can you please let me know if there's anything with the Sheriff's Office that, that you're going to push out? going to push out to the board or the press? I would like to know ahead of time so I can be prepared. And there was nothing, no response back. And so that's unprofessional. And as a department head to department head, elected official, elected official, it's really not necessary because our goal should be to, if there is a question, if there is something wrong, we want to correct it, take corrective action. That's a part of what we all do. I'm not here to say that there's no flaws in the county, okay? There's always room for change, process improvement and those kind of things, and I'm on board with that. I've been on board with that from the very beginning. As soon as I took over office, I wanted to be a part of that, be effective change. But you have to have change together. You have to have a collective agreement with people to want to move forward. I was, along with Maggie and some other department heads, with Karen from the very beginning, trying to help and try to offer assistance. We're one of the ones that pushed forward personnel to her office to help with no time restriction. We want to help. And, and I think over the last two years, we all know, going through the pandemic, we've all had to give up a lot. We all had to take on more responsibilities because of the pandemic. I had to manage an emergency, you know, we had 100 tom-odd county workers at the EOC, and we all had to still do our jobs. And yet, we still got things done at the Sheriff's Office. And so the Auditor's Office should be able to navigate this and should be able to do it. If they needed help, they should have asked for help. And I think just based upon the need for more staffing, MGO, you've offered everything possible. So now it's time to remove some of those responsibilities and time to allow others to get in there to do the job. I also want to say that the amount of stress and pressure the Auditor's Office has put on my employees, I've had one employee quit, quit, others have gone out on sick leave, stress time. Because of all that stress and pressure the Auditor Controller's put on my staff, and it really is unacceptable. So please do your job today and, and, and let's make some changes that's going to better the county. Thank you.
All right, I know we have Director Matson on. Do we have any other department heads on? All right, so Director Matson?
Thank you Chair Bass, members of the board. Again, I want to repeat what the others have said, this is, I've never seen this in my 24 years. This is a very, very sad day. Again, our department has tried to help the Auditor Controller however, whenever, and we continue to be open to helping her do what she needs to do. The biggest issue that Public Works has is the lack of a single audit. Because of that, I don't have an indirect cost rate plan. Because of that, we have calculated, we have left $674,000 on the table that could have come into the department. We have a hold on $200,000 for basic maintenance that was issued by the, most of our funding comes through Caltrans because we don't have the single audit. They are withholding all new funding, which is extremely scary to the department because as you are aware, the biggest bipartisan infrastructure bill that I have ever seen is sitting out there getting ready to roll out programs. It has new programs for electric vehicle charging stations that we need throughout the county. It has a new program for complete street projects, and it has an enhanced, a huge enhancement for the safety program, let alone all the other things that it has in there. We need to be able to access those funds for the community of Humboldt County. We can, our roads are not in good enough shape to not have every dime that we can lay our hand on. And so we need those single audits done, and whatever you can do to help out doing that, we would appreciate. Again, my department stands ready for this positive, to help this positive in this in any way that we can, but something has to shake loose here. Those audits need to get done. Thank you.
Thank you Director Ford. And before I go to the board, I do want to, I'd like to, is there any other hands up from the board? I mean, not the board, directors? I don't see any. So a couple of questions I had, I, I think some of the comments we heard were probably more in line with performance of duties, but they're also in line with the fact that when people ask if something's getting done, there's a lot of, I've witnessed hostility quite frequently myself come through. So, but I'm thinking, I just wanted to ask before we have this conversation, I want to ask the CAO, one of the other things we can do is remove some responsibilities and duties from the Auditor's Office. That's not something we can do today with this ensure, correct?
Correct, yeah. That is, that's not a decision point for your board. But as you know, we have been discussing an operational realignment of payroll, which was supposed to be agendized for tomorrow. However, we have been struggling with time and getting everything completed, and I wanted to be sure that the auditor had ample time to review that. So that will come at the meeting of next week. But that is an opportunity to, you know, potentially start to remove some of the unmandated functions from the Auditor Controller's Office.
And then, and I guess that would be my other one is, I would like to see, I don't know if I could come back, maybe not for discussion, but a list of what are some of the other, if we have to start shipping away to help improve what's going on. Okay, thank you. Any supervisors have questions? Supervisor Madron?
Thank you Chair Bass. Not so much questions, just wanted to make a quick comment. I think as others have said, you know, life is stressful. This is not, not a fun thing for anybody. Last couple of years have also been very difficult for all of us. I think we recognize that. And we also know that conflict happens, you know, it's just something that is pretty much guaranteed in life that it's going to happen, and we all make mistakes, all of us. I think really what's most important is that it's critical that we treat each other with respect, and also all of our staff, they deserve that respect. And even when we may have differing opinions about things, which are going to happen, right? But when we can respect those different opinions, find a way to move forward, we're so much better for it. We really can't change others' behaviors, but we can change our own. That's really where we have the greatest potential to change things. So the way forward is pretty clear. Own our mistakes, apologize for inappropriate behavior, and work to resolve conflict and seek conflict resolution wherever we can. It is my hope that we can all move forward to resolve conflict and get our work done to serve our community. So that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. And before I go to Supervisor Bone, I do Supervisor Wilson's hand.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
We can even see you now.
Oh, you can even see me, there you go, out here in the woods. I have a question for CAO, and it's just the timeline for what we're talking about today, which is the, the complaint, the investigation, and when we received the results to that investigation and kind of where we're at. Can you just kind of go through the timeline of that quickly?
21. Yes, so the, as referenced in the staff report, in, in 2018 was when the first investigation was conducted. In June, I believe it was June, let me double check my notes, June of 2021, your board asked for an additional fact-finding investigation to take place. That investigation was completed, Jefferson's checking right now, but I think, I think that was late January or, or February that investigation was completed. It was a lengthy investigation. There were many staff involved, a lot of data and email correspondences to sift through, and then the investigator also had a family, family emergency. It came in in March. We got the investigation in early March. And then we agendized that for closed session to discuss with your board on March 22nd. And then that finds us here today.
Okay. And actually, the investigation was promulgated from a letter that we received. I mean, wasn't that the, sort of the, the basis of the beginning of that, of our current investigation in terms of, you know, threatened litigation?
No, well, the threat of litigation came from staff late last year, which was in part why, why your board had a public discussion for a vote of no confidence. This investigation was initiated, I believe, because we were getting letters from outside vendors. I think maybe Arcade of Fire was one of the catalysts behind that because they were met with challenges in processing their transactions. They hold their funds in our treasury. And then we had a bit of an onslaught of staff complaints. The investigation from 2021 includes seven different staff members who had complained in a short period of time, and so that, all of that was wrapped together for one comprehensive investigation.
And it is a little, I mean, under nor, what I would consider normal circumstances, by meaning a non-elected, we would do this in closed session. We wouldn't have had that discussion. We would do what today, what we're having today in closed session, but, but, but what we did was elect to get, give authority to our HR department to do that investigation in a public forum. And maybe Jefferson can outline why, why that was different than, and, you know, with any time we've done that before.
Yes, through the chair. There have been prior matters that have been looked into that had been initiated through the HR and risk management, but that process was objected to by an attorney representing the Auditor Controller. So this investigation was launched by your board. And also delegated that authority to the risk manager specifically and directed employees to participate.
In a public process as opposed to in a closed session?
Yes, so there was a record that that was initiated and authorized by your board.
Right, okay. All right, I appreciate, I just wanted to get that timeline and sort of the framework around the actual item on the agenda today and speak to that. The, you know, we heard comments from, from department heads, and I can tell you, I've heard comments from employees and others relative to both communications, behaviors, and then also processes associated with the Auditor Controller's Office. I've heard, I've also talked to the Auditor Controller in the past many times about many of these issues. There's definitely a lot of things happening in, in many directions, but we're really talking about one issue today, and, and this is the venue that we talk about it, which is relationship to complaints specifically by employees and others related to what's in, what basically came out of that investigation. And so, you know, speaking to that, we have employees that need that, you know, protection, and they need the, a representation in that regard. And, and again, we wouldn't be doing this in open session unless it was an elected and it would be a different process. It's, 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 within this institution, there are a lot of things that we are always working on to try and correct, to try and move forward. We're always trying to make our processes not just more secure, but more efficient. I mean, we are an institution that, and we are an agency that delivers and helps other agencies deliver services to our most vulnerable populations, to deliver services to everybody, including infrastructure and health and human services, and mental health, and everything you could imagine really to hold civil society together. And while there's a lot of criticisms about this as what we do, we all are trying to work really hard to address those criticisms without being corrosive. Because this, as local governance, this is the way we as, as society, you know, try to benefit one another and everybody as a collective to help us survive on this planet and move forward and help our communities thrive. And so we're in a, we're talking about this today because something has become corrosive, and, and, and that is, that's, that's part of what we're trying to address. And so I just, I think it's, we're, we, this is, this is tough. This is tough, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this, and I'm, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone, you had your supervisor Bushnell, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm not gonna, I probably won't be as eloquent as our two former, yeah, we all got to get along, but at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for Humboldt County. And I just heard some of the, some department heads that control the biggest part of our general fund budget. And I know, they said they want to give help. They have all given help. They've all sent people to the Auditor Controller's Office to help. I speak from a, a different aspect because on March 1st, there were six allegations made against me personally, not to a department, not to the Board of Supervisors, but Rex Bone. And I begged at the next meeting, I begged, I wanted those to be turned over to the Attorney General, to our District Attorney, because if we're going to talk transparency, that's what I wanted to see. There were allegations of me pushing permits through, I don't know what we permit through the Auditor Controller's Office. There was allegations about me diverting tax refunds or something to that effect. And then there were also three allegations that had been made previously by the Auditor Controller, and there was $23,000 spent on an investigation that was unsubstantiated. Why was it unsubstantiated? Because we had a video of it. But when I made, when those accusations were made against me, I sat for three months as they did the investigation, not knowing what was going to come out and where it was going to come from. So I have, I have lived through those retaliatory things. But when somebody controls who gets paid, vendors get paid, I get calls from vendors wanting to get paid. These are our local vendors. I can name off a lot of local vendors that have closed all our county accounts because they can't afford to give us the discount and wait for the money. And that tends to affect us all because that affects us because our local vendors aren't getting the money, and they're not doing the business, so their employees aren't getting the benefit of increased revenue to the business they work for, which in turn may include layoffs. But we can sit here, I think one of the department heads has kicked the can down the road. This has been a problem for three years now, and I'm hearing, well, if we all get along, we'll fix it. There's no getting along. The pattern of behavior is here. We turned in a report with two hours to go that was demanded by the Attorney General, which we haven't got back, to the SCO's office. I sat here and asked four or five weeks ago, did, was the auditor, or the Attorney General's and the SCO letters sent to her by mistake? And I heard, yes, they are. I've talked to the SCO team, and they are. They think it just passed because we're on a list. Yeah, I'm on a list, I guess, because the next day, the Attorney General said, no, I meant to send them, you need to get those in. So we have an obligation to the people of Humboldt County, and I have brought this up over and over. I've got three emails over the weekend, four emails regarding payroll issues. I've got one email, well, I got one text because they were afraid to send it on an email about issues they were having with getting something done out of the office because they didn't want to be retaliated against. That's, that's a common theme. It's a common theme. Where there's smoke, there's fire. So I think if we do not show respect to our employees getting paid, to our employees that are being retaliated against, to our employees that are sending out, now we're paying people to send, we heard four, five, six emails with no response. No response. Who's, whose budget's that coming out of? That department for no response? I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I would love to get along, and I think it, it needs to go, but we never had these problems before. I'm not saying that was the greatest department in the world, but they had good people in there, who are, a lot of them are gone. So I would, I agree with Supervisor Madron 100%. We could all change our attitudes. We could all act better, but right now, we're talking about one issue. talking about one issue, one department that is creating and one department head that has created a situation that we're having some of our most respected department heads painfully come up to this podium and say, we have an issue and they're telling us to do our job. So I think that's what we do. So, I'm not sure exactly where that takes us, but I, my respect for those department heads that stepped up, thank you, because I know that wasn't easy. Because you have an utmost respect for the county. And you have spoken out repeatedly. John Bartholomew, you didn't speak today, but you usually won't say nothing. And you have just the frustration with your staff and you yourself, and then you being questioned, your, your expertise being questioned, has just raised my hackles up like no tomorrow. So, I'm going to respect the people that deserve it. Thank you.
So before I go to Supervisor Bushnell, I do want to remind us, we're not voting on performance issues today, but we are, what we were talking about today is more of the hostility in the workplace. But we will bring, I, I understand, it causes the hostility. I totally, I don't need, yeah, I understand that.
The performance of calling me out personally six times on the courthouse steps with media there.
Okay, that's not, okay Supervisor Bone, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about work not getting done, that kind of performance. And I agree with you. So I've asked staff to bring that back. I'd like to see what duties we can strip besides what we're going to do today. And we do have a motion that's a potential motion of moving forward to the censure, but Supervisor Bushnell? I mean, no, we don't have a motion. We could have a motion. We have a suggested language when we get there.
Thank you through the chair. So my question, I believe Supervisor Bass just answered, and I was going to ask COA Hayes. I, I've heard the comments about performance and have heard the department heads speak. And being new to the board, I've had to dive in from the, when I got elected, this was a very hot issue, still continuing forward, and have talked to most of the department heads about their frustrations and have gotten lots of emails and communications from staff regarding all of those issues, which make a lot of stress in the workplace. But my question specifically is, we're not voting on performance today. We're voting on her, how she treats staff. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And I just want to say to, also to department heads, I feel your frustrations and it is a, it creates such a terrible stressful workplace when you don't know whether you're going to get answers, whether you're going to get an email back, whether you can get into the office. And also to have your integrity questioned is not anything very comfortable to go through.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you Chair Bass. I just, yeah, I do want to bring it back around. This is about a censure about the findings of a particular investigation. That's what we're talking about today. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of connectivity between the performance and all the other issues that people brought up, including issues associated with things that are outside the investigation. But it seems to me, what's on the agenda today is the investigation and whether or not the findings of the investigation rise to the level of a censure and the language of the censure in the resolution. So, I just want to say that I'm supportive of, of that. And, and hopefully we can get going on that. Thanks.
Supervisor Bushnell, did you have your hand up? I know Supervisor Bone did. So I just want, okay Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I didn't mean to cloudy up the water, but I'm just, I'm looking, the second bullet point of the resolution is Karen Paz Dominguez's financial decisions resulted in increased staff workload and financial losses to the county. I think that pertains to what I was, you know, the overall, I mean, that, that goes to work performance also. I know, I don't know if that was meant to be in there. But this is what, this is the hand we're dealt. And this is, this is, I'm looking at the resolution. I just want to make sure that should be in there. So I know where I'm going on this. But I am, but I do stick with the retaliatory. We heard that from all the department heads, so.
And that's a good question that you just brought up. CAO Hayes, can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, that is contained in today's board report, an item specifically detailing financial decisions and the impacts that's had on the organization. I, and I think that your board is correct, that this is a nexus to some of the challenges we're having because a lot of the aggressive correspondences and frustration in this organization comes from staff who are trying to do their jobs and are, are met with an approach that is not adherent to the values of our organization. Also, a vote of no confidence is an option before your board, along with a vote of censure and stripping of responsibilities. So if your board would like to discuss a vote of no confidence, you can ask for staff to agendize that and return at a later date where we will have a conversation, you know, somewhat similar to this one.
That's what my understanding was. So, to see changes, we just have to have, I mean, if we want to request perhaps other duties being moved or discuss another vote of no confidence, we just have to re-agenda, we have to agendize that for another meeting. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. CO, COA Hayes, there were how many complaints filed?
The 2018 report contains three complainants. The 2021 report contains seven complainants.
And out of, so 11, I believe, out of, or 10, out of that, thanks. How many were substantiated?
They were all substantiated.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We've had a lot of discussion. I'm just wondering if there's interest in moving forward with the motion, which would be adoption of resolution regarding censure of Karen Paz Dominguez auditor controller. It's fairly simple. Is there a board member that would care to make that motion?
I'd like to
I'd make the motion, except I
You can.
I know, but I'd prefer
I'd like, I'd like to ask the question and this is, and, and I can make it, just it's, but then it's me making it. And I've been attacked personally already. But my, my, my biggest thing with this, I spent some time looking back over a whole bunch of old, old, all the way back to 2010 meetings. Joe Mallett, previous, and even back to Jacobi, they were never in, we never had any of these problems. And we have so many issues facing us, so many issues facing us, both with our children, both with mental health. What happened in Sacramento breaks my heart because we all spend a lot of time down there and this could happen here. And we're sitting here, an organization with a $500 million budget, 2,200 employees, and week after week, we're sitting here about the same thing. And I can't believe it is all us that is the problem. And I, I don't belong to a political group, so I can't, well, I guess the good old boy club, but we're gotten unorganized, I guess. But what I'm saying is, is we spend so much time on this one effort, which is mean getting our vendors paid, our employees paid, and them having a safe and comfortable workplace. We had, we've had 10 complaints. Do you know how many of those, do you know how many more complaints there would be if they weren't afraid of stepping up because of retaliatory behavior? It starts going up. And I've said this so many times, I have had so many employees in my office with tears in their eyes because of the way they've been treated. And I feel like I would be dropping the ball. So, I'm going to make the motion.
Are you sure? I'll do it if you want.
No, I'll make the motion to staff's recommendation. I'm not going to add anything more about another vote of no confidence. I'm not, because we're going to waffle and say we all got to change and all this stuff. Because we're just throwing stuff against the wall to see what, look at the facts, listen to the people that we respect, and go from there. But I'm tired of this. I, I want, I want to build some houses so we can, so the Cal Poly, the wind farm, and the fish plant employees will have somewhere to live. I want to fix our roads. I want to do a lot of other stuff than talk about one department and one individual. I am up to here. And that's why people are leaving. It's because they're up to here and they have better options. We all have options. So, I make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
There's a motion?
I'll second.
All right. And I did want to say, we don't have to direct, to come back. We can actually individually request. I mean, I could walk and we could put our own agenda item on if we don't, this board does not have to do that. CAO Hayes?
I, yeah, just a, a point of clarification, that the motion would be to adopt the resolution regarding censure of Karen Paz Dominguez auditor controller.
As written, yes.
And that's fine with the second. Are there any other hands up? And Supervisor Wilson have his hand up or anything since I cannot see?
No, Chair Bass, he does not.
All right. I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Sorry, I got out of order here. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
All right. So we do have a closed session. Would you like to do the closed session item now?
We have one additional item for discussion.
Oh, I thought the, oh, sorry. I was looking at my other one. And I'm looking at the ones, get to the 130 time set, sorry. Yes, we do have a second item coming from the CAO's office. And it's amendment to our Code of Conduct and Ethics rules of the Board of Supervisors in consideration of a complaint received against Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you Chair Bass. On July 20th, 2021, your board approved through resolution the Board of Supervisors Code of Conduct and Ethic Rules. This policy detailed a process should a formal complaint of a supervisor be received. And that policy said that a complaint would be agendized for discussion with the whole board to consider if a formal investigation was necessary. And if necessary, should there be sustained findings that that return to your board for a vote of censure. On December 30th of 2021, the interim Human Resources Director and I received a formal complaint regarding Supervisor Bushnell. Throughout the month of January, I met with the complainant, a union representative Supervisor Bushnell, and the department head to provide for effective conflict resolution. This resolution was viewed by all as successful and it was determined that no further action was needed other than to return with amendments to the Code of Conduct. Those amendments are before your board today and the necessity for these amendments have been brought to light throughout this process. What is being proposed is that a formal complaint will be evaluated by the CAO, the HR Director, and County Council to determine if a formal investigation is necessary, or if some form of informal conflict resolution could be successful. Should an investigation be pursued and substantiating, substantiated findings are determined, then at that point in time, we would return to your board to detail those findings and to consider a vote of censure. Also amended in the policy is an appeal process for the complainant. Should the complainant find that the CAO, HR Director, and County Council, if they find that they were not in agreement with the determinations of that committee, that the foreman of the grand jury would evaluate and determine the most appropriate next steps. While the complainant previously agreed that this matter had been settled on March 24th, 2022, a public records request was received asking for documentation pertaining to this complaint. Due to the public interest in this issue, Supervisor Bushnell has asked that we follow the process that is currently in place in the amendment, or excuse me, in the Code of Conduct policy and agendize that complaint for discussion today.
Thank you. And I, I would ask, since this involves Supervisor Bushnell, is she able to make a, I know, well, I'm sure we get to hear from her. And, but when it, when it comes down to the vote, does she, does she have to withhold from voting? Or she can, I'm just trying to, I, I mean, I understand about when it comes to Code of Conduct changing, that she'd be, should be able to vote. But we're kind of talking about her.
Well, it was your question.
I think so. That's what I want to get confirmation of.
Chair, I recommend that Supervisor Bushnell could vote on the changes to the Code of Conduct, but not on the action your board's going to take regarding the specific complaint.
Okay, so, which should we address for CAO? What'd you suggest?
I think the approval of the amendment to the Code of Conduct is, is very, fairly simplistic. If, if your board is in agreement. I, I also sent out your board a red line version today so that it was abundantly clear. There was an issue when Granacas posted that, that the red lines were taken out. And we will also make that red line version available with the agenda after today's meeting. So if your board is in agreement with those amendments, a motion to approve said amendments would be amazing. And then we can move on to the discussion regarding the specific complaint.
All right, thank you. So I would look, Supervisor Madrone, and then Bushnell?
Thank you Chair Bass. Excuse me. So in the red light, so-called red line version, there's blue writing and red writing. All of that, unless it's stricken out, is included in the revised version?
Correct. Yeah, that is a, a joint effort between Council and I. So it just details out the two different commentary.
Different track changes colors. Yeah, right on, great. But they're all included. Well, with that, I would move that we approve the amended version of the Code of Conduct as presented by staff with the red and blue line additions.
I, yes, thank you Supervisor Madrone. And just point of clarification, it's to approve the resolution amending the Code of Conduct.
Thank you as always. CAO Hayes?
Second.
And we got a second. Supervisor Wilson, I saw your hand up. Did you, I, I have Supervisor Bushnell's hand up first on my list. Okay.
That was just me seconding.
Okay. So, and Supervisor, nothing, no comments from the board. Supervisor Madrone?
Yeah, I wanted to thank everybody involved in this and providing additional clarification for all sides of an issue. I think that's a really good thing. Thank you.
All right. There are no members of the public in our audience to speak on this. And is there anyone on the phone? I don't see any. All right. So I believe we're ready for a roll call vote.
Chair Bass, I apologize. As you were asking me, Supervisor Wilson raised his hand and we did have a public member raise their hand.
Okay. Well, we're going to go to the public member first. And can you?
Yes, if your caller 0151, it's now your
Let me, let me clarify too. This portion of the public comment is just on the rule change. If you're wishing to speak on the individual suspect, the next, I, well, how to say, if you want to speak on what's following next regarding a conversation of behavior of a board member, this is not the time to make the comment. So this is only on, is it a good idea to change our Code of Conduct? Correct? CAO? Is that close? Because we're kind of bifurcated this into two pieces.
Chair, that's fine, as long as there's a second opportunity for public comment.
Oh, there will be. I just figure this, this one seems like the easier piece to disposal, to move along with. Okay, so who's the member of the public?
Caller 0151.
Let's try this one more time. Caller 0151, yes. Ash, you have three minutes. And we're just talking about changing this policy. Are you there? Press star six. Okay, you're unmuted now. Is he still unmuted? Okay, we're not hearing anything. All right. Unfortunately, we're not able to get connectivity. Hopefully on the next one, it will come in. We can't connect, so we'll go back to the board. one, it will come in. We can't connect, so we'll go back to the board. And Supervisor Bushnell, did you have, I thought a board member, did you, Mike, thank you, Supervisor Wilson. It's hard because he's there and I'm not seeing anything on here.
Yeah, thanks. Through the chair, I just, I do support this. I want to thank you, the chair and Supervisor Madron, for working through the first draft of this. And, you know, as we see edits, or I guess, you know, modifications, as you apply policies, sometimes there's things you didn't realize, and I just appreciate everyone, you know, oh, this is, we need to update this. And so I just want to appreciate everyone's effort on that, and I think it still retains its intent, and I support the motion. Thanks.
All right, so Nikki, can we have a roll call vote on this portion?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
All right, so moving on to this next piece, it's a little bit different and also new. I know in this process, we, Supervisor Bushnell, you asked to have this brought forward. I'll let you explain your thoughts on this, and then I have to find out from County Council if it's just that she cannot vote. What is your preference, County Council?
I won't vote. I won't be voting.
Through the chair, I have a process question here.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm looking at our County Council. I was just asking, what is your question?
Well, this is my question through the chaired County Council, which is, I mean, and I just don't know, is Supervisor Bushnell, if she can't, if she's not going to vote, that's a choice, that's an abstention, but if she's not allowed to vote, then I suppose that she really can't be in the room.
Except she has to be able to, well, anyway, go ahead.
I guess. I don't, again, this process is super awkward, and this is why we amended it, so.
Through the chair, you know, this process is designed to follow a very similar process to the one that we just heard, and Supervisor Bushnell should be afforded an opportunity to defend herself in this conversation. So I think her participation right now is imperative to this discussion, but just as you had detailed in the vote of censure, giving her an opportunity to defend herself, taking comment, and then giving her one more opportunity to respond to that comment, and then closing that for only specific questions of your board towards Supervisor Bushnell would be my recommendation, and to ensure consistency across processes.
All right, let's hope we don't have a whole lot of these. At least we'll have a process. So, all right, so I will go to Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I get to be the guinea pig on this one, and I asked for this to be brought forward after an incident happened in December at the Planning and Building Department, and conflict resolution meeting had happened, and was, a resolution came forward. I also sought some guidance on how to better express myself, and when the PRA came in, I realized that someone wasn't happy. I think it was an unredacted version that was given to the Lost Coast outpost, which makes me wonder where it came from, unredacted, but nevertheless, I didn't, I'm not going to be hiding behind smokescreens. I wanted it to come to the public because someone obviously was not, is not okay with it. So given that, that's why we're, why this item is here now.
All right. Any board members have any questions before we go to public comment? I do have, I see one, but no board members? All right, we will go to public comment. We do have 10151. Press star six to unmute. Okay, sorry, it's still listed on mine as that he's listed under speakers. All right, so the hand went down. We have no other hands?
All right, am I unmuted?
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's Dottie? No, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, go, yeah. Good morning. This is Dottie, and I am unmuted. Shall I go?
Yes, please. Wait, stop her time for a second. I have a question. Were you not able to unmute before?
I wasn't able to unmute before, but I was using Graham's phone, and it had been put on mute.
Okay, got it, all right.
So it was my fault.
Okay, good.
Last time, it was not my fault.
All right, good. I just want to make sure. You're good to go. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you very much. So I don't know all the particulars of what's going on. I didn't read it on, you know, the internet, whatever, but number one, I just want to say, I think it's really great that we expose conflict, and we talk about it, we work it out, we find solutions, because what's happening in all of Humboldt County is that people are fighting against each other, you know, whether it's the complaint-driven thing, or if it's code enforcement, or if it's somebody doing something wrong or offending somebody. So if we, and what I was going to say before, if I hadn't been able to get on, was just that there was the Ethics Committee that was voted not to continue, and I think that if we really reconsider the Ethics Committee and get that going, if not, I think that we should have an informal, maybe different areas, joining together to have an Ethics Committee, because it's really necessary to sort out some of these things in a peaceful way. As far as anybody getting upset, all I know is that some, Michelle was upset at the Planning Department, but I have to say that I know people that almost have to take a valium. Now, that's just, that's not exactly, but the stress that is caused by going to the Planning Department, and things that people have heard, or people have been involved in, is unbelievable, and I think that everybody working for the county needs to remember that they're working to make this a peaceful place for people that live in Humboldt County, and it's not. It's not peaceful there, it's not peaceful standing outside the courthouse, it's not peaceful anyplace you go. It's that, I mean, I know people that are trying to pull a permit, and they're freaked out about even walking into that building. So the bottom line is to know that that needs to be a peaceful place for everybody, for staff, for supervisors, for people coming in, and everybody needs to maybe even sign something saying they understand that the job of working anyplace is to create peace for the people coming in, for the customers, because that's sorely lacking, probably worse than the Controller's Office issue. So if we get that under control, I think everybody will be able to live a more peaceful existence and life in Humboldt County. So I really encourage you to take a step that's not just listening to me and saying, oh, good, her three minutes are up, so now we'll go on to the next and forget it, but instead to really address peace and harmony and how we can work together, because nothing is equitable in this county, and it's time to change. Thank you.
Thank you. So there are no members of the public with hands up, so we'll go back to the audience, and there are no public members here. So we're back to the board. So there's nothing to rebut from the public comment. Did you have anything you wanted to add that we haven't heard already? Well, I do allow, I was going to allow, if someone said anything over a rebuttal period, or if you had, if you wanted to add something else, you can still, same, I would afford to do that, and then we'll go to questions.
Okay, so, no, that was a general statement. I don't have anything to add. I would welcome my board members to ask me questions if they so please.
Okay, thank you. We have Supervisor Bone and Wilson.
This is for the CAO. Did the county have an Ethics Committee? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I have not participated in an Ethics Committee, and in regards to this particular discussion, the decision point before your board would be whether or not you want to conduct a formal investigation.
That was just for my own information. And this is for, since we just went through, and the main thing is, this is for County Council, does this warrant an investigation?
So through the chair, your board just amended the policy. You could either make the decision today whether you want to do that, or it could be referred to the subcommittee of myself, the Human Resources Director, and the CAO to make that decision.
Okay, ready. Supervisor Wilson? I thought you said his hand was up.
Chair Bass, his hand was up. It's down now. I don't see him.
Supervisor Wilson, we'll wait to see if your hand goes up again. Any questions for Supervisor Bushnell? Okay, Supervisor Wilson, then Bone.
This is not a question for Supervisor Bushnell. This is a process question. If the board is satisfied with the process as been deliberated or has been done, is there an action that's required by us today?
I would ask our CAO.
Yeah, I think Jefferson just addressed this. I think Supervisor Wilson dropped off for a minute, but you, your board could decide to order the investigation, or you could decide to fall under the new policy and refer the item to the committee comprised of myself, County Council Billingsley, and HR Director O'Hannon to review for next steps.
Okay, I apologize. My computer was unplugged and died, so I'm back, and I missed that one part. So, okay, I appreciate that explanation, and I'm personally supporting the second of those two options, which is following the current, the new policy. Thanks.
And Supervisor Wilson, Bone?
Yeah, and I'm just wondering, except for something that was sent to an outside news source, has there been a new complaint filed or everything? Because as I read this, and I read your report, that there was a semblance of understanding between all parties involved once, so it sounded like the parties involved were okay, but somebody else may have opened the can of worms trying to, I'm not sure. Is it the complainant that has brought it back forward, or is this, we're looking at a letter from December 31, and then there's been subsequent meetings of how to move forward in the future, kind of like was, you know, mentioned about everybody getting along and different focuses, and it seemed like it was addressed once, and it seems like, I mean, January 7, January 24, you met with the union representative. I'm reading all this, and it sounds like that there was a consensus amongst all parties involved, and then somebody from the stands going, well, I don't like that. I want it opened again. And is that what's happening here? Because that's going to mean all investigations are open two or three times if we're going to let people from the inside send something out four months or three months later, three months later, to open it back up. And I think we'll probably end up, we're going to end up back in the same place, because it sounds like everything was settled to a certain extent. So, and if I'm wrong, I don't read that in here, and I'm, we'll see where I'm missing that.
Yes, Supervisor Bone, I do believe that the agreement at this point with all involved is that we have effectively resolved the matter at hand discussed in the agenda item today, but I did get, I got a complaint while I've been sitting here, sort of in support of this complaint. So that is one that would need to be addressed through the process outlined in the new policy, the amended policy.
And I believe there's an email sent yesterday also that raised a similar concern. So I think, at least just following the new process and policy, that can be ferreted out to see what is new, what isn't, and is that what you would think?
Yes, and I think it's all tied together. It's all centered around the initial complaint from December.
I have a question.
Okay, Supervisor Wilson?
Sure. I mean, I want to actually, I think, say that the policy as was written before we changed it just now was not followed, and so there was a mistake made there, I would say, and I want to, you know, thank Supervisor Bushnell for recognizing that and then bringing that forward, that it wasn't followed, and so that, you know, this was an attempt, or this is an attempt to correct that error that was made. And so this is where we're at. I don't, I don't think that the policy that we just approved will, the policy change we just approved will try to actually not have everything brought to the board directly, as I feel that that could be abused in that way, that there needs to be some review of that before we get to this place, and I think what's been set forth in those changes will do that in a judicious way, especially because it also has an appeal process to it as well. So we'll try this new policy, because we voted on it, and hopefully it works to both address the complaints and complaints in a fair way, but also without causing undue, you know, issues within the, you know, just within our ability to actually, you know, govern in the way that we do. So that's why I'm supportive of moving forward with the new parameters as they are, and see how that works.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Bone.
Well, I guess we'll just back up into this, and I applaud Supervisor Bushnell for bringing this back up, and as things fly around the interweb and everything. I guess I'll make a motion that we move forward with. Trying to figure out exactly how you want this.
CAO Hayes, would you like to have some recommended language? I was going to, I was going to suggest something, but.
Yes, I would say that your board could motion to refer the complaints to the committee for evaluation.
And this wasn't a staff recommendation. This is something that, because I don't actually see this.
It's consideration of the complaint, and so the board item does say that your board could direct an investigation, or as pointed out by County Council Billingsley, we also have a new policy that lays out a process, so you could refer the complaint to that.
Process.
To that process.
And then you guys decide if it, yeah, because $25,000 to $50,000 a pop, and all the complaints, 11 and 18 in one department alone, just is adding up. Yeah, I'll make the motion to go with the new policy and have the, you guys decide if it warrants moving on with an investigation.
So refer to the committee?
The new and improved and revised rules of conduct.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, and if I can. Speak to my second. I do, I do think that that's appropriate. There are a couple of issues that have been brought up associated with this complaint. One is, and I think, you know, is directly to, you know, behavior, you know, associated with Supervisor Bushnell, which I think is addressed in the process, and so there's that. But the other is, you know, there are concerns about how we as supervisors and our role, not just in planning processes, but really where we're at in terms of like staff and interactions and those sorts of things, and I don't mean just personal interactions, but. but with relationship to policy or relationship to their day-to-day work and, and trying not to get in, in the middle of, or really working hard not to get between them and any kind of supervisory roles that, you know, department heads have. And so I just think that we're, we're just, we all need to do as, you know, better on that. I work really hard not to, to be in that space. And I think that, that it's important that we rely on our department heads to, to have the authority to do what they need to do and, and, and report directly to us as a board. Nonetheless, we are often asked to be, you know, at, I think it's, a lot of our, a lot of our role often is as customer service agents, often we find that, that was what we do, whether it's, whether it's, you know, fielding complaints about potholes or, or policies or whatever that, that may be. And so we're always having to navigate those situations. And so being mindful and being better of how we do that is something that, that I think is important. And I think it brings up, I think this issue brings that up, that it is important for us to be mindful of that. And so, yeah, and we have policy around that too. And we, I think maybe we all need to read that policy again. And, and, but I'm ready to move forward with this vote.
All right, thank you. He seconded and he agreed to the policy. And he's ready to move forward with the vote. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further conversation? The County Council has his...
Chair, just to check for public comment on this item as well.
We did. That's where Dottie was. But thank you. It's always good to have a reminder in this new process. All right. I don't see Supervisor Madron, anything to add? I think we're ready for a roll call. Vote, please.
Okay. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor, Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
All right, thank you. And thank you again Supervisor Bushnell for having this conversation on here. So now we can see how this process is going to work. Before we ask for the closed session, I did want to say thank you Access Humboldt for putting on there about turning off your live feed and your TV. I appreciate that. And nice, bold letters, so thank you. So C A, not C O Hayes, but how about County Council Billingsley? May we have a brief on closed session?
Thank you Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code 54956.9, D2 and E3, to discuss exposure to litigation of one potential case, letter regarding the final environmental impact report in the North McKay Ranch subdivision project. And just for the record, as I announced before, I have a conflict on this project and Assistant County Council Scott Miles will be attending.
All right. I'll, thank you very much. We'll go to see if there's any public comment. I don't see any hands up online. Do you Nikki?
Chair Bass, so you don't have any?
Okay, none in the audience? Yes?
Nope, just went up.
Okay, we do have one. Can you call the number? It's not showing up on mine.
I have 3053.
Okay, 3053?
Good afternoon, or good morning still. Thomas Mulder, I followed, I was actually following your meeting today for multiple things, but this item is, it seems that the process, from my understanding, I'm still learning CEQA, has been followed with this project. And I feel that if your board entertains this, threatened litigation, and spends too much time and energy on it, now you finally have people interested in moving forward with developments and subdivisions by housing, which our county needs. I think you might deter people from investing and building within Humboldt County. So I think make sure CEQA is followed. And I believe from my understanding it is, but I'm not an expert. And if that is true, don't entertain too much on this threatened litigation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, whoops. Thank you, Thomas. Do you see any others since not showing up on mine?
Chair Bass, there's no other callers.
All right, so Supervisor Bone?
And since this has come up, and I don't want it to backlash, that I know this discussion has come up about a conflict of interest for myself. So needless to say, since I've been involved with this 10.89 acres in the middle of this project, and I am the Chair and C E O of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that built, maintains, and oversees Redwood Fields, which is in the middle of the McKay Forest. It is a completely volunteer organization with approximately 600 games played with community members from the greater Eureka area, Cutton, Humboldt Hill, Pine Hill, and throughout the state when they have tournaments. So they play soccer. Humboldt U Soccer plays out there. Eureka Junior League Football plays out there. Redwood Empire Little League, the only little league in the greater Eureka area, plays out there. Sons of Italy has bocce ball courts. And then there is, they are public. There's a public basketball court. There's a brand-new tot lot to the public. The only actually public playground in all of Cutton out there. And that is all maintained by volunteers. There's no paid situ, people. It, it, the McKay Ranch will probably cost me money as I try to chase more kids out of climbing the fence and being on the fields because due to insurance, they can't be on the fields. But we do have, we do ensure an outside play area. So I will have no financial interests whatsoever. I have an emotional interest because I've got great satisfaction of watching all these kids play and watching their kids play out there now because I'm so damn old. So I just wanted to, this has been brought up by staff to make sure, and I wanted to reiterate the situation that 30 years ago, when I started working on this project, I didn't think I'd be sitting here voting on the homes going around it. So that's just my statement.
So and I think, I, I would say I appreciate that, especially the financial part. It's, it's not like you own a home that's going to be increasing in value because of it, or decreasing in value. So it's like you're just, you receive no financial renumeration from the, what you have out there.
I don't know if anybody's noticed, but in the last...
You probably lose money.
In the last year and a half, our homes have increased enough without the, without the McKay Ranch. So yeah, I'm okay.
Just basically make, trying to explain how that could be different. So County Council Billingsley. I was going to say, are you leaving? Okay. I want to ask how we're doing closed session since we have Supervisor Wilson on the Zoom. Can we put him on the Zoom in the other room?
We will go to Conference Room A. And I've already sent Supervisor Wilson a closed session Zoom link. So we'll be able to bring him up in Conference Room A to participate in that conversation.
Okay, and then I want to take a brief five-minute break. So, welcome Scott. Did you want to brief us on closed session? I mean, I know Jefferson did, but then he left. So I didn't know if he, if you wanted to then now take over completely from where we started.
I believe Jefferson's already read it into the record. I don't think we have...
I just wasn't sure. I'm just kind of thinking she should have left first before you came up. But yes Rex?
Have we adjourned?
We're just going to close session. Oh adjourned to close session. Well, I'm waiting for Access Humboldt to say that. Ready, ready? Okay. All right, we're back. Oh, and we have an audience full comparatively speaking. So it's good to have people there. May we have a report out of closed session?
Thank you Chair Bass. There was no reportable action taken at today's closed session.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to the 1:30 time set, which is coming to us regarding the informational county, can't even talk, department reports for fiscal year '22-23. I'm going to reach, send this over to C O Hayes, and she can take it from there.
Thank you Chair Bass. In 2015, your board began to receive informational reports from county departments on core services and budget requests. This has proven to be a very useful process for your board and for departments to engage on the new budget cycle. Last year, or possibly the year before, we got feedback from your board that you wanted to hear these presentations while departments were still in their budget development process so that you could provide feedback on how they should finalize their budgets and submit those over to the county administrative office. So before your board today is the first set of department budget presentations with a slot of 10 county departments agendized for today. However, one small note, the auditor controller has asked that that presentation be heard on April 11th. The, and since I see eyebrows raising, I had asked my staff to agendize the departments in alphabetical order so that there was no perceived mechanism behind how those departments were presented and to move the auditor controller to the first presentation because that would put that right at 1:30 and allow for some consistency in scheduling. So we will hear that presentation next week. And for my office, who is then up first, I have Tabitha Miller here, who will present on the county administrative office budget and also setting the, the stage a little bit for the overall county budget.
I think I'm on. Okay. Good afternoon, Tabitha Miller. I am the Chief Financial Officer. And I thought I would start out, and we've, we've met with a number of the departments already as far as our budget meetings and gotten feedback. And there's some, some challenges that are kind of consistent throughout the organization. And I thought it might be helpful just to put perspective on how the budget is going this year and sort of some of those challenges that we are all facing. Before I did that, I really wanted to take a moment to just acknowledge the county's continued response to COVID. I think we sometimes forget, you know, two years plus into this, that we as county staff, and I obviously have only been here three months, but you know, there were kind of dual duties. So there was that immediate response to the emergency that impacted staff. And certainly some of your departments, more than others, were providing direct services to the emergency and are continuing to do that. And then there's the second piece of it, which is the pivoting that happened in response to try to work in isolation, trying to set up remote working, you know, to continue to provide ongoing existing services. And, and it has been challenging. But I just wanted to kind of put that out there because I think we need to keep that in mind as we move forward. It has been, you know, a pretty challenging couple of years. And we're seeing some of those ramifications in our staff and some of the stress levels. So I know that this was discussed this morning, and I'm going to bring it back up because it continues to be an issue. But the lack of timely and reliable financial data is, is a real hindrance when you're trying to put budgets together. It's, I don't want to go into too much detail, but you know, simple things like about a week ago, I received from the C O's office, received a copy of the financial transaction report that the auditor controller filed with the state, state controller's office. And I was excited at first because I thought, oh, this will give us an indication of where we stand for the fiscal year 1920. Because that's obviously the financial statements that we're, we're waiting on. And I think all of us are sort of looking at as far as a little bit better feeling for where our fund balances are. One of the challenges when I started to go through that report and reconcile it is that I found that the beginning fund balances, which are, should be a carry forward from the fiscal year 1819 fund balances in net position, they should come right off of the audited financial statements from the prior year, didn't tie out. And they didn't tie out in a pretty significant amount. So if you net the differences, I came up with a $39.5 million difference. If you looked at them in just true value, it's $72.2 million that were off. Probably the one that impacts us the most is that the general fund, based on the numbers that I have there. And again, I'm, I'm telling you they're not reliable because they don't tie back to the audited financial statements. You had a $55.6 million difference between your ending fund balance and your financial statements as reported by the, the C L A, our audit company, and the beginning balance. And it, it was overstated, which means that we probably are in a position where we really truly do not know where our fund balance for the general fund lands. And so we all sort of are trying to work within that constraint of not knowing, feeling like we're probably in good position, but having no idea or no way to confirm that. It makes it really hard when we are facing some, some challenges as far as closing the, the gap in that budget deficit. And we talked about this during midterm and the kickoff is that because of the increases in staff costs, the decreases in Measure S and some of our other revenues, you know, we're looking at a difference and it seemed manageable. But we, we don't have that fund balance to rely on. And so I really, I think everybody is, is a little bit frustrated and challenged with that process. A couple other areas that we're, we're facing is the labor benefits and cost increases were absolutely necessary. And I think everybody would agree that those were required in order to sort of stop some of the, the staff turnover and also to try to recruit positions, replacement positions at the experience level and the skill level that really is necessary to run the county. But they do have that impact of sort of challenging our budget. We're seeing that, that gap really being an issue. The other thing is that we are continuing to sort of deal with staff shortages. And this is not just a county issue. If you listen to the news, you know, nationwide, staffing and labor challenges are there. And so, you know, we talk about the COVID response. We talk about, you know, the short staff issues and some of the other just stresses that are happening. It's, it's, it's a feeling that sort of runs throughout almost all departments, which is to just try to be, be preparing for how to present and how to maintain services at a level that's really where we all want to be. The next thing, a couple other things that are pressing us are just increased...
Oh, Tabitha?
Yeah.
Are you okay with asking questions as we go? Supervisor Bone has a question.
Okay, the report with all the differences from our audited from 1819, and then is that the report that was entered under the penalty of fines to the state controller's office and required by the Attorney General? Was that the same report?
It, it was, correct.
That was done at 10 o'clock? Okay. So will they accept that? Or I guess we won't?
Well, they received it. I don't believe that they've made a determination as to whether they have accepted or that it meets the requirements they have. But they, they have acknowledged that they received it.
I wasn't sure, thank you.
That was my question. Is there any fact-checking on their end? Or they just get what they get and go with that?
I, I, I would expect that they're going to fact-check it. And they'll probably find what, what we found. But again, I, they haven't shared their process with us other than they just acknowledged that it was received, but not necessarily accepted or approved. Okay. No problem. So just the other piece of this, which is again, not unique to the county, are we're seeing pretty significant increases in cost in addition to increases in fuel charges, the insurance market for our workers' comp and liability, just supplies and services is the shortage. So, you know, we're kind of caught in the, we're, we're happy to get the supplies that we need, but we're typically paying a premium on those. And when you're trying to balance a budget, it's, it's just another challenge. Kind of moving a little bit closer to my department, which is the county administrative office. Just really quickly, there's a number of divisions within our department. We have the American with Disabilities Act Compliance Group. We have Communications, Economic Development, Information Technology, Management and Budget, and Purchasing and Disposition. Just some of the challenges again, we are facing as a department are, are pretty reflective of what the other departments are facing. You know, one of the things that our office has not done since fiscal year 1819 is the long-term financial planning, the seven-year forecast. You know, this is pretty important for, you know, planning for our future, looking at infrastructure, long-term plans, long-term goals. But we really need that financial information to do it. The other thing we'd like to do is, we've talked about is policy updates, looking at our financial policies and making sure that we are again, sort of planning long-term, facilities management, reserves, funding policies, sustainability, and making sure that we've got the financial infrastructure in place to keep us moving forward. Our I T group, the number one thing they talked about when we asked what their priorities are is cybersecurity. That's been a real challenge. Again, not surprising. It's in the news every day. It's worldwide. Will tell you something that I was impressed with that group is that this last year when they identified cybersecurity and threats and phishing to be an issue at the county, they came up with an education program. I think 1,725 or 45 employees went through it. And they were able to significantly reduce the incidents where people clicked on the email they're not supposed to the incidence where people clicked on the email they're not supposed to from over 10% down to about 2.7. And keep in mind that the industry average for governments is 25%. So we are making progress.
I did want to say, I noticed they send their little practice ones to us to part way through. So I've learned where my little fish thing is, yeah. Whenever Rex sends me something, I send it over.
And just like, I think, all the other departments, we're also facing this increased need for support for board and other departments. You know, everybody is gearing up and trying to do more with less. Just some of the accomplishments from the rest of the groups. Management and the budget team finished the redistricting this last year. We negotiated the labor group memorandums of understanding, that was a pretty significant and important process. Our office was able to secure $5.2 million in federal earmarks, one for the Hammond Trail Bridge replacement and for the comprehensive economic development strategy. This is the seeds. We've done the website redesign and the vaccination and testing policy was another accomplishments this last year. As I mentioned, our information technology and communications area has really built and is focusing not only last year, but going forward on the cybersecurity. And this is both physical infrastructure, it's training, it's making sure that we have all the tools in place to fight what the most current cyber threats are. They've also gone back to supporting remote and onsite working, you know, as again, the last two years, things have flipped back and forth, infrastructure upgrades, policy and security platforms, Zoom, COVID tracking system, wireless upgrades. And then they did pretty significant work on the firewall, excuse me, the firewall, which is again, just a security system in place. They're planning on rolling out a IT documentation and procedures platform this next year. And then we've got our radio improvement project, and they've got VHF radios installed in four of the nine sites and microwave equipment in four of the six. This is an ongoing project with the sheriff's office, and I do know that you have Measure Z request in for that. So just kind of a plug there. Purchasing and ADA. One of the significant accomplishments for our ADA group is the new Garberville campus complex. This is a fully compliant branch library, sheriff's substation, multipurpose conference room. And I think it's important to note that this is consistent with the facility master plan. And the facility master plan is again, one of those long-term plans in place that's also going to depend, probably be dependent on financing that will require that we have financial systems in place and financial documents to provide the rating agencies. The ADA compliance team, just as an update on where they're at, they've completed 90% of the remaining barriers, removing, 90% of the remaining barriers in the consent decree and 40% of those identified in county buildings. And again, our master, our facilities master plan is going to be key to getting the other 60% of the county buildings in compliance. Our purchasing group updated the Cal card training in NeoGov. So this was moving to an online platform that can become part of the standard training provided to new and existing county employees. They have revised the purchasing policy, and this is sort of a first in revising the financial policies for the county on an operating basis for employees and how we work. And then just ongoing procurement of COVID supplies and services. And with that, I thought I would actually turn it over to Scott Adair, who I hope is here somewhere.
I believe he's on Zoom.
Correct.
I'm right here, Tabitha.
I figured, I figured he would be in a better position to go through the economic development investments.
Rex, supervisor bone might have a question.
And just so IT can rest easy, as soon as the money is transferred from the Nigerian prince that I've been in contact with, I won't need any of you guys anymore. So that should be coming anytime soon, as soon as my check clears.
Keep us informed.
Thank you very much, Tabitha. Scott Adair, Director of Economic Development for the County of Humboldt. Just giving a brief update on what's happening as we move into the next fiscal year for your economic development team. As we emerge from this pandemic, your county's, the community's economic development team remains busier than ever. Our program development is up three and a half times, and revenue growth is up nearly 150%. That's from pre-COVID levels. And we're wrapping up this fiscal year with the award of a CSAC award for operational and programmatic excellence. In fiscal year 2223, we are anticipating for our Project Trelles program, an award of $3.45 million in additional cannabis equity grant monies, which will be coming to the governor's office of business and economic development. Staff is also presently working in conjunction with the CIO team on preparing an item to bring back to your board to discuss certain other programmatic changes to the Project Trelles program, primarily to the micro grant and the marketing program, which may result in a budgetary impact if those dollars are given back to the general fund. That item is forthcoming. Until then, we continue to work on applications for additional future CEG awards, and we'll be looking for an ongoing contribution matched from the general fund in order to secure those dollars through the state. Our Headwaters program continues to move forward. In fiscal year recent, we awarded $162,000 in grants to local governments and nonprofits and made 600, just shy of $680,000 in new loans to local community partners. We also received approximately $365,000 paid back in principal for our paycheck protection program loans. If you recall, that was via collaboration with the Arcata Economic Development Corporation. Still continue to administer Headwaters programmatic funding in the community through our partnerships with REDEC, HAF, and other partners, and anticipate that we'll be working with the CIO's office on identifying a fixed revenue stream for administrative costs for that Headwaters program moving forward. Our Project SORB program continues to move forward. As you recall, that's an MOU with our agency and the Department of Aviation. In fiscal year 2223, we expect to receive grant funding for some internal marketing and other advertising to help the airport to generate additional revenue streams and to become a sustainable, independent revenue generator. Our EBIT, or the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, was adopted after three public hearings and a great deal of due diligence and review and consideration also by your board. That was established in March of this year. We're currently working with the California State Board of Equalization to complete that formation process, and we expect some activities to begin with that initiative and that new body late next fiscal year after we start generating some tax revenues for it. You already heard Tabitha mention the federal earmark, which was received. We were notified through Congressman Huffman's office that our request of $218,000 to assist with the SEDS process was approved, the SEDS being the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. We will also continue to look for EDA funding and other funding and revenue sources to support that initiative. Just a reminder, our SEDS is expiring next fiscal year at the end of 2023, and having an adopted SEDS is a requirement of the EDA in order to qualify, our community to qualify for certain types of grant funding. Our Cal Forest Works Alliance, the initiative in partnership with the U.S. Forest Service to identify social, economic, and environmental sustainability practices for biomass and other carbon sequestration efforts is moving forward. We secured a grant, an INF grant this year of just under $100,000 to go toward some study and analysis. We expect those funds to be expended next year. And our workforce program is presently on a cash hold as a result of the single audit not being completed. Because of that cash hold, we can't exactly forecast or predict what competitive workforce grant dollar opportunities might look like next year, but a significant portion of our WIOA, or Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, funding is actually formulaic. As long as we're able to tender that single audit and satisfy the state's requirement to have the cat or the single audit complete, we anticipate that the cash hold will be removed and that we will receive our workforce funding for fiscal year 2223. And then just finally, in conclusion, our activity does not stop there. Those were just the highlights. Film permit assistance, oversight of the HCBB, HLAT bid and film commission contracts, our RMDZ effort, our Prospector Program, a host of other programs under our purview, continue to advance, as well as a new budding initiative related to preparing a workforce and a labor pool for offshore wind opportunities. At this moment, staff for our division is nearly back to pre-great recession levels, and we continue to work with the CIO's office in light of recent budget cuts and the budget constraints that the county is under to maintain staff levels for these programs, given all of the new activity in economic development. And that concludes my update. Tabitha?
Thank you.
Yes, is there anyone after that?
That's it from us.
All right.
So if there's any final questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? All right. I guess not. You won't go too far, we know where to find you.
Yes. I'll be right, right around the corner. Yes, thank you.
Agriculture Commissioner?
Through the chair. Yes, and just for a point of clarification for the public who's on the line, one public comment period at the end of all of the presentations. And yes, up next is Wayland Shaw, our interim agricultural commissioner. Welcome, Wayland.
Thank you. Glad I came early. Captain, Chief of Staff, members of the board. My name is Wayland Shaw. I represent the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office is responsible for two budget units.
Is your mic on?
Sorry. The Agriculture Department is responsible for two budget units, the Agriculture Department and Wildlife Services. I'm here to give a brief overview of the Agriculture and Weights and Measures programs and Wildlife Services. I'll discuss some accomplishments from the last year, goals and challenges going forward. So this is sort of a brief overview of the agricultural commissioner. The agricultural commissioners' sealers' programs trace their origins to the westward expansion of settlers to California in the late 19th century. These settlers to California brought with them trees and vines for planting, some of which were infested with insect pests and diseases. As a result of all the problems this created for the state's farmers, the California legislature provided counties with the authority to protect the state's growing tree and vine industries from new pests. The California legislature ultimately brought the county agricultural commissioners under the direction of the state director of agriculture. Since that time and during the past 120 years, the duties and responsibilities of county agricultural commissioners and sealers have evolved and changed, but the agency's core role remains, the protection and promotion of agriculture. The commissioner's sealer is responsible for enforcement of federal, state, and local laws and regulations which pertain to the county's agricultural industry, environment, public health, safety, and consumer protection. The commissioner's sealer is responsible to the board of supervisors at the local level and is under the general direction of the Secretary of the California Department of Food and Agriculture and Director of the Department of Pesticide Regulation at the state level. The commissioner's sealer accomplishes their mandates through the management of programs designed to achieve the department's mission through public outreach, education, and numerous enforcement tools. So now I'm just going to go into a little bit about the Agriculture Department. It's separated into Agriculture Programs and Weights and Measures, and then I'll go into a little bit about Wildlife Services. So within the Agriculture Programs, they include pesticide use enforcement, high-risk pest exclusion, pest detection, pest management, direct marketing and organic program, as well as cannabis cultivation site inspections. So a little bit about the pesticide use enforcement program. The Agriculture Department is primarily a law enforcement, public protection agency with most of its programs mandated by state law. Authority for administration of these programs is found in the California Food and Agriculture Code and Business and Professions Code. The Commissioner's Office is the sole agency with authority and responsibility for local enforcement of state pesticide laws and regulations. County staff work closely with DPR to ensure protection of human health, safety, and the environment through registrations, permitting, inspections, investigations, and outreach and education activities. Go on to the high-risk pest exclusion. So staff performs inspections of commercial plant and plant product shipments at high-risk points of entry, such as FedEx and UPS, to prevent the introduction and spread of harmful invasive insects and plant disease pests. Pest exclusion is considered the first line of defense in detecting harmful pests to prevent their introduction and before they become established, and also involves the CDFA border inspection stations. Other pest exclusion programs administered by the Commissioner's Office include nursery inspections, the Sudden Oak Mortality Regulatory Program, and issuance of federal and state phytosanitary certificates required to facilitate international trade of pest-free plant and plant products. Pest detection is known as the second line of defense against pests. Pest detection programs monitor the environment using traps to detect the early introduction of non, or pardon me, known harmful exotic pests. Traps specific to each targeted species are placed throughout the county at locations based on the known behavior and biology of target pests. In fiscal year 202223, traps will be placed for gypsy moth, Japanese beetle, and glassy-winged sharpshooter. The pest management program manages nuisance pests of agriculture and the environment, including invasive weeds. The department currently has programs to manage invasive knotweeds, napweeds, and tansy ragwort. The Commissioner's Office often also assists the public with identifying garden pests, weeds, and wood destroying insects. These efforts are an important public service, which provides information to the public and informs decisions around appropriate approaches to controlling pests. Next, we'll talk about the organic program. That provides local administration and assistance to program participants in the state organic program, including registrations, amendments, as well as producer and retailer compliance inspections and complaint investigations. The department oversees local farmers' markets and direct marketing of agriculture products to the public by certified producers at farmers' markets. Currently, there are 118 certified producers in the county, which is the fifth largest amount in the state. And finally, for the agriculture programs, is the cannabis cultivation site inspections. The Commissioner's Office performs state cannabis cultivation license inspections under agreement with the Department of Cannabis Control. Due to the significant number of state cannabis cultivation licenses issued to Humboldt County cultivators, inspections performed by county staff are critical to the state's efforts to verify compliance with state cannabis cultivation license requirements. At that time, when we do the inspections for the cannabis site inspections, Weights and Measures device and cannabis pesticide use enforcement compliance inspections are also performed while staff are performing the cultivation site inspections. So those are some of the programs on the agriculture side. So now we'll talk about some on the Weights and Measures side. The number of weighing and measuring device inspections performed by the sealer's office provides a measure of the annual efforts of the department at protecting businesses and consumers by assuring equity in commercial transactions. This year, 58 of 76 fuel stations have been inspected, which translates to 1,348 of the 1,695 individual fuel meters tested. With the price of fuel now, that's really important. And approximately 1% of the fuel meters tested were under registering or shorting the consumer. Another program is the quantity control. Additionally, consumer protection is provided through quantity control and price verification programs, which verify the net weight statement of packaged goods and check that computerized system used to compute the charges for goods at checkout are accurate. A little bit about the Wildlife Services. Through a contract with the United States Department of Agriculture Wildlife Services, this program serves as a public service to resolve conflicts involving wildlife. These services provided by the program include protection to the public and farming ranch, farming and ranching businesses from the risks posed by exposure to wildlife diseases and damage or losses of livestock from wildlife predation. Maintaining the services of a wildlife service specialist is critical to public health and safety in Humboldt County because of the higher rates of rabies infection endemic in local wildlife populations. So a few accomplishments from last year. One of them is we were able to add staff, which was really important to our department. The department was able to fill two vacant agricultural weights and measures inspector positions. One position was vacant since 2019, and the other was to replace a retired senior inspector. With those additions, the department was able to catch up on the inspection frequency of the many weighing and measuring devices in the county. Under our pest management program, the Agriculture Department has the responsibility of preventing the introduction and spread of noxious weeds within the county. One of the approaches used to control weeds include the establishment of populations of the United States Department of Agriculture-approved biological control organisms. In fall of 2021, eight colonies of tansy flea beetle, an insect which feeds exclusively on the noxious weed tansy ragwort, were collected from sites in Delnart County and distributed to Humboldt County ranchers to aid in control of the tansy ragwort on their properties. This is an ongoing service the Ag Department provides whenever established populations of this beetle are sufficient in size to collect- Just a note on that, the releases done last year were late in the year, and so they weren't as viable as, and successful as we thought, and so we're getting a new batch earlier in the spring to release at a better time during the year. Some of the goals for the department are to receive our unclaimed gas tax revenue this year. We must maintain our effort in agricultural program areas, and the addition of staff should enable a greater focus on those program areas. Another goal is to the procurement of a timekeeping program called CALCATS. It's the California County Activity Tracking System. It's a comprehensive software system for tracking time and expenses for agricultural and weights and measures activities performed by county staff. Right now, staff are using an outdated Excel spreadsheet for tracking hours performed in various program areas. If something happens to that Excel program and it's corrupted, staff will have to build something from scratch. The person who basically built that has retired, and we're really afraid one wrong move in that Excel spreadsheet is going to crash the whole thing. This software program integrates with the state pesticide tracking program and would also greatly decrease staff time in preparing the annual financial statement. Also, our weights and measures device registration information are tracked in an old access program that IT does not support. So that's another issue. If something happens to that, then yeah, we're at square one. Another goal is to replace our dilapidated warehouse. Currently, the department is unable to store the large capacity weight truck at the office location due to the condition of the warehouse. The truck is being stored in a barn at the public worksite in McKinleyville. So shuffling back and forth to McKinleyville increases staff time greatly. Also, the department has equipment used to test electric and gas meters in the warehouse. This equipment is sensitive and is required to be kept in specific environmental conditions. The condition of the warehouse makes it difficult to achieve that goal. Challenges going forward, we testing large capacity vehicle and cattle scales. We do have a new staff member who has, is in the process of obtaining that Class B license. However, once he obtains that Class B license, it's going to be a large learning curve and getting up to our efficiency we had previously with our senior inspectors is going to be really difficult. And another challenge, like I said earlier, is a condition, one condition for the department to receive unclaimed gas tax revenues, the maintenance of effort requirement. This means that the net county cost or the cost to the county to fund agricultural programs must meet or exceed the previous five-year average. The addition of new staff will help, but the reduction in general fund allocation for fiscal year 2022-23 may make it more difficult to achieve the maintenance of effort. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, comments.
Very thorough. Any supervisor bone, and then supervisor Bushnell?
Well, take a blast from the past. Ryan Sundberg used to say, "If I haven't heard anything about you, then you're doing good." So you're four months into this, Wayland. I've had two questions I've had to ask. You guys have answered them right away as the interim. I appreciate everything you're doing. I know that he's off getting trained this week, right? For the truck?
There was an issue that came up with that. He, the staff member, had an injury, which is going to prevent him from taking that exam this week.
For, okay.
For the Class B license.
I will offer, if you guys are that far behind, I'll give you two days a week or one day a week. I can drive that truck. I've got Class A, Class B current. All my licenses are current.
Accepted.
So let's, let's work something out. Let's not hold that progress. So if you want to work something out, I'm, I'm still certified to drive. You can put a trailer behind it if you want.
I think I offered that same thing.
And I'm already employed.
The next available testing date would be mid-July for that, and we've already rescheduled that.
Okay.
Truck drivers up here, you know.
Supervisor Bushnell, and then Madron.
So thank you, Wayland. I know this is your first time, mine too, so thank you for that very detailed report. And Tabitha, wherever she went. I wanted to ask about the CALCATS. So when, I'm just curious, will that be functioning? And how, is that like a long training process for you guys? I'm just curious about it.
It's basically in production now, so the way it works is you, you basically purchase credits, and it's based on the number of employees and how much activity they're going to have in the software system. And so it's, you enter in how many employees will be using that, and they basically give you the charge for the year. And so right now, with the amount of employees we have in our department, it would be approximately $5,200 a year.
Oh, okay.
And so the, the goal would be to purchase multiple years.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that, and hope you like the job.
Thank you. So far, so good.
And supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Wayland, thank you and your staff for all your hard work, and in particular, I really think it was great the guy, the way you guys worked out the wildlife agreement to satisfy all sides as best as we could, but also avoid litigation lawsuits. So thank you for that hard work. And then the biopest, great program. Knotweed is a really gnarly weed and other things, and you've got the bull weevil statue out there in front of the ag commission's office. So there have been some very successful programs, so I commend you again for, for those efforts, and it helps us reduce our use of herbicides as well, which the department's been very strong about, and also in regards to the weed management council, I forget the exact name of it, but working with community partners to control the various plants and other pests and stuff. And I, I just want to commend you for all that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, supervisor Madron.
All right. I don't see a hand up for supervisor Wilson. Any questions, Mike? Okay. Watching you on Zoom now.
Questions for me?
Okay. All right. Thank you. You survived your first presentation. So now we're going to go to the Department of Health and Human Services, and we've got a team. Okay, and I did want to, supervisor Madron will be taking the rest of the meeting in his office over Zoom, so we'll have him on there shortly.
It'll come up as soon as access.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Bass, and board members. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I'm here currently with Emmy Bossler Rogers and Amanda Winstead. Emmy is our Behavioral Health Director, and Amanda Winstead is our Child Welfare Services Director. I also have with me in the audience Michelle Stevens, our Assistant Director of DHHS, and Sofia Pereira, who will be joining us a little bit later.
There's enough room for them if you guys want to bring the whole.
Do you want to come up?
Looks like the starting five.
I will also add that I have Monique Upshaw Smith in the audience. She's our interim deputy director for social, our social services benefit programs.
Monique, why don't you come up here and sit in my chair and I'll leave?
No. We have space.
So we're all here to provide, hopefully provide some good information around our budgets, and then also provide some good program information for you. I think that you'll be interested in hearing. I did want to take a moment to appreciate our finance staff who have been having a really difficult time these days in the, with the instability of our financial system as it is currently. So I just can't appreciate them enough for the continued work that they do.
We're going to give Monique a chair so she'll be able to.
Oh.
Not only can supervisor bone drive a, a big rig, he can.
I can move furniture.
It can move furniture.
Thank you for that. What do I have here? All right. So this is the proposed budget for fiscal year. The proposed budget for fiscal year 22-23 is not yet final because they are not due until next week. So I am displaying this year's, the fiscal year 21-22, as it will be pretty similar in expenditures. Based on our expenditures, here is the anticipated revenue sources. The bulk of DHHS funding continues to be state, federal, and realignment for mandated programs. There is limited flexibility to determine how these funds are spent. The percentage of the DHHS budget that is funded by the general fund has been shrinking and was 2% in the current year. This is why the single audit and other financial transactions are so important that they're done timely, because without those, those reports, we could be without that blue portion of the pie. Preparing for this fiscal year's budget has been challenging for staff. Due to the year-end closed processes not being complete and transactions not being done timely, staff continue to rely on some best guess and internal spreadsheets instead of being able to rely on the, on the county's financial system. This slide shows the transactions that have not been posted for the last fiscal year and the current fiscal year. This impacts the fund balance projections for budget preparation.
So you have $29 million not posted?
We have $29 million of transactions that have not posted. That's correct. In, in this current year.
Right.
Here are the new known revenue sources that we could receive in the next budget year. Staff have done a remarkable job this, this last year getting new grants. Really looking forward to the work that's going to happen with these new grants. So as noted in.
Supervisor bone, ask a question.
Can you go back one?
Maybe.
So there's a $700,000 for a property purchased for the lab, and the lab's across the street now, right?
Yes.
And we just spent all, we just spent quite a bit of money on the lab. I, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, should we, it sounds like we have property for a lab. And I, and I know, I know we're busy, I know where everything else is, should, but we did put in $600,000 worth of air transfer and, and air handlers and everything over there. Is that all antiquated already?
Well, what I, I was going to speak to in my, my update, but all of us are right now.
Hold on, here, can you put your microphone on?
There's no, there's no button. I don't. Did you try it on the neck?
That is different.
I think you have to do it. Because I think it's a public comment perhaps.
Wait, hold on a second. Let's try it. How about that? Try it now. We've never had.
No one's sat there yet.
Yes, now, no. Can you hear me now?
No. And I moved the button.
Is it the other button?
No, this is, this one says podium, and this one says.
I can vote, so vote next time.
Oh, is the ADA podium, is that it? Okay, cool. Let's try that. We haven't had that one yet. Okay, it sounds like it's working. Okay. So supervisor.
Special podium.
Yes. So, so supervisor bone, to, to answer your question, we have the lab broken up into three separate spaces, bursting at the seams to put it nicely, and so those upgrades are essential for us to be able to maintain the site in its current place. However, we do need another site to be able to maintain the operations and be able to expand our capacity to do the wastewater, excuse, not wastewater treatment, but water testing, rabies testing, you know, communicable diseases, you know, we want to get STD testing up and running. And so we were awarded a grant from the state, over $2 million. That's going to help us to be able to go to a new site where all the services of that lab can be on one site and really just be appropriate for what the lab needs. So I, I appreciate your question, and that's really with that grant funding, we wouldn't be able to entertain another site.
Great.
We're going to share an infographic on the slide here. So this is just showing that we have more than 100 programs and services in DHHS. I, I really wanted to note that, you know, we're not going to go into all 100 programs today, but we do have a lot of staff that do really good work for the community, and so I just want to recognize that I, I want to, them to know that I'm super grateful for the good work that they do. I will also just say that the numbers in CalFresh and Medi-Cal, those numbers have skyrocketed during COVID. I think the, the increase in CalFresh was like 4,000, and then Medi-Cal's up there too. So a lot of the other services are, have, have reduced, just like other businesses, and I'll go into that a little bit later. In CalFresh, the caseload numbers in the infographic equals $67 million that were issued in EBT to the community.
Michelle, supervisor Bushnell?
I'm sorry, could I, on the last slide where it said the 28,000 or 23,000, is that people?
That's people.
Thank you.
That's, that's people or cases, Monique? People.
Okay. Thank you. So each square is people or case? Okay.
Yep. So the caseload numbers there equal $67 million issued in EBT to the community. It includes an additional $26 million in emergency allotments due to the, due to the pandemic. The emergency allotments are set to end in May 2022, with the last issuance occurring in June of 2022. For Medi-Cal, we currently have the highest case count in our history and a 16% change since November of 2019. And that's mainly due to a letter that was sent out instructing counties to take no negative action for folks that were receiving Medi-Cal benefits. And counties have now been instructed to start taking those negative actions on Medi-Cal cases starting in April.
When you say negative actions, is that like if somebody doesn't really qualify, or what is the negative actions?
If someone doesn't, doesn't prepare their paperwork and then they get a discontinuance notice for not having that paperwork then.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor bone?
And I see where we put 126 people to work and the welfare to work. How many people were eligible to find, I mean, since we have such a, it even says right below that staffing shortage. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, I don't know if that's Monique or what, but are there, how many people are involved in the welfare to work program? We've had 100, 100 shift.
During the shuffle. Well, during the last couple of years, there had been a haltage on the welfare to work, so there were waivers where people did not have to participate. So these numbers are from people who chose to participate in certain work activities. So I don't have the number of how many people would actually have been in the program because we did not have to provide any welfare to work.
So with what Director Beck said about the changing the Medi-Cal requirements, if they're not doing, this, that number, that 126 entered into employment 2021, should skyrocket because we don't have the pandemic or COVID restrictions.
Exactly.
So these people should be kicking it.
Exactly. We do expect the welfare to work number go up as the state starts to.
So you're going to earn your pay, huh?
Release waivers, yes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
The other part that I did want to make note of though is the call centers only at 56% staff currently. The call center is who does a lot of the CalFresh and Medi-Cal work. They're currently open four days a week due to staffing levels and backlog. We really are looking at ways. We really are looking at ways to incentivize getting staff hired and trained to do that work. And, and I will just add that the minimum wage increase was, you know, great for all people employed, but it's really impacting our recruitment efforts for our eligibility staff because they're in training for three months. The work that they do is really complex and they're really close to, their wages really close to minimum wage right now. So you'll hear more about that from me, a lot, a lot more. And we do anticipate a lot more work being done around employment and helping Humboldt. I'll also just say it's pretty cool that we had 603 adjustable children's desks built by our helping Humboldt folks during, during COVID. So that's pretty great. DHHS has contracts with 123 community partners totaling $73 million. This is a variety of community organizations, including the Family Resource Centers, Betty Chin, Boys and Girls Club, Changing Tides, RCAA, Redwoods Rule, Remy Vista, Open Door Clinic, and the Uroch Tribe. I'm not going to read the, all the names of the 123. It's wonderful to support the work that's happening in the community with partners and, and we just can't, we, we couldn't do the work that we do without them. We also have new partners for additional services. Emmy will speak more to that. I'm very excited about the opportunity for staff to co-locate with one of our partners in the east area, the Hoopa Tribe. Chairman Davis has been a great supporter in this collaboration to allow us to provide more efficient services on tribal land and in partnership with, with their health and human services. And then the center at McKinleyville is opening its doors this year after years and years of planning. Multiple organizations like the Family Resource Center, Open Door, Child Support, and DHHS will all be providing services in one location there. We are also expanding services in Southern Humboldt where we'll also have that office in Redway once our ADA work is done in Garberville. DHHS acts as the administrative entity for the housing continuum of care known as the HHC or Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition. As such, DHHS currently administers 20 contracts across 11 different partners and five funding sources. Each funding source comes with its own disease, array of rules and reporting requirements, and a cap on administration between 3% to 7%, which does not cover our costs. A lot of those administrative costs, we allow our partners to utilize because it's not enough for those programs to meet the requirements for each funding stream. This duty is in addition to DHHS housing programs such as Home Program, the CalWorks Housing Action Program, Housing and Disability Advocacy Program, and Adult Protective Services. Together with our community partners, we've housed more than 110 people experiencing homelessness in the past year in permanent supportive housing with wraparound services. And later this month, DHHS Home is helping 15 chronically homeless people with serious mental illness move into a new permanent supportive housing project in Eureka.
Yeah, Connie, I was going to mention, you sent us a, an, an example of some of the things that can really go wrong. And, you know, I really want to thank our different folks who are, you know, letting us house people because they're not the easiest to house and once they get in there, they don't stay in there. So the stories, you know, the stories like the one you shared, I don't think people understand. And it's really hard for other people to want to, want to do it if they hear those stories, if that makes any sense. I, it's just, I was floored at that one though. It's like, they're definitely folks that are not as easy to place.
We and our partners have connected with more than 580 people experiencing homelessness through street outreach, assisting them on their path to secure housing. On the night of the point in time count, more than 350 people were in emergency shelters. There's more funding coming available and that will require us to bring a local housing action plan to your board for approval in June. I'm going to turn it over to Emmy now to discuss some of the things happening in behavioral health.
Is that on?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi. Emmy Botsler Rogers, Behavioral Health Director here in Humboldt County. Nice to see you all in person. I just wanted to start by recognizing how hard staff have worked over the past year to really address our long-term, our longstanding deficit in behavioral health and continue to navigate the impacts of COVID as well as provide high-quality services to the community. I wanted to take a minute just to recognize and appreciate staff because I think it's so often that what's going wrong gets lifted up and, and staff in behavioral health really do some hard and good work and I just wanted to say that. To that end, some of our accomplishments over, or going into this next fiscal year include securing an additional $2 million in grants, which will cover things like the Behavioral Health Justice Intervention Services partnership with the Sheriff's Department, Continued Mobile Response Team Crisis Services, additional staff for emergency department support, additional outreach and engagement, and recovery residences for some of our substance use population. We've also secured $2 million from Senator McGuire for an adult crisis residential treatment facility. We are making really great progress in partnership with Dr. Buxbaum based on recent grant funding in our children's crisis residential treatment facility. We've been able to maintain seven-day-a-week mobile response team and jail coverage through COVID and we've been able to keep Semperivirons and the CSU Crisis Stabilization Unit operational, which has been quite a challenge and an accomplishment. We have Bridges to Success, which is our ongoing partnership with education, offering, providing in partnership, staff on campuses to support students throughout the county. And we've beefed up our zero-to-five services through child-parent psychotherapy and evidence-based practice that we've begun using. We also have regional services that are growing in a multitude of ways, including with Bridges to Success, but also as, as Director Beck referenced, through McKinleyville, the center in McKinleyville, and partnership out most recently in the Hoopa area. And our AOT pilot program is moving ahead, is underway. And then finally, we have our SUD expanded services that includes now after hours or evening hours for those individuals who are working during the day and also adopting some culturally responsive services. Some of our challenges, many of which you are aware, include our placement shortages. Those exist here in Humboldt County and throughout the state. We're seeing increases in conservatorships, which add to the placement challenges. We have lack of sustainable funding for some of our most critical services. So Crisis Negotiation Team is a team that goes out if somebody's barricaded in their house. We partner with law enforcement on that. And our Mobile Response Team, neither of those are funded over time. We can bill a little bit for Mobile Response Team, but for the most part, we're not able to draw down money for those services. We're seeing a multitude of unfunded mandates. I've brought before your board already, bless you, assisted outpatient treatment, which you have allocated County General Fund for. The governor has also introduced a new structure, proposed structure called Care Court, which also comes with no funding to behavioral health. We have had profound staffing shortages, which impacts staff morale. And we are dealing with not in my backyardism, NIMBYism, very strongly and it's, it's a challenge. I think the stigma around mental health and substance use disorder is, is very alive and well in our community and it's been challenging. And there's misconceptions of the role of behavioral health, which we're often working to, to talk about. So just what our role and responsibility is with homelessness, our ability or inability to compel treatment, finding placement or higher levels of care, or serving everyone and anyone despite lacks, a lack of funding or resources.
And Supervisor Bone has a question?
Yes.
Yeah, and, yeah, NIMBYism can be a, I really love what Dr. Buxbaum is doing and, and trying to accomplish. I think he is, and he's such a nice man. I think he, I think he would do it if he didn't find the funding. That's, that's the great part about it and everything else. And then I was also wondering on the CNN, CNT team, since they're very important when they need to be called, I know they're not called a lot, but they are called on a, on a pretty regular basis. Are they training with, and I hate using the word SWAT, but the, the crisis teams that come from the local law enforcement and everything else? So they're intertwined, so they, they respond at the same time or do they wait until they're called or?
They're called by law enforcement when needed and we do do a, a large amount of cross-training with law enforcement.
So should we, so should we use-
Crisis intervention.
Should we try to maybe train more law enforcement? Considering your shorts, they have staff shortages too, but then, I think that's where we're going anyway, is, is training our law enforcement, you know, with, with everything that's going. It, can we do so we don't have two people, we have one person that can do both, you know? I mean, I'm not, I, I'm just saying, is it, is it possible to work with the sheriff and the chiefs of police and everything else and saying, hey, can we, can we train two of you guys and put them through the, I mean, it's, it's rigorous training. I'm not, I, that's the problem, I understand. But we have a lot of people in law enforcement with full degrees in a lot of social services and things like that that might be able to. And I'm sure you're probably exhausting those ideas, but-
And it would be a conversation for us to have with the sheriff, right? Or, or law enforcement. We do do cross-training and so our goal is that when law enforcement goes out by themselves, they are able to be responsive in a, in a supportive way and help stabilize. I think, like you said, they, they also have a lot on their plate and really it is our behavioral health's expertise. So if we can do that together or if we can be there with support from them, I think that that often is the best outcome.
Okay.
Okay, and opportunities. So there's lots of opportunities for us. I wanted to start with just the opportunity to advocate for and prioritize resources for behavioral health. And Semperivirons, our facility, is an example that really needs some resources. I was going to mention that I live near Eureka High and so I've gotten to watch that gym be built, which I'm so happy about. My kids go to Eureka High, my husband coaches at Eureka High, so I spend a lot of time in that gym. And wouldn't it be great if our community committed the same passion and resources for a facility for people struggling with mental illness? I also think that we could allocate more resources for placements locally and on the other end of the continuum, really invest in, in prevention and early intervention. That's where we're going to make a, a difference in our, the health and wellness of our community is if we're starting with our littles and their families. Advocating for adequately funded legislation is so critical. So I just talked about AOT and also Care Court. But being able to oppose expanding conservatorships, for instance, without additional funding is really important because without the funding, we don't have capacity to do that. Normalized mental health is a critical aspect of human wholeness. I, I, as I said earlier, stigma is alive and well and it's so important for us to really be thinking about it as, as who we all are, right? Not just those that we see and are concerned about. And NIMBYism, we have an opportunity today to, to look at where we can place a crisis, an adult crisis residential treatment facility. We have been working to find a location with lots of pushback from people who don't want it in their backyard, yet they want the services in the community. So we need help with that. And increasing understanding and educating community on the role of behavior, behavioral health, which really leads, I think, to the last bullet point, which is supporting strength in partnerships across education and problem solving. I want to thank the board because already many times I feel supported by the board in, in building relationship and, and having communication with partners. I think we've made great progress with education. The Medical Society is a group that we meet with regularly. Law enforcement is, I value our relationships with them so much and we're moving forward with some, some really good services. And the emergency departments that, you know, are challenged like we are, are coming to the table, we're at the table with them. So I, I feel hopeful about it and I, I really look forward to continued support and partnership from your board as well as from our stakeholders. So thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Amanda Winstead. I'm the director over at Chiao Welfare. Thanks for, for the time today to talk a little bit about our programs. I'm going to be brief and I get to be on video. So you're, so you're getting my rosy cheeks. I want to spend a little bit of time and just update you around the AG settlement. That's been a lot of the work and kind of like the agenda for child welfare. So I want to talk a little bit about what we've done in the last year and hope, and hopefully our final year of the settlement. Our monitoring period ended in February and it's been a great year of a lot of really innovative and neat, I, I think, ground cut, really advanced work in child welfare that I'm fairly certain is happening in Humboldt County and not in many other counties. We're at a place now where we're looking at measuring, understanding, and using data in ways that are really unique and, and exciting. So our last year, our first couple of years of the settlement were a lot about policy creation, compliance. Our last year has been a little more focused on connection to services, a lot of work with mental health, connecting with mental health programs. And then CQI, really, really digging into this, this concept that we call continuous quality improvements, which is a little different than a quality assurance approach. It's really a, a real process of understanding the, the quantitative and the qualitative data to really understand the quality of the compliance of our, our services and to understand when we aren't meeting, meeting the mark and we want to make improvements, how we do that. That we start with really a, a pretty advanced root cause analysis, if you will, to really understand when there's a challenge, what that means, where that's coming from, so we can implement improvements that work. And we're seeing this, we're, we're, we're new and, and young in our implementation of this program, but we're seeing it work. And so we've had some really exciting movement in some of the data over the last year that I want to run us through quickly here. So, so work around mental health and being in compliance with mental health screening tools. This is how we refer children to behavioral health for services. You'll see we started at about 37% compliance and we've moved to about 73% compliance. The state is at about 50% compliance. So this is a remarkable area of work that we've done in a short period of time to really move the dial and see a real difference in connecting children with the services that they need. Similarly, we're looking at children, family, team meetings, another really important place in the practice where children, their families, their support teams come together to really talk about what's happening, talk about what needs to be happening. Initially, we were coming in at about 16% compliance there and have done work now to move ourselves to about 31. You'll see, we probably still have some room to grow there, although I will say the state average is about 21%. So I would say as a state, we have room to grow.
So I, I have a question for you regarding, what, what is, and obviously it's not just here, but what is the biggest challenge to this meeting compliance? The numbers, I mean, what's so hard about getting-
Oh, sure. I think it's a lot of different things. I think, I mean, I think it's, you know, the, the general challenges that we talk about, staffing, caseload, workload, things like that. We've also found documentation challenges that are, our, like a lot of, a lot of human service databases are, it's very dense and a lot of little boxes to check to show that you've done a thing. Lots of times the work actually is happening and it's not being documented in a way that's being counted. That's not all of it. There's more that we can do here for sure.
Well, it sounds like you're doing comparative to the state, we're doing-
We are and we're looking deep to understand exactly that because it's easy and probably the place that we most often go, that a person is failing to do something, right? That, that, that we're not good at our jobs. And what we're actually finding is that our staff often are working very, very, very hard and are very good at their jobs. They may not have the training, they may not have the tool, or we're running into real system- or we're running into real system barriers. And that's helping us really find where those real solutions are versus going straight to work performance kind of assumptions. So lots of work around Children, Family, Team meetings. We're also looking at really understanding what our services are like from a bunch of different perspectives. It's one thing for us to feel like we're doing a good job. It's another to understand from a family's perspective, from a partner's perspective. And so as part of the settlement developed in conjunction with CDSS, with the state who has an existing CFT stakeholder survey tool that we've implemented. So participants in these meetings can access that tool and give us data, give us information about what the experience of the meeting is like. We've done a lot of work around tribal collaboration fidelity tools. This is a really complicated area in the practice and an area that I would say Humboldt County probably stands alone in measuring the fidelity of tribal collaboration and what that really looks like. It's been a really interesting process. We've found that we're not doing as well as we should be and we could be, but we know that now in different ways. Prior to having the data, you know, you can have the feeling of working and trying hard. Having the data helps us really see and know what's working and where we have room. Let's see, and then we've done a number of case reviews. More about CQI and just understanding deeply the practice, what's working, what isn't working, where we need improvements. Risk assessments, an area we've really dived into, more work around collaboration at specific places within our process, both investigation and intake. We, so we've done a lot in this last year. We are hopeful that we have met the requirements of the settlement. A judge, you know, there's a process for that, and a judge will make a determination, but we're hopeful that that's what we'll hear. We intend to continue to build on the work over the last couple of years. Since 2015, the AG has been involved in the goals and the work of this agency, right? And that's really largely been set for us. Sure, yeah. As we move to a post-AG era, I think we're at a really neat place, and we have a real opportunity to work with community and stakeholders, families, staff, tribes, to really determine what the next chapter and our path forward looks like. And so we'll see that through strategic planning over the next year or so. That builds on, like I said, I think really tremendous system improvements and innovations. So we'll continue to build on tribal collaboration, CQI, workforce development implementation, linkages with behavioral health. There's exciting work happening that you'll likely be hearing about if you haven't through the Families First Prevention Services Act around prevention. That's a broad implementation across agencies and community. But in terms of challenges, if we're to thrive as an agency and serve this community in the ways that we intend to, we must focus on our staff. And this is really what I want to take a minute to talk about. It's the most important. The last six to seven years in child welfare have been under intense scrutiny and criticism that's often framed very personally, and it lands solidly on the shoulders of the men, the women, the people doing this work. We expect these jobs to be hard, right? As social workers, I used to joke, it's social work, not social easy, right? We expect these jobs to be hard. But something different is happening. Staff are our greatest resource. We need them. In fact, they may be the most important, the only thing that really matters. I have a number of resources, I have tools, things that help me do my job and make it easier. But the one thing I can't do my job without are all the people who came to work at child welfare today. We can't keep children and families safe without them. We have a 31% vacancy rate for social workers. We have over a 50% vacancy rate for social service aides and over a 50% vacancy rate for VAs. These are the frontline staff out there. It's getting harder and harder to find people who want to do these jobs. And it's not just COVID. I think it's an overall devaluing of public service and human service. CWS is some of the most important work, right? The work that we do has the greatest consequence in our community. As a leadership, as a board of supervisors, as an employer, right? And as a community, we have to change this. I know our community has really high standards and expectations for us around services, around accountability, and they should. They absolutely should. But you want the best programs? You need the best staff, right? And luckily, we have them. But as a leadership and as a community, we need to support them as that. And this isn't just sensitive talk from Amanda. This is, I mean, this is everything that leadership research says. It's what our practice models, our strategic planning, our vision says, and it's what our staff tell us. We need to hear them, otherwise we'll keep losing them. And they aren't replaceable. They are unique, smart, hardworking, committed people, and we need them. So that's my ask of this board, and like Emmy, my thanks too because I do feel support from you all as a group of people in this community. But we need help supporting, lifting up staff in their jobs, in their workplace, and in the community, right? Connie said, you know, we've got hundreds of programs. We have hundreds of people who are part of this community, too. So thank you. Thanks for allowing me a few minutes to talk about that, and I will pass over to Sophia.
Thank you, Amanda. And you didn't have to be on the screen that long. It's one thing about having a slide.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, your board. I'm Sophia Pereira, Public Health Director. So I just wanted to touch on some of the other work that we do in public health. Obviously, COVID has been front and center for this community around the world. And so I just wanted to use this opportunity to talk about the other really incredible work that we do in public health that may not get the same visibility. And I think it's also fitting that this week is National Public Health Week, so just really perfect timing to elevate the work that our staff do. So I already touched on the lab expansion, but we did receive an over $2 million state grant for us to build a new site. We have a site that's been identified, and we hope to secure it very soon, although soon is relative, of course. But that's really gonna meet a need. And I appreciate the question Supervisor Bone about, you know, the current lab that we have, and we need it to be functioning in order for us to someday move into a new lab. There's just so much that we have to maintain for continuity. And it's hard because it's facilities that, you know, there's a lot of needs to make sure that a lab is compliant with the standards that are set by the state. So we have the lab expansion that is really an exciting project going forward. I also wanted to touch on, in our nursing division, our Nurse Family Partnership Program. This is an evidence-based practice. It's a home visiting program, working with first-time moms from pregnancy up until the child is two years old. This is a really wonderful program. And I think speaking to Emmy's point about the importance of behavioral health support for families, for infants, this is really a great partnership that we've started with behavioral health to have a mental health clinician actually go out into the homes of these clients and provide mental health support. So we've found that to be really successful, we're doing everything we can to make sure that it's a sustainable model that we can continue into the future. But that's a really exciting new development for the Nurse Family Partnership Program.
I have a question. You just reminded me of, we used to do the senior health visits, or, I mean, was it the nurses that used to go? And then that program went away, and which I thought was really sad, that it went away. And I'm seeing Michelle going, it still went away? Okay, any way to bring it back? I think especially, you know, I think it's that we're all getting older. There's a lot of us.
Yes, definitely. We've recognized that our senior population is growing, and so, and we know in DHHS, that's a really super vulnerable population. Again, the lack of staffing, the lack of being able to hire nurses, public health nurses in particular that have that extra certificate, has been hard. And then COVID happened, and we had to redirect staff. So ideally, yes, we would like to have nurses co-located with Adult Protective Services and the In-Home Supportive Services staff that we have. We're just not there yet, but it is on the radar for sure.
Okay, thanks. So one other thing I just wanted to note about Nurse Family Partnership. We did just learn that the program was awarded the 2022 Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council of Humboldt County's Children First Award. So we just learned about that. And so it sounds like there'll be some promotion in the community about the Nurse Family Partnership Program receiving that recognition. So well-deserved recognition from, for that team. So Catherine O'Malley, the supervising public health nurse, and the public health nurses that do that work every day, supporting young families is just really incredible. On the environmental health side, we do have a grant from CalRecycle to abate an illegal legacy dump site. This should be done this spring. So that's really exciting to see that come to fruition. And then in our...
Surprised if I hadn't had a question.
Please.
What site?
It's near Matole Road, the Wildcat, Wildcat illegal dump site. But I can get the address for you.
That narrows it down because I didn't work, yeah.
No, yeah, I can get the address for you.
Now, do we work with code enforcement on that? Because we just got rid of a legacy dump site in Mad River, or before Mad River, Dinsmore. So just to make sure we're not both working on this. Does code enforcement work with you on that? Or...
I'll double-check what their level of involvement is. I can follow up with you and get you some more background on the project.
Please, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. And then our Healthy Communities Division does a lot of really great health education work. One of the things that they've also been really good at is securing, you know, grant funding for a variety of different projects. So one of the things they did in this current fiscal year is install two bike skills courses, one in McKinleyville, one in Fortuna, to improve bicycling skills, and also facilitated several friendly driver program sessions to improve safety for all active transportation users.
Just because I love those kind of things. Where are the bicycle skill programs in Fortuna and McKinleyville? And what constitutes a friendly driver program? Because it should be, we should have kiosks along Broadway or something like that because, or I'm not exactly sure, but since we have it out there, and I know we've got little things like a driver's license and things like that, but what constitutes a friendly driver program?
Yeah.
And where do the bicycle safety programs go at? Because I'm wondering, so many, there's so many bicycle programs out there. Brad, I'll be used to have one through Eureka City Schools. Some of the bike shops have those. They've got a mountain bike and all that stuff. I'm just wondering how many people were putting on that? Since I still ride my bike, but I haven't fallen off lately, but I'm a senior, I'd love to know about what Virginia said more nurses to the senior help. So I'm just wondering if you could shift over, so...
Well, I am happy to get you some more information about the details of that particular, you know, what's involved in that bike skills course, and then also the curriculum for the friendly driver program. Happy to get that to you. And then I also just wanted to touch on some of the challenges. Oh, can we get the PowerPoint up, please? Thank you. Oops, okay. And so then, just some of the challenges that I wanted to touch on. You know, for the past decade, there's been stagnant and under, you know, declining funding for public health. I think we saw definitely at the beginning of this pandemic the impact of that, of not having the workforce in place, not having all the resources in place to respond. But also, just like I gave examples of the other work that we do in public health, all the other really core public health functions that need to be sufficiently funded so that we can protect the health of our community and make sure that we're doing everything we can to address health outcomes. So it's gonna take some time for us to stabilize public health and to build up our infrastructure to be able to meet the needs of the community. And so, you know, the state is looking to invest $300 million a year into local health departments. So that's something really reassuring to see that the state's making that commitment. And so really, we're looking into, you know, workforce development. How do we make sure that we're not only, you know, developing, recruiting, you know, community health outreach workers, public health nurses, environmental health specialists, health educators, but how do we also retain them? How do we make sure that they are able to stay within public health and grow within the organization? And so that's gonna be really important for rebuilding public health and also rebuilding core public health functions, like our sexual health clinic. That's something that we are working really hard to get up and running. We're hiring a family nurse practitioner so that we can start to provide those core sexual health clinic needs, like testing, and being able to provide basic treatment to be that gap that exists in the healthcare system, to make sure that people who are most vulnerable have access to basic services and testing. And so I think another challenge really has been, and I think this has been spoken to by some of my colleagues, of just introducing to the community the work that we do in public health. I think people have seen communicable disease be a leading thing that we do in public health, and it is absolutely a core function that I think is good, that is getting recognition. And there is so much that we do in public health that our staff do that does not get visibility. So how do we make sure that we have opportunities to share with the public what public health is about? That it goes from making sure that, you know, children have safe routes to school to making sure that we have good water quality. These are all things that are within the discipline and the field of public health. And so I think there's really an opportunity there, and I just really appreciate the board's support of public health and recognizing our staff that have worked so incredibly hard during this pandemic to respond to the needs of our community, and just really appreciate all of your support. And then actually, one other thing I wanted to touch on was actually, excuse me, around the county strategic framework. So we have three areas that our Community Health Improvement Plan actually really align with the board's strategic priorities around housing, adverse childhood experiences, and substance use disorder. And then also suicide prevention is another area. So we have these three priority areas that have been identified through the community health assessment that we do in the community, also through our Community Health Improvement Plan, where we bring partners together to identify what are the key areas that have a need for us to work on. So through that process, we identified what the board has also identified as really key priorities to work on. And so this year, LivWell Humboldt really is a network of these cross-sector partners. And that has been a really great showing from our community. So these different meetings have happened throughout the year, focus on each of these priority areas. So they've been data working groups to identify what data we currently have around housing and homelessness, for example. What data exists out there? What are the gaps in data to help us understand the work that we need to do together? And so that work will continue for the foreseeable future. We want to build that network so that we can have that collective impact. I wanted to include this visual here to show you that, you know, public health is a convener. We are not the sole entity that is responsible for this work, but we are a convener because we recognize the importance of bringing stakeholders, bringing community organizations together to address these key issues that the board has also identified. And then I will turn it over to Michelle.
On that last slide, I just, you can get back to me later. On the ACES scores, are our ACES scores improving with, I mean, I know it's, you mentioned you're going to work on that, but we've been working on that for quite a while. So, I mean, do our numbers change annually on that? Or do we see anything? Do we...
Is that something we should be concerned about?
Feel like I'm on Jeopardy. Wrong question. Is the, is the, is that changing at all? Because we've spent, this has been, ACES scores have been going on for five years. I know, six years, seven years. And I just, I know we're addressing that, or trying to address it. But then when I see that we're gonna start working on it, or I got the impression, we're gonna work on that with collaboration. And I'm thinking, I hope we've been collaborating.
Yeah, so I don't know if we should be paying attention to that, or should I...
Well, everybody's walking towards, everybody's walking to the front door.
Are we supposed to go out? It's kind of like trying to sleep through an alarm.
Let's have a pause. We're gonna take at least a five-minute break.
I have a question to answer for Supervisor.
I'm really impressed you remembered that.
Are we ready? Am I on?
Wait, we're missing one.
Is this live?
Actually, we've got a mic on screen. We've got three.
It is, okay.
You can answer.
Oh, you want me to answer? Okay, sure. Yes, ACES, we've been doing ACES work since before, there I am on the camera, since, you know, well before we had this... know, well before we had this last Community Health Improvement Plan. So public health does a Community Health Improvement Plan every five years, and this is our second one that we're doing. Because of the work that the community and partners like First Five Humbolts, the FRCs, various other early childhood organizations have been doing around ACES, we identified that as a priority area for this Community Health Improvement Plan, to pull everybody together that's working on it, to be able to have better cohesion and collective impact, to identify goals and measures that we can have for ACES so that we can track it over time, to really know, are we making improvements? To your question around the data, do we know if it's getting any better? Do we do it annually? The data that we talk about as far as what Humboldt's ACES look like, that came from the state, from a report from the state that we were not involved in. No one in Humboldt County, no organization in Humboldt County does an annual ACES study. But really, you wouldn't necessarily do an annual ACES study because it's generational, right? Like, this is generational work that we're trying to do in terms of stopping the cycle within one generation of a family system. So we don't have current data over a year, but ideally, we would have some kind of way of measuring how we're impacting ACES over time in Humboldt.
And the reason I ask that, for the last five, six, seven years, we've been the recipient, maybe even longer, I've been here eleven, you know, we have the worst ACES scores in California. So when do we get off of being the worst? And, I mean, I'm not saying we do it annually or anything else, and my problem being is knowing statewide, ACES scores are going to suffer because of what the trauma the kids have gone through the last two years with homeschool, or their parents being home, or whatever the case may be.
Increased substance use.
But, yeah, but when do we get to that point that we're no longer the worst in the state of California? Because if we have any goal, it would be to not be the worst anymore.
Right. Well, I would wonder what the state's going to do with regard to ACES work that the state was doing statewide, and how much, how they're collecting data, and how often are they going to be doing that study that they did, that got us that ranking, along with Mendocino County? Rural counties in general often see that worse, right? All the things are worse?
No, I understand, RCR, we address it on it, because we get the least amount of funding, we're the largest, you know, we're bigger than a lot of counties and everything else, but I'm just, and why I'm asking is, are they asking you for data? Are they, are they, are they, are we just going to find out, hey, we did another study, and, hey, you guys are worst again?
That's what I mean. I don't, we have not heard what the state is planning to do on collecting more data.
Is there someone we should ask?
Sure. Yeah, we can talk to Oshpid or the office, yeah, there's folks at the state we can talk to. I'm curious to hear what they're going to say around the Surgeon General leaving and how that's going to change, because she was certainly a leader around ACES across the state, so.
She was at a meeting three years ago telling us we were the worst down it, we all were at, and I'm just.
It's going to take considerable time, Supervisor Bone, for us to see some changes. There's a lot of, this is upstream prevention work, and it has to be coupled with other things. It can't just be preventing child abuse or the ACES that are listed in the study. It's also about getting poverty increased, right? Like, in terms of what the median income is, housing, we need more housing for folks. Like, there's a, it's an incredibly complicated social determinant of health, ACES is, in order for us to move the dial on it, there's a whole lot of upstream prevention work that has to happen. That's why I say it's generational. It's a really difficult thing to measure as well, so.
And that's just.
I would, we would love some help from the state, I guess, is what I would say.
Yeah, and I agree, and we should be finding out what we're getting, because, I mean, I have four or 5,000 kids at, you know, the county's largest recreational facility for kids.
Yeah.
And we get a lot of kids every weekend, every, I mean, out there, hundreds and hundreds, and I'm just wondering, you know, where we're going with all of this, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're probably well past our 30 minutes, so we will wrap it up as fast as we can. I have one slide for myself here, if you want to go back to the PowerPoint. Okay. So part of the role, one of the roles that I play as Assistant Director is to lead kind of our department-wide efforts on various initiatives here on this slide. For workforce development, we just completed a workforce development survey that staff across the department completed, and we're using that data to inform the development of a workforce development plan. We have a workforce development committee made up of staff across the department at various levels to look at the data and to put a plan together that is informed by that survey. Parts of the department, certain branches have workforce development plans as well, so part of my role is to build on and learn from what other branches have done in order to have a department-wide plan in that way. So we're going to be working on that. We just hired a performance, or a program manager for racial equity work. We've been doing equity work in some fashion for years in DHHS. However, we identified the need to address institutional and structural racism within our department. We had a group of staff come together across various levels across the department to develop a racial equities steering committee, and that steering committee developed an equity plan in partnership with our admin team. And part of that plan was to hire a program manager, which we just did. And we will be working with, part of, other aspects of that plan is working with HR to improve our staffing and recruitment and retention, creating affinity groups and understanding and improving experiences of BIPOC staff. I'm pretty proud of that plan. Another aspect is to partner with other organizations in the community around racial equity work in the community as well. And we're working with the county's DEI Committee through the Great Workplace Culture Initiative as well, so we're teaming with them. Performance management and continuous quality insurance, I'm sorry, continuous quality improvement. Clearly, we're well over 30 minutes. Every branch in the department has some level of performance management or CQI happening. We'll be implementing a department-wide electronic performance management system to improve tracking and reporting of performance measures across the department, and to include administrative projects like our workforce development plan, our racial equity strategic plan, and our DHHS strategic plan that have or will have measurable goals that we'll be tracking over time and reporting to you. We'd like to do better with sharing department-wide program data with the public. The COVID dashboard was an attempt to share data at real time with the community as best as we could, and we definitely know that there's more work we can do around sharing program data in DHHS. We have a quarterly trends report that is posted online every quarter. It's a PDF, however, and so we'd like to have something that's electronic so folks can interact with the data and look at different programs and get more information from it. So we'll be doing that. And then finally, as a trauma, we want to become more of a trauma-informed organization. Prior to COVID, there was extensive work being done on this area. We had staff and teams in various levels across the branch doing a lot of really great work in how we support the staff that experience secondary trauma because of the work that they do in DHHS and being exposed to trauma that community members experience. And so we will be kicking that back off again, and we're looking forward to that. So those are just a few of our department-wide efforts that we'll be working on as well. Oh, do you want this?
Will you move the slide forward?
Yes. Oops. There you go. Oh. Oh, no. Oh, that's why. Okay.
Upside down.
Ah, now it's upside down. Jeez. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. So as your board could imagine, it is difficult to plan, to do future work with the unknown financial stability of the county. I want to thank your board for your votes this morning, and also just say that, you know, we have staff in DHHS that are ready to assist the county in moving forward, however that goes, and I'll be looking for direction from you and the CAO to do that. Just, it's really important that we get out of this that we're in. In addition to that, I just, you know, staffing is such a struggle for DHHS and other programs. I know other departments are struggling too, but it's really affecting us and our ability to do our work. We are seeing a bit of increase in applications now, and hope that other things that we can do will help that. I will say again, the staffing issues that we have around the call center and our benefit programs, we will be coming back soon to discuss that. So in addition to that, you want to move that slide? How your board can help us, help DHHS, help the community. This slide is a list of things that we need support from your board. The creation of more affordable housing units, creating safe parking programs, navigation center, additional shelter. We really need the residential facilities. We need help with NIMBY. As Emmy stated earlier, it's just so important that we, when we find facilities that are, that can be equipped to do some of that work, we are facing some pretty significant NIMBY issues, and so we need your help with that. And we need help with finding facilities that could do this work. And then on the other.
Supervisor Bone, may I have a question?
Yes.
On the safe parking program, what, how much involvement do we have with the safe parking program taking place out on Samoa Boulevard? I know the warehouse is full with, but then there seems to be quite a bit of overrun in the old weigh station and all of that, so. Do we have, I don't think that helps your NIMBYism, but.
No, are you talking about the City of Arcata's program?
I guess that would, I don't know of any other one out there, so, yeah. Yeah, the Arcata one, I didn't know if we were partnered with them or anything like that.
We are not.
Are we providing services of any sort?
Arcata House Partnership is the one providing services there, and then they refer to us when needed for resources.
Do we, I'm just wondering how it's going, or have you been over to look at it, or has anybody been over to look at it? Before we, before we, it's a great learning tool of what you would like a safe program, a safe housing program to look like, and it's right there on the corridor of the highway. So I was just wondering, have we toured it or looked at it before we do a program? Because it seems like we have one we could either replicate or learn from, and I don't know if anybody's been over there.
I have, I have not yet. I think they just started the program like in the last month.
Oh, it's been longer than that.
Let me jump in here for a second if I can.
I hear a voice.
Yeah, it is, it is transitioning to operational, so I wouldn't say that it's, you know, it's something you want to look at today and say, like, that's what it is, because it's not quite there yet. There's still work being done on the cleanup, there's still work being done on, on, you know, getting who's going to be there and how it's going to work and all that, and then there's also staffing. It's still in progress, but it's getting there. And it is, it is headed by the City of Arcata for sure, with Arcata House really doing, you know, all the real contract work to get it done. So to be reported on when they actually get to where they're going, but they're in process and it's going in the right direction.
So, and so I guess I'll direct it to Supervisor Wilson. So what's taking place out there alongside the road is not part of the safe parking program?
Some of, and I don't know what particular part you're talking about, but some of those folks.
The one with all the trailers and cars.
Well, there's a lot of places along Samoa Boulevard that have cars and folks, and so some folks are part of, are going to be, are in process to be part of that program and are waiting that, you know, that transition to occur. At least of a few days ago, I haven't been down there, you know, in the last few days, but that's where it was at, is that some of those folks are just basically waiting, and they are, they are actually receiving some services there now, so.
So they're just staged.
I can't, I'm not a representative of the project, I'm just telling you what I know, so. There you go.
All right, great.
And he actually knows more than I do. So that's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions, we're all here.
Supervisor Drun has a question.
Actually, just a comment. I want to thank all of you and all of your staff for all your hard work, and, you know, we work together on Hoopa, and I know Hoopa is very grateful for your outreach and work, and we're going to be jointly staffing the new facility out there. Great work on that. I know we're hoping to move forward with the IROC in a similar way. And it's also very exciting to see the McKinleyville Center getting so close, so everybody's very hopeful and anxious for that, so I just want to thank you all for all your hard work. It's not easy times. We never have enough resources to help everybody we'd like to help, but you're doing everything you can, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think that'd be a ditto. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. I actually want to.
Supervisor Wilson.
Expand a little bit, what, what you've just said in terms of, like, you know, the thank you, but also, this is a great summary of this particular department, which we get asked about a lot. And I think that these budget hearings, especially the first ones these, are just a really good primer for anybody who wants to know what county government's doing in all these different departments and places. And so I advise anybody who wants a, you know, fairly quick, by quick, I mean, you know, it's going to be over eight hours by the time we're done with this in terms of a hearing, but a good primer about what, everything you're doing, especially, especially the DHHS, and I wanted to say this is, it's always educational, even though we're, you know, we're in it, or all the time, it's like, we get updated on some parts that maybe we just haven't heard about in a while and that sort of thing, so I'm just really grateful for that. And my only comment was, today was, you know, again, the idea about the friendly driver program, or whatever it is, that, you know, trying to train drivers is one thing, but really, trainings and signage and speed limits and all those things are just no substitute for safe, more safely designed roads. And so I know that public health departments in other areas, and even here too, do have a nexus with our planning and our public works to advocate for just better, more safe design roadways and multimodal ways of getting around. But beyond that, I think this is, you guys are doing a wonderful job, and thanks so much for the update.
Supervisor Bone, and then Bushnell.
Thanks, good job.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you also, from all of us, obviously, but also as a new supervisor, recognizing, being able to recognize how much your department does, and especially in the unincorporated areas of my district, how active and important it is. And I appreciate seeing faces and learning who people are and what your duties are. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So before the DA comes up, I have a question, because, sorry, I do know that.
Not yet, Nikki.
I keep thinking you get up and down. No, but I know Yana has a time commitment and a bit of a crunch. Would it be okay if we tried to sneak in the cooperative extension? You're all right? Well, I'll let you say yes or no.
I said yes.
Okay.
For Yana, any.
And also human resources. We're doing the same.
Sorry, Nikki, I got something else.
All right, so where's Yana?
She's there.
Okay.
She has to hug everybody.
Let's go. Welcome.
It's right on the right podium. Okay, gotcha. And then that will just.
And that'll come up as soon as you're done.
Okay. All right. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Yana Valikovik. I'm the Director of the Cooperative Extension Program. So members of the board, Madam Chair, staff, it's a real pleasure to be with you all today. I have a few slides just to highlight some of the fun things that we've been up to and tee off some of the things that your investment in us delivers to Humboldt County and its residents. So, Michelle Bushnell, I don't know if you know this, but we are the originating county for the cooperative extension model in California in 1913. residents. So Michelle Bushnell, I don't know if you know this, that we are the originating county for the cooperative extension model in California in 1913. Yeah, so we predate the enabling legislation, and really the model was tested here. And I used to think that it was sort of a pity model, like, we're far away, so we better go do something in someplace where, you know, it's really hard to get services. And I later came to realize, because I had the responsibility of leading the centennial for our program, that that was the wrong framework. Really, it was about a place of adaptation and innovation, and we were the right place to start the model. And I would say to date, I think we still really are. And, and that was because fundamentally, we're a community that works together. We're a community that tries to figure out how to solve our common problems, and it doesn't take a lot of resources to really make great things happen. So I just want to thank your predecessors and your board for, you know, staying with us through all these years. It's a lot, and it's really great, too. So, and for, I think, for those who are listening to this, so you all partner with the University of California and the US Department of Agriculture to deliver this program, and it's through a memorandum of understanding. We are in 57 of 58 counties, and so that map illustrates kind of where our physical locations are. We have three campuses that really serve us primarily, as well as the Vet Med Center at Davis. And we have a number of research extension centers, which are places where we do trials and research, and Hopland is our closest facility that we use. You know, the, the main premise behind this is really to network and connect the capacities of the university with the problems and challenges of the home and the community, and to, to solve common problems. And within that is the motto really around helping people help themselves. And we kind of have a three-legged stool, which we work, which is in agriculture and natural resources and supporting healthy families and communities. So how that is reflected here is, is with a very outdated staff photo, like, I can't wait to have everyone back together to, to do that, to take that picture. But it's really, you know, done through this joint partnership. Our staff are connected both in Humboldt and Del Norte Counties. We're a joint unit, so we share staff in both locations. And those names are sorted alphabetically, but I think the color is probably the interesting part. So you all provide our administrative staff through Leslie Canafax and Jennifer Steenblock. The university provides the staff whose names are in black. And then we write a lot of grants to make sure that we can do dynamic work and bring a lot more resources here. So those are the names that are in blue. We just have one of the most dynamics teams in California. I'm just incredibly proud by the team that we have here. It's really great. And I want to share two pieces of exceptional news, and in part, your leadership helped us in this space through RCRC and CSAC. The state was able to come together last year and restore our budget, which had been going through several decades of decline. And we have two new positions that are coming our way as a result of that. So I'm very excited about that. One of those is a longstanding position that we've always had, which is in plant-based agriculture. So it's titled Horticulture and Specialty Crops. Some of you may have known Deborah Giroux. She held a post similar to that. So that should be released, I think, in the next two months or so. And then we also have a new position in economic development focused specifically on kind of ag and natural resource industries, and that is in recruitment right now with a resident office to be in Del Norte, co-serving our direction here. So that is, I just cannot, I can't get over how exciting it is to finally be back into that rebuilding place. As you know, we all do lots of different educational programs, and they vary based on topics of the day. And, you know, during COVID, that was not the easiest thing for us. We are a very public-facing organization that does lots of hands-on work, and, you know, we pivoted into the virtual space with successes and challenges. And, you know, I'll share at the end kind of where we're at right now. It's just so nice to be back with people. People are so hungry for work and hungry for opportunity. I, I advertised a workshop last week, and it filled in two days, just beyond the physical space of the room and the capacity. So things, things are going well in that regard. You're also probably aware that we do lots of partner-based educational programs, like through 4H Youth Development. We also have a bunch of nutrition education and the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program, known as FNAP, that's federally funded. And then we have our two volunteer-based programs, the Master Gardener and the Master Food Preserver Program. And we've struggled during COVID to make all of those programs work, but, you know, generally figured it out. And bottom right photo is from the Lamb Barbecue with 4H, and Rex, I know you were there, so thank you for, for supporting that event. We have had a lot of success, especially in the Master Food Preserver Program this year, and being able to do lots of demos and then training up new classes. And we're running a Master Gardener class right now. I think we have 33 people that are taking that, I think it's 10-week-long commitment. So things, things are going well in that, in that front. And now I wear glasses, so I can't read my own notes. And there's, we've been doing a bunch of work with HOOPA and with the UROC, and lots of excitement in, in that space, which, which is really interesting. They're, they're partnering with us and asking us to work on traditional foods and trying to help us figure out how to work on recipes. So what are the pH of acorns, for example, and how might, if we're going to can and preserve those, how do we think about that element? And so kind of some neat, neat stuff to, to be working on. Just a few more slides here. Respective to our research programs, we're actively working on a whole range of topics in agriculture, natural resources, and youth development. I just thought I'd highlight a couple that are in motion right now. And, you know, we talk a lot about the drought. I'm a member of your drought task force. And so the bottom three photos are from a project where we're looking at the effect of the conifer encroachment into oak woodlands, and those are soil pits where we're trying to actually quantify the amount of water availability that is disrupted by that conifer encroachment and get a better sense of kind of what the, the cumulative water demand is of those additional conifers. So that's a soil pit, and those are soil moisture probes, and that's one of our research projects. Top right is also quite interesting. That is technically in Trinity County, but it was in the, it was in a research project that we had, looking at the effect of that conifer removal on these invaded oak woodlands. So they're true oak woodlands that want to be that way, but the conifers got established. And on the left is a stand where the property owner had removed the oak woodlands, and we did some research there, on the, sorry, removed the conifers. On the right is an area where there had been no treatment. And then the August fire came through barreling, as you all remember, on that huge expansion day, and you can see the difference in mortality between the two stands. So in other words, the oaks were able to persist that barreling fire at midnight and survive because of the restoration work, whereas the untreated stand was a complete loss. So it's interesting to start to think about resiliency in terms of water and tree survival and kind of changing conditions. And so these are a couple of pieces that I think will be useful for help, for helping us think about what that, you know, kind of carrying capacity is of our landscape and how we might, you know, sort of fine tune some of these issues. Now, I thought I'd share two kind of, this is the nerd side of us, like, we are a group of scientists that do kind of sometimes fun stuff, sometimes really gross stuff. This is on the gross category. But I think of it in the frame of, in many respects, we're like the public health department, but for animals, especially pastured animals in, in the North Coast here. So Jeff Stackhouse is partnering with a number of folks on a couple of different projects. One is a dewormer trial, and it does involve a lot of long gloves, I'll say, and really trying to get a better handle on what are the worm loads that are in our cattle, and trying to understand their resistance to treatment products and, and get a better sense of kind of this, the species quality of the parasites that we have, and, and fine tune and work to get some better ability to manage and control those parasites. We, he also has a project that's looking at ticks, and you can see that cow on the lower right, looking at anaplasma infection, which is, is one of the contributors for sort of unknown mortality that often happens with animals, especially when we bring them from a pastured situation, an irrigated pasture situation to a wildland situation. You can have sudden and rapid death and not understand it. And it's often linked back to anaplasma situations. And what's interesting about it is that there is a vaccine for it, but the vaccine has been developed by Kansas State, and we don't have a California connection there. And so we're trying to build one so that we can actually see if they can better design that vaccine so it works for our specific issues. And so you can see at the background on the right-hand side, the level of presence of this, of this parasite. And so that it's really high for us here. So it's in the 90, 97, 42% in terms of the populations that we've been sampling. So it gives you a sense that we carry a lot of this background issue, and we're trying to figure out how to better design the health aspects to be able to mitigate this issue. And, you know, just as I wrap up, you probably hear a lot about this. It's, it's, you know, it's a sort of a flashy topic right now, but it's the ability to use prescribed fire for ecosystem and cultural and fuels reduction benefits. And Jeff and Laney and a couple other folks started the Humboldt County Prescribed Burn Association, as you know. It's gotten, got the CSAC Challenge Award, right? It's, it's a rather big deal. We've had the best burn window this, this winter. So that's, you know, there's a, there's a plus side to the lack of rain in this situation. Really, a tremendous amount of community members have come together, especially in Southern Humboldt, with 22 burns completed yet to date. And so it's just exciting to see those pieces coming together. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of happy folks being able to bring that tool back to their landscape. And I'll just share that that concept was piloted here in Humboldt, and this is the growth and expansion of the program statewide. So blue indicates these are other counties that have formed a Prescribed Burn Association. Orange are those that are in formation, and yellow are groups, are regions that are having conversation about it. So again, you know, that idea of being sort of the test county and the idea of whether we're capable of, worthy of the investment, I think, you know, the models that we've been testing here have proven to be quite successful statewide, and the PBA, the Prescribed Burn Association, is another example of that. So I'll conclude by just saying, it is so good to be back in person. We're so grateful. These are all pictures taken really in the last couple of weeks of things that we're doing right now, workshops in, in the auditorium, field tours, research projects, the Master Gardeners, working with 4H, training classes in, in other locations. So I just want to thank you for sticking it out with us. And I feel like it's, you know, we learn a lot from each other, and I hope that we continue to provide the value that you all hope to achieve. And I get, you know, lots of good comments from community members about the kind of work we're doing, and look forward to continuing that partnership.
Supervisor Bone.
Yana, thanks, because I've, I've been to enough places throughout the state you show up at, and the respect you get from other counties, and the people asking you, how do you do that? Your own boss coming up and saying, she's kind of amazing, isn't she? And we, we realize that. And I think it was six or eight years ago, we were arguing about giving you $25,000 or something for a part-time secretary out, you know, but assistant out there. So I, I appreciate everything you do. Stackhouse is doing a great job reaching out and touching the community from Rangeland. Now he's, you know, doing the livestock, and, and you guys are filling so much more of the bill. And then the tie-in that our ranchers have done, I mean, some of them traveled on their own dime back to Kansas, it was Kansas, wasn't it? Should have been talking to them about the, you know.
Dean Hunt.
Yeah, Dean and then that group on their own dime on the prescribed burn and, and following up with that. So I think that's appreciated. The worms and the ticks might have got the fourth row back there to turn vegetarian, though. I'm not too sure, because they were getting pretty squirmy. But the idea of what we're doing for our, people wonder where their food comes from, and I think we probably supply more of the grass-fed. Even during the droughts, we're able to supply because of our, our, you know, weather. We're still be able to hold our grass-fed beef title and labels that we're in in other places. So I appreciate all the efforts that are made towards agriculture that you're doing.
Thank you. And we have Supervisor Madron and then Bushnell.
Well, thank you, Yana. Yeah, you have a rock star team. There's no doubt about it at every level. And I remember when Deborah Giroux started the Master Gardener Program, it was just something she was doing under her other program. Now it's its own program. So kudos on that incredible success. I hear people all over the community talk about it, and what they've learned, and how they then take that to teach others. So really great work, prescribed burn stuff. I mean, it's just, it's growing like wildfire. Oh, so, so just a lot of, a lot of congratulations there. And I didn't know the fact that UC Extension, Cooperative Extension, had started here in Humboldt. I'm not surprised, because as we know, as they say, as California goes, so goes the country. Well, as Humboldt goes, so goes the state, right? So thank you for your hard work.
And Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could email me that presentation. It explains a lot about what you guys do, and it's helpful for me. Just today, it was helpful for me. And then I want to thank your department for all the help with the burn, the prescribed burns in Southern Humboldt. I think it generated many 911 calls, but everybody seems to be, you know, realizing it, and we get, we're getting the message out. So grateful down there for the community. Very scared of fire this year, and it's a great program. And tons of our community members are just really getting involved and really are enjoying it. And also the work with Jeff. I've had opportunity to talk with him and learn from him, and especially with the, you know, the cattle stuff. And so I really appreciate what your department's doing.
Great.
And Supervisor Wilson, did you have anything to add? I see your microphone is turned on. I'm not seeing any hands, but at least I saw that.
Yeah, I'm here. My hand was up there for a second. Yeah, I added to everything that was said there, and, you know, yeah, all the programs have been very, very helpful. And I, I just want one comment with relationship to the oak woodlands, and they're not really, well, I think what we're seeing is that they really were not wild woodlands in the sense of, you know, we kind of think about it, that they're well-tended landscapes, and that we're just now relearning and learning from folks who knew, and finally, people are listening, that these are well-tended landscapes, and it takes a lot of work and effort to, to, to maintain those values and those food values and those food systems that they provide. And so thankful to your program to actually be on the forefront of the re-integration of those, of those traditional knowledge base, and, and really re-indigenizing these, these really important concepts and, and efforts. So I really appreciate that.
Well, I had Supervisor.
Well, I just, yeah, I appreciate that Supervisor Wilson, because I think she said something earlier about the carrying capacity of our lands, and we're finding out with these forest fires and everything else. We, in some places, especially in our national forests and things like that, we are far exceeding our carrying capacities for good, healthy forests. And that one shot you showed of, of the oak woodlands showed great, great separation, and we're not seeing that in the, in our national forests or our state forests. So I think the management and the carrying capacity of our lands and what you're doing towards that is, is creating, hopefully opening some eyes.
We'll respond to that, which is that carrying capacity is all about what we think we are carrying. And I think we're refocusing and re-under, you know, understanding what it is that we want to, what values we're trying to carry on the landscape. And so I think, I think we're all learning and we're all getting there, and I think that's what, what Supervisor Bone and myself are saying together. So thanks.
All right.
And may I close by saying to Supervisor Bushnell, I'm hosting a program next Wednesday in Garberville with the Garberville or the Southern Humboldt Fire Safety Council. And I thought I'd bring some brochures that Sabell Emmett and I put together this year, really written for kind of the home defense space for the rural property owner. A lot of the stuff we see looks a little more, you know, suburban in California, so we tried to make something with some local flavor. So I thought you might like to, to see those just for, for kicks. But I think that should be pretty well-attended, and it's interesting to finally be in the place where this, you know, the residents of Garberville are, are getting their, a sense of their own vulnerability at, at this time.
How many of those pamphlets do you have? Because I, I see those going out at, at, at Pearson's, or it's not Pearson's anymore, in Wichita Peck. I see it going in Orleans Market. I see it going in Honeydew. I see it going in Petroy. I see stacks of them, because people think they're defending their property, and they're realizing, no, you're not, not yet, you're not there yet. And we're finding out, people that do defensible spaces, and, and we try, we try to try to tell people, but it's just like Supervisor Bushnell said, we prescribe burns, we, we put it out everywhere we can. We're doing a prescribed burn. We're doing this, we're doing this. And then we get multiple 911 calls. So if we can, and if the county, the CAO's office or anybody else, if we can print those, and then we can get those out to those rural places of gathering, you know, the grocery stores or the Granges and stuff like that, so people read them and says, well, we can do that, we can do that, and, and use their fire safety councils at the same time to accomplish this, I think we'll have much better results. We'll have fires. We're going to have fires. There's no way around it, we're going to have fires. But we won't have loss of life and property as, as extreme as it is. And I think that, so I, and if you guys are involved in that, I'm sure that hits all the buttons, so.
We have many.
Do we?
Yes.
Could we get some here to the office that we could?
Yep.
We could, that, a box of them or something that we could start getting out to our.
You bet.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And we can post and do all that stuff. Thank you.
Okay, so I had Supervisor Madron, if I'm making sure I got it right.
Thanks, Chair. Also want to thank you for that estate planning workshop you put on a few years ago. A lot of people don't think about that with their properties and then they die and all of a sudden, half of it goes to the federal government, you know, for inheritance tax or other things. So really valuable stuff and just figuring out what the needs are out there in the community and then putting something together. So very responsive to community needs.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And I'm not going to ask the DA to wait anymore. Thank you for your patience.
Well, thank you. It's so nice to be back in person. Because we have had a few years off from this when we prepared it. We did sort of do a little bit, look back and cover a few years. I'm District Attorney Maggie Fly. I'm here with Assistant District Attorney Stacy Eads and Rochelle Davis, who I know everyone knows is really the brains behind all that we do and the DA's often, particularly with regards to the, the budget. If I just click and it's going to start. Thank you. Okay. And I did, I also, I appreciated people came up and thanked folks. And I can't say enough about the incredible work of the staff during all of COVID. We stayed open, just like always, and we kept the office staffed. We were trying to do some work from home, but it's obviously difficult with court and everything. So people were tremendous. So our current operations, we've got a number of positions. Basically, we've got the district attorney with all the attorneys. We have a chief investigator with law enforcement. We've got the victim witness coordinator with all of our victim witness advocates. And then we have amazing support staff. Some of our accomplishments this last year included our continued successful prosecution of homicide and other serious and violent cases, as well as the continued participation in the Humboldt County Major Crimes Response Team, public outreach, and then participation, and this is new, so I wanted to talk a little bit about it, but participation in the Northern California Coalition to Safeguard Communities. Our victim witness advocate, our crime analyst and our chief investigator participated in March in the kickoff of this organization. It's funded by the Center to Combat Human Trafficking. It's funds from the Howard Buffett Foundation. And it was founded as a partnership between sheriff's offices in Butte, Humboldt, Lake Mendocino and Trinity with the goal of protecting our communities through a multidisciplinary approach to prevent human trafficking and other violent crimes, dismantle transnational criminal organizations and mitigate environmental damage related to illegal cannabis cultivation within those five counties. And so the multidisciplinary team is not just the law enforcement, but there's partnerships with public as well as private agencies, victim service providers, and then community and faith-based organizations. I also mentioned there that we were selected to participate in a resentencing pilot program. We're one of nine counties in the state. And what happened was approximately three years ago, our legislators created a law that allows prosecutors to go back and look at possibly resentencing inmates who are in prison. So the idea is if you want to look at someone who maybe has done 20 or 25 years and has a significant number of years left, but perhaps has changed their life. So when I first heard about this, I indicated to the organizations called For the People that I wanted to participate in that to learn a little bit more about what our prison population looked like. But also because having done a number of parole hearings, you really find out that there are those who sadly haven't really changed their life while they're in prison. But then there are those who have really done amazing work, doing programs, getting educated, working to make amends for what they did. And perhaps those people should come up and be released earlier. With COVID, we were not able to really get going on that. And then last summer, our legislators decided they would actually fund this and that's why being part of the pilot program came up. So Humboldt County, and that's the DA's office, the public defender's office, and then the DA's office for services, is going to receive $845,000 over three years to, to go through this program. And what we learned, we just, we're going to, this week, meet with the people who are helping us go through our numbers to kind of see what our prison population looks like. But we do know as of now, we have 367 inmates in prison. Eighty-six are for first degree, second degree or attempted murder. And then we have another 24 that are in for voluntary or vehicular manslaughter. So what we see in our prison population is pretty, pretty extensively the serious and violent offenders. And then we've also, under accomplishments, improved our medical evaluation capability. We're taking some of our domestic violence survivors over to Redding. There's a specialist over there who works on issues associated with strangulation. And then he is working with us to help train our medical experts here to sort of allow for us to do more of that in Humboldt County. And then, as you know, we fantastically moved the victim witness and cast offices up to the fifth floor. And there's some pictures there showing that, as well as upgrading our witness waiting room. That's the bottom picture on the fourth floor. We've also been participating in mental health programs and working with the tribes to set up tribal court diversion, as well as we've almost completely got everybody signed and on board for the rewriting of our cast MOU to include more of the tribes. As, as has been mentioned, we sort of gave you an estimated budget summary. We really don't have enough information. We know that our budget should be a little over $8 million, but we just don't really know where we are. So this is sort of our rough draft. But we did want you to see we have, you know, basically general fund, but then we do see a significant amount in grant funding. We have a significant amount of Measure Z funding. And then we also see a significant amount in our state aid programs. Our grant support covers a number of positions in our victim witness office, most of that coming to us from the California Office of Emergency Services, the governor's office that provides that. And then we also have grants that fund our workers' compensation fraud and automobile insurance fraud. Both of those, we serve our county, Del Norte and Trinity County. And here is pictures of the amazing changes that we've seen on the fifth floor for our victim witness office and our cast office. And I can't say enough thanking our county recorder, Kelly Sanders, and all of her staff who put up with construction for years. And then as well as all the court or county staff that facilitated that amazing move. I'm sure you've received positive comments, but here are some that we've heard from folks who are visiting the victim witness advocates on the fifth floor. I know that early on, a woman was there who said, "Coming into this place makes me realize that you value me." And I thought that that was a really good way to sort of look at, having that nice facility for, for victims and witnesses of crime really makes a difference. Here's a breakdown of the initial contacts by calendar years. This is victim witness. They're amazing, all the contacts they have with victims and family members. You can see each year, it's, it's an incredible number of contacts they do on each case. And then this is a really key fund. This is the money that our victim witness advocates bring back to our community, to our victims and to our witnesses for the losses that they suffer related to crimes. And so this is all out-of-county money coming to our county to try to help folks get through that. Here's our child abuse team sitting in the beautiful new waiting area.
I think Supervisor. Go ahead.
Maggie, on the last slide, and it's just, it's a considerable 60%, 70%, considerable drop in 2021. Is that because state funding got tougher or was it the requests were?
Reduced.
Reduced?
What you're seeing is the effects of the pandemic.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Here's our child abuse services team in their brand-new space on the fifth floor. It's beautiful. And what I did want to say about our vertical units, we have a number of them in the DA's office, we're more than half-staffed with vertical prosecutors. So prosecutors who start with a case, take it all the way through sentencing and even post-sentencing. The child abuse services team has, we've increased staffing there, but we've also increased the level of experience. So the assistant DA and two deputy district attorneys that are assigned there are very, very experienced prosecutors, as well as the victim witness advocates and our investigators because we know how critical that is. And one of the things, you know, listening to DHHS and we think about ACES, one of our goals in CAS is if we do it right, if we treat these people well, if they have all the services they need, we can help with those concerns and hopefully make them into people who can move forward into their adult years with fewer of the problems that we typically see of children who have been traumatized. Here's a slide that sort of shows our trend in CAS interviews. And again, significant COVID effect, very, very concerning because we know it didn't stop occurring. We just know that when children are in safe places, whether it be school or sporting events or things like that, where they're with a trusted adult, they're able to reveal. And we lost that capability with, you know, schools closing and that sort of thing. And then here's our EVAS cases. That's our Elder and Vulnerable Adult Services Team funded by Measure Z. And as you can see, it started right around 2016, 2017, we started building. And then we watched those numbers go up and again. Little dip, but not significant fortunately during COVID. Here's our current caseload. We're at 503 felonies. And I'm very proud of the fact that even with the challenges of the pandemic, we continue to cut the number of pending cases compared to when I took office in January 2015. We took a picture of our discovery room. This is what we're trying to get out, week in, week out. And I really, we're, we're going to talk a little bit more about that when I come back to seek some additional funds with Measure Z. I'm really excited as all of the law enforcement agencies have gone to body worn cameras. We really support that. It's significant in how we prove our cases. We've used them in domestic violence trials. That's how significant it is. And what we know is that we have a higher volume because of that, of discovery that we have to get out to the public defender and defense counsel. So it's more intense, it's more digital. So we need to have a much faster way to transport it, Wi-Fi internet connection, as well as additional people to, to handle this responsibility because it really is significant how much more discovery we have when each agency goes to body warrant. And now we know the sheriff's office is, which we are very, very pleased about. And then here's our summary of trials going all the way to 2015. Kind of give you a little snapshot here. What we know, and it's interesting, you know, you look at the dip down in 2018, one of the things I was going to say is what we know is that we tend to do significantly better with serious or violent cases. And so as you can see in 2020, when we only tried felonies, we had an amazing conviction rate. In 2018, what we had was 19 felonies and 13 misdemeanors. So although our felony results were very, very high conviction rate, misdemeanors are much tougher. And so we see a little bit of, of drop with those. So what we know since I took office in 2015 is we had a doubling of the number of cases that proceeded to trial each year. And then the conviction rate has gone up in the last few years. Part of it is the pandemic effect where we were focused on the violent and serious only. But during the periods when we had limited access to court, we focused on those serious and violent cases. Our conviction rate is influenced by just a couple of factors. One is the seriousness of cases, but then also the experience of prosecutors. So as we've been building the office and retaining amazing, talented prosecutors, we now have a significant number that have five or six years' experience. Many have more years than that because they've come to us from other counties with experience. Our conviction rate continues to go up and you can see that from the graph. I want to say too that I feel very strongly that trials are sort of the currency of the criminal justice system. You have to be trying cases. And if you have a county that has only a high conviction rate and no losses, you've got to figure they're either not trying enough or they're taking really weak plea, plea negotiations. And we don't do that. We show the outcomes in that graph too, with and without hung juries. I do want to explain that hung juries, you know, if it's 11 to one for guilt or 10 to two frequently, then they turn into a plea of guilt to the charge that we had tried them on. If they hang differently than that, we, we talk about should we retry this case? Is there additional information or evidence we could present? You know, was there a witness we just couldn't get this time, but maybe next time we're going to have them? And then we calculate all that when we determine whether or not to retry them. So it's important, you know, to always evaluate your conviction rate with and without hung juries because obviously hung is not the same as an acquittal. It means you've got to sort of look at the case. Part of the analysis that we did in looking at our numbers, and this is something that we pretty much do annually, but I wanted to look at it over the years. What our analysis shows is that our conviction rate reflects that following a trial, the person is convicted of more than the defense would have accepted during plea negotiations more than 90% of the time. And that's why trials and being willing to go to trial is so significant. Our current goals, we always want to continue our collaboration with law enforcement and county information technology to complete the electronic report submission. We're really hoping to improve that process. We want to continue to go to trial as justice demands. And we want to keep including trials that address crimes that set the stage for violence. For example, driving under the influence and carrying concealed weapons, both knives and guns. Because what we know in Humboldt County is far too often, we're seeing homicides related to those, specifically those areas. Now I'm available if anyone has any questions?
Any questions? I think you did a pretty complete presentation. Supervisor Bushnell?
I don't have a question per se, but I think this will be your last budget hearing. And so I want to say thank you and I'm sad not to get to work with you in the future. And as myself, you know, I used, I was part of victim witness when I was in my younger days and I really appreciated it. And it was super important to myself and my children that we had that available to us. It would have been a different outcome for my family had it not. And so I commend you guys for all that you do, working with the people, working with victims that you have. And it's just so important for our county and the work is, is, it changes people's lives and I really want to recognize that.
Thank you. And any other questions? Supervisor Bone?
Fifth floor turned out pretty nice.
It turned out great.
And I just, and I think what's even more impressive than the environment is the work that comes out of there and the work that has come out of cast and, and everything that it accomplishes and, and represents. It is, if, save the children. And I mean, and then your success rate is far more reflective than what, what's up on the screen. I mean, we're putting people where they should be. We've had some horrendous cases come forward and you were able to manipulate the system and work with all the families involved at a cost benefit to the county, but at getting a just sentence in that. And I, I mentioned, this can be twice today, I've mentioned Sacramento, but with the way things are happening so easily and gun violence and everything happening is, it scares the hell out of me because we're seeing it again. We see more of it over this weekend right here, but besides that. So I think you've, I think you have set up your office into the future. I, like Virginia, are sad to see you, but I'm also very happy for you because what you've done to that office in the last eight years is monumental. And I know we're going to be able to move forward because you've left a, a good trail of this is the way it should be done. So thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. I was actually really impressed when you were showing how much the conviction rate and everything had changed since you've been there and, and all the work that you've done. And you will be greatly missed. Maybe you and I can do something after Will's retired.
I'm not going to miss you.
I'm not going to miss you either.
We're, we're going to come back for public comment all the time.
Okay. You could do that. Any other supervisors? I don't see Supervisor Wilson's off. Nope. Yes, no?
Add me to the chorus of thank yous.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
And thank you all. And I really, I can't say enough about how much we appreciate everything that was done for us to be able to move up into that safe, secure place on the fifth floor. That was just amazing. So thank you all for your support these many years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to human resources and risk management.
Good afternoon, board members. Thank you for having us. I think we have a PowerPoint to queue up.
All right. Is there a PowerPoint? There we go.
Hi, I'm interim human resources director Zach O'Hannon. Been here for a month, got it all figured out within one month. This is Michael Schrayer. He is our senior human resources analyst and our budget guru. So any numbers questions, you're going to talk to this guy. So human resources and risk management, obviously two divisions under our department. So human resources and risk management, obviously two divisions under our department. Very nice. We wanted to really focus on our accomplishments and our challenges. I've seen some of the other presentations today, and I think that you know a lot about our accomplishments and our challenges. So I didn't want to get too into the details of it and just kind of go broad strokes and then give Michael an opportunity to talk more about the budget side. Because I know especially with risk management being an internal service fund, there's usually a lot of questions about increases in the risk budget, and he can definitely speak to those. But starting off with our accomplishments, the first one you might look at and think there's been a lot of struggles with payroll, with the payroll transition. I actually look at it as a huge accomplishment for our department. We, we were able to maintain with very low staff, with no training, and had never touched this part of the system during this transition. And we still were able to get pretty much everything done, I think. You know, there's a lot that we're still learning, but I look at it as a huge accomplishment. It was somewhat of a stressful time for staff during the payroll transition. You could even say we're still in that transition period. But just, I just want to give huge kudos to all the staff in the HR department who stepped up and took on something that, you know, payroll is actually a very scary thing. You don't, you don't mess with people's money. And there's a reason why we all come here to do these things. Yes, we're public servants and we like the work we do, but if we can't pay our bills, then, then what are we here for? So I just, again, wanted to really highlight that for the staff in our department who are currently working on that stuff right now, hopefully hearing this in the background. This is probably another theme you've heard a lot today, COVID-19. The just ever-changing regulations, guidance related to in the workplace, there's, there's huge, very, it's, it's something that has divided us and in the workplace, you know, when it comes to Caloosa and safety regulations, those are very just, hey, there's a rule, we got to follow it. But I think that our staff very gracefully handled those struggles with, with the different feelings on that topic and stuck to, hey, here's the rules and this is what we have to do. And we'd create resources, and then the rules would change the next day, and then we had to change them again and answer all the questions about those resources that we didn't even know yet because they just changed yesterday. So I look at that as a big accomplishment, and I know there's probably more work there to do and there'll be more changes, but I do see that as a big accomplishment. This is a really big one, completing negotiations. I will say that your board made this a lot easier than it could have been with the very, very healthy increases for all the staff. I think all staff were extremely thankful for that. Negotiations are, can be very difficult, and it's a difficult time in our world. People are stressed with COVID and housing, and now gas is $6 a gallon. And I think that, you know, offering up those big pay increases across the board made negotiations really easy, but again, it's still a really hard process to work through. And I'm really proud of our whole team for getting that all done with all of our groups. At this point, we have all of those done outside of department heads who are still under their compensation plan until September. So that, that, we'll, we'll have to engage that soon, but for all of our represented groups, those are all done. And then one of the things stepping into my new role, you know, I've only been in this, again, for a month as the interim HR director. So again, I have it all figured out, right? One of the things that I've learned, because I've been in human resources for almost five years now, is there's a lot of room for operational procedures to be set up, foundational learning, really. Our department is comprised of a lot of folks that don't have a breadth of human resources experience for many, many years. We have a lot of folks that are stepping into this as their, at this point in their career. And so one of the things that I've recognized is that we didn't really have a really strong training regimen, strong procedures to hand to a new employee and make them feel confident in their job. So I look at that as a huge accomplishment that we're continuing to work on. And it actually ties a lot to the, that first accomplishment with the payroll transition. We've had to create a lot of those because we essentially were working kind of from, from the ground up. Did you have any questions about that before I moved on? Moving on to challenges. So it's kind of funny, the first accomplishment is also kind of our first challenge. So the, and human resources information system is what HRIS means. I've really, I think I've mentioned that in other meetings. I've really tried to separate the two. The payroll transition is, you know, payroll is paying people, but there's also this front end of that where there's all this data entry that has to happen to ensure that on the other side of the system, it is paying people appropriately. That's what I'm super proud of our staff for, for jumping and doing. However, taking on and absorbing those activities when all of the positions that used to do that moved over to the auditor controller's office has had an impact on non-HRIS or payroll-related activities, recruitment, ADA, compensation, classification work, you name it. Essentially, anything that, that human resources or risk management does has been impacted by that. And, you know, that's something that we pride ourselves in being able to, to get these things done in service departments as quickly as possible. However, you know, the payroll function is so time-sensitive that that really always kind of takes precedence. And so that, that has impacted our ability to keep up on, on all those other things. Another challenge is the use of consultants to maintain our operations. We've spent a fair amount of money, and I'm going to let Michael talk about that a little bit later, on consultants. And they have really kept human resources afloat with the payroll transition and some of those other areas. We are really looking forward to pulling some of that back and not having consultants working in such a processing capacity and in more of a expert consultant capacity to help us upgrade processes and make our systems, systems more efficient. Another challenge is lack of strategic and process improvement activities. And what I mean by that is because we're so stuck in task-based processing, we have a great deal of work we could be doing in, in policy development and being strategic with our departments. However, when the workload of what we've had to absorb with the payroll function, it hasn't allowed for those opportunities. Those things take a lot of time. For example, one new hire in, in the financial system could take anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour to put into the system, which doesn't sound like a ton, but in theory, you would think it shouldn't be that hard to put one new hire into the system. If you have 20 to 30 new hires, that all of a sudden has become someone's complete job for, you know, maybe multiple days to get that all done. So that, that is what has taken away that ability to really be focusing on more of that strategic planning and process improvement stuff and more of, you really need to just focus on the task at hand. And then again, the challenge, that all kind of leads into staffing levels. We've talked to you about this before. That has been a theme since I've worked in the department under, you know, the prior interim director, the director before that. We have an organization of anywhere from 2,000 to 2,400 employees. We kind of fluctuate between that. Right now, I think our FTE level is...
1965 roughly.
1965 right now, and we have, I think, 13, 14 staff in HR, including some limited duration positions. So we're, we're pretty far under what the standard should be to be able to provide those services at, at a sufficient level for all of our departments. And so that, that just kind of bleeds into that, that additional challenge, especially when taking on those additional tasks that we had to when the payroll transition occurred. So we don't have a ton of budget requests. We, we definitely understand that we're in a, a financial situation that doesn't allow for a great deal of spending. One of the requests that you will see from our department is, is some money for, to continue those consultants. I'm saying we're trying to pull them off, but they are keeping us afloat. And it's not just for our department, it really is for all county staff. These consultants that we're working with, we've, we've heard their names in other meetings, Koa Hills, Shaw HR. They're the ones that when, when something really goes awry, we can step, lean on, and they're able to get that employee the paycheck when they haven't gotten paid or underpaid because they have that expertise and we're still sort of gleaning that off of them. Some of the other things, and it speaks to the staffing, with these additional duties, there's, there's been a massive increase in influx in just inquiries from staff. And a lot of that is much more front, front office administrative emails, phone, mail, and that pulls staff away from doing these really technical things that they're having to work on. So that's one of the things that we would be asking in, in this year and years to come is, is more clerical support in our front office. And then one of the areas that, as, as the human resources director now, the interim director, I've, I've really noticed is the risk management side of things. Really, we have spent, as a county, I think, gosh, again, I'll let Michael speak to the numbers, but just so much money on liability and not really assessing risk. I've talked with our CIO about that as well. We really need to have a much stronger risk assessment sort of program because we could be mitigating a lot of these costs that we have with attorneys and claims being filed and even just staff time lost having to, to deal with some of these things if we had a really strong safety program. As well as, for example, I'm, I'm still a little sweaty from running around the courthouse with our, with our, the fire drill, you know, that's something that we need to, to work on. And that's with having a strong risk management department. Those are the sort of things that we should have in place. So some of the things that are needed there are more technical staff to let the analysts that are working in our department do more of the analytical work around the changing regulations and keeping us in compliance. And then even having more analysts to actually be doing that, that research work and actually assessing where are our risks and how can we mitigate them. And this is where I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Michael to talk about the actual budget.
The fun stuff. Well, thank you for having us present in front of you. We basically are in charge of nine different funds, one general fund, eight ISF funds. However, they are all tied directly to the general fund since the ISF is funded, you know, theoretically by the general fund. So it really does have far-reaching aspects. We are going to start with our, whoops. You're already ahead of me. We're going to start with our first, our HR budget. Currently, we now, you have allocated $2.3 million to our budget for this current fiscal year. However, new general fund allocation is down to $740,000. That's a drop of nearly 70%. A lot of that is tied to the consultants that Zach talked about. We have nearly $840,000 that you have approved throughout the year to pay for outside consultants. Because of our staffing, allocation levels are so low, we are utilizing outside sources to help fund this. We have not seen a general fund increase since two years. Last year was 1.4, which carried over from the previous year of 1.4. Moving payroll out did decrease our allocation by about $540,000. However, a lot of those responsibilities of pay-related items have stayed within our office, and now we have less staff to accomplish those goals. So we've taken staff to continue doing pay-related items off of other things that HR is requiring, as Zach mentioned, dealing with PPAFs of new hires, separations, items like that. Please interrupt if you have any questions as I go through. So you can see the professional services fund. Beginning of the year, I did talk with Ms. Hayes about last year, and we did plan ahead slightly, and we did get a budget, initial budget approval of $220,000. However, with various items with needing outside consultants related to the payroll transition as well as the ADP, we have allocated $831,000. Projected end of the year will be a little over $1 million in costs, just because of various tasks that we do not have enough allocated bodies to handle at the current time. Even with the ARPA funding of three extra staff that just came on, we are still severely under-allocated for what is generally required among a, quote, "business of our size," 2,000-plus employees. We are very optimistic that we're going to try to par down the outside consultants within our reach, down to about 100,000. But still, even with that number, we are still 500,000 under budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I do know that they are going to look at our general fund allocation again, so those numbers may change, but based on the information as of today, since the budget is due Monday, we are basing it off on those aspects. Currently, County of Humboldt, we have about 2,000-plus employees per pay period at this point. Since payroll's moved from HR to the AC and our allocated staff was reduced to 12 individuals, we have two open positions. So currently, we only have 10 allocated individuals hired out of 12. We do have three ARPA and one Measure Z employee. But even based on these numbers, we have an average .6 FTE per 100 employees. Industry standard is nearly 1.03. So based on industry standards, we should have close to 20 to 24 allocated positions to HR and risk to serve this county. It has far-reaching goals. Being under-allocated has ripple effects throughout the county and our ISF funds. We've seen increased cost in investigation costs, increased litigation costs because we do not have the staff to handle some of these risks, which also spread out to increasing our primary workers' comp costs and our general liability costs, which have skyrocketed over the last two years, which I will get into in a few minutes. The board has approved nearly $1 million in contracts with outside firms. Primarily, these are just four firms over the last, I've been here not even a year, and I've just seen four firms that have been the majority of these money. If we allocate more individuals, this money can stay in the county. We have employees, and hopefully that can lower the costs for the county as a whole. So average employee to HR ratio is for, we are 1,000 to 10,000 full-time employees. Currently, we have 2,000 employees, but we are 16% understaffed. So we are anticipating about 2,400 employees. So if we do a 1 to a 100 ratio, that does give us ideally 24 allocated positions. Currently, we have 12. Even with the ARPA funding, that's an additional three, but that will disappear in three years. Ideally, is we start looking at allocating three new positions per year. So in three years, when the ARPA funding disappears, we are fully allocated or at least closer across industry standards. Our ISF funds, these are the, more of the sub-funds, these are the seven sub-funds. The main fund is risk. So we have employee benefits, which is vision and life insurance. We have our workers' comp. We have our liability, medical plan, dental, unemployment insurance, and then purchase insurance, which is our miscellaneous, like med, mal, pollution, cyber, et cetera. So the County of Humboldt has had a significant two-year increase in insurance costs, which has been mainly outside of our control. Looking generally between the costs of our workers' comp, liability, med, mal, we've had 168% increase in outside costs to our insurance premiums. This has all been pushed off into our regular departments as they are responsible for paying for this increase. So this is where it hits the general fund. This is outside of any of the department's control mainly. This is all outside market forces, and we are just, we are part of it, and this is what we're required to do. The biggest increases, of course, are our liability, our general liability, which are up nearly 100% in two years. So our insurance carriers, Prism, they're the ones that are, we utilize to get us our government... So our insurance carriers, PRISM, they're the ones that are, we utilize to get us our government insurance. They send us every quarter an estimate, which we utilize to guess what our premiums will be come June 30th to allocate to the departments. In two years, you can see the general liability is up 21% from last year. And then our property program is up another 35% from last year. Again, these are just across the board. Market liability, we assumed a 10 to 30% rate increase and they're just sending it to us. So these are outside cost increases that the departments can't really mitigate. Now, this is based on our salary and as we know, we've just increased our salary by mainly 9% across the board. So this will continue affecting our rates going forward, especially in the workers comp. Since those rates are based on our estimated salary for the county. You can see the increases in the primaries worker, primary workers comp. We're up nearly 23% from last year to this year and 15% in the excess workers comp. Our medical malpractice is nearly up 52% just from last year alone. These rates will continue to increase, especially workers comp as we start having more of the COVID liabilities coming onboard. And as the cases start working through the system, workers comp will start increasing to start paying out all those claims. So we are not anticipating being able to stabilize at all. So workers comp, this is, you can see a general breakdown. Last year's allocated budget that we determined was 6.6 million dollars to the departments. This year is up to 8.4 million dollars, 27% increase across the board to each department. Liability insurance, as you can see, is up nearly 23% from last year. The other one that has had a huge increase is our professional and service fund, 2118. Last year, we estimated a little over 900,000. This pays for all our litigation costs, not judgments, just litigation costs, attorney fees, et cetera. We are currently at a little over $1 million through nine months in litigation, attorney fees. And it's anticipated to get to 1.4 million by the end of the fiscal year. These also include investigations. A lot of these charges can ideally be minimized if we do increase our allocated services and we bring more of the investigative and safety aspects into our department to help lower these outside costs. Because if we hire staff here, they are cheaper than using outside consultants. Our just hourly rates are just much lower than that. So ideally, everything that we do on increasing the allocation will have a ripple effect throughout the county's cost structure.
Supervisor Brown has a question.
Yeah. Michael, when you, when you do those, the hourly rate, so much smaller, do you average out back to the increased workers compensation rate for our employees, vacation, health, benefits, pers and everything else? Is that all brought into the equation of doing outside and inside? Because there's so many, we hear of, you know, staff that's off for six months for, you know, truly stress related and things like that around here, I, you know, I fully believe. But is that all averaged in there and how do you do that? So, because I, you know, I understand the hourly rate when you do it that way. But I mean, when you look at the overall hourly rate?
Well, if we have, I, what I'm saying hourly rate is if we have an employee that's making a base salary of 75,000 a year, plus all the benefits of the county, that hourly rate compared to a lawyer or an outside investigator that's making, billing us 250 to 500 dollars an hour, that's where I'm comparing those two rates. It's cheaper to have an employee do some of those things and then use the investigators and lawyers for the higher level stuff. We can bring a lot of that stuff back onboard to our department at a lower rate and achieve the same results.
Okay, thank you.
We had a major increase in purchased premiums. We had a nearly 83% across the board increase in auxiliary insurance costs. So this definitely affects all of the various county departments because they are going to be unfortunately responsible for these increases based on their general fund contributions to pay for them. Majority of these insurance are Med Mal, property, cyber, pollution, crime, performance bonds. A few of these insurances are dedicated directly to the various departments that utilize them. So Med Mal goes to D H S S, airport, to airport, insurance for the sheriff goes to the sheriff, et cetera. So they're not, everybody is sharing in them. That's basically it.
Wow, thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Lot of information. I love your, your, your big.
It makes it easier to share information instead of looking on the computer screens.
So, any questions? Supervisor Bushnell?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Thank you and thank you for making it very easy to understand, kind of. It's a lot and a very nice presentation.
Thanks.
And Zach?
I just wanted to add, I know that was a lot of information and a lot in the brass tacks. We've gotten a lot of questions from departments about the increased insurance costs and risk costs. So that's why I felt it was really important, not just for your board, but for departments to be able to see. You know, a lot of this isn't, isn't something that we can really do anything about when it comes to these insurance premiums. The risk pool, PRISM that we're in, they try to negotiate the rates the best they can for us. But, coming back to some of the points that Michael is making, those costs we can't mitigate, but maybe there are some areas where we can limit our liability to decrease those costs, which are also costs of the department. So, yeah.
All right, Supervisor Madron?
Thank you Chair. Nice presentation. Thank you guys. Boy, understaffing, I mean, it's been a real big issue across the whole county. And HR, auditor controller, many of the departments, D H H S, Sheriff's Department. Recently with the raises, I know that's starting to help, right? We're just starting to see some turnaround on that. But these are some really big divides in terms of, you know, what we need. At some point in the near future, I believe there's a report coming back on the payroll options and things like that. And at that meeting last month, one of the things that I request, and I believe as a board we agreed, is that it'd be nice to get a report on all the things our consultants have done for us. For instance, some of the work that was being done was to create a manual so that all departments would be absolutely clear on what they needed to submit along with various requests. That's not so much for your department, but it is for every department, you know? The more we can institutionalize these things, that way, everybody knows what is expected of various actions. And it's not, well, who am I going to be dealing with today? You know, and what's their opinion of what's required to put in? So, I'm really looking forward to that information coming back to us in regards to, what do we pay for, what do we get out of it, and what are the action items and next steps to, to really take advantage of those huge investments we've made in consultants, you know, for HR, for A C and other things. So, but anyway, good work. Thanks for taking it on Zach and appreciate your help with the numbers. But boy, some big gaps there. Really big stuff that we're going to be struggling with as a board, no doubt about it. So, thank you.
All right, and I don't see Supervisor Wilson, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just, I just appreciated actually, just on minutia, which was just the emphasis on the transitioning with relationship to in-house workforce, even though that's hard to do. It's, it's clear, I mean, it's nice to have those sites and understanding and seeking those efficiencies. So I just appreciate that.
All right, so, thank you. At this point, we'll bring the sheriff and coroner, sheriff coroner presentation. I know we do have a PowerPoint. We've got the sheriff and Regina.
Do you have my?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be coming up as soon as you're ready. And there's the clicker.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you Board. I appreciate the opportunity to, to come and address you all regarding budget and, and where we are with the sheriff's office and where we want to go. And I have what I refer to as my CFO, Deputy Director Regina Fuller. And so she's worked well with the C A O, human resources and everyone trying to, trying to get to the bottom of the budget. And some of the things we'll point out here in the budget presentation is some of our concerns and some of our hopes going into the future. So, really appreciate it as far as that goes. And, I think we're ready to launch. Oh. No, that's, that's someone else's presentation.
Just, just, yeah.
Let me go ahead. Med Mal, property, cyber, pollution, sorry. Liability. No, no problem. Thank you. Excellent, thank you. Excellent, thank you very much. First off, I really appreciate the board this last year on negotiations and recognizing some of the things that we try to tackle with, with increased salaries and benefits for our employees across the board. Really appreciate that. And I know that now we have challenging times because of a lot of the raises that were given out last year. And I just want you all to know that.
Time's up apparently.
Yes. Has it been three minutes already? Yeah. So I'll try to be quick. I know it's late in the day. So, we'll go ahead and get going. So one of the, just a heavy graphic here, just to kind of highlight some of the things that we do here. 2021 at a glance, you know, as you all know, we're, we have 350 employees, 116 sheriff's deputies, 109 correctional deputies. You know, we have a lot of different responsibilities at the sheriff's office. And, you know, what makes us unique at the sheriff's office is our people and the service we deliver on a daily basis. So some of those things that we do, we have 6,600 inmates that are booked every year, mostly males. We've arrested over 1,800 people on the streets, issued 766 citations. We process 1,300 animals at our animal shelter. With our drug task force, which we manage, over 100 pounds of illegally, or by illegal drugs seized and destroyed. We wrote 16, or 6,000 crime reports, responded to 48,000 calls for service in our dispatch center. And we had over 17,000 deputy initiated investigations last year. 338 coroner death investigations, 214 restraining orders served, and over 10,000 pounds of vegetables grown in our swap farm. So there's a lot of things that we do at the sheriff's office and a lot of the stuff really goes unnoticed. But we just do it every day as a part of our, our normal job. Year in review. So right now, we don't have a good, I would say, a snapshot of where we are this next year. We're still processing numbers. There's still a lot of things that we have to, numbers we have to solidify before we can put a budget together. And, but this is kind of just a review from last year as a template for moving forward this year. As you know, we're the biggest draw on the general fund. We take about 29 million, 30 million dollars in general fund money and Measure Z money to support our over 50 million dollar operation here at the sheriff's office. We do a lot and, and we, we, you know, with close to 50 million dollars, there's a lot of things that we're responsible for. Sheriff's operations and the correctional facility take up most of that budget. But as you know, the animal shelter, courts, coroner's office, the different programs that we have, you know, does round, do round out that budget. And feel free to stop me anytime if you had any specific questions. The sheriff's operations, as you know, we, we take about 16 million dollars of general fund, but it's a 27 million dollar budget unit. We do patrol, major crimes division, airport security, the marijuana enforcement teams, courts, SWATs, crisis negotiation team, mobile field force, bomb squad, dispatch. We have our administrative support, civil division, K-9 program, special services. We run our concealed carry program too for issuing C C Ws. We also manage the drug task force. And one of the other things that we do as a part of operations, we partner with tribal police and do reserve program with three tribal police entities, Hoopah, Urock and Blue Lake. This year as well, is we started a cold case unit. And where we are highlighting about 50 cold cases, homicide and missing persons cases. We put two extra help, former detectives and a former lieutenant in charge of the cold cases, processing those and trying to find, and work with the families and friends and also witnesses on trying to, to close out some of these cold cases. And they are making some headway on those cold cases. Sheriff's operation patrol activity, you see we're spread out between the main station here in Eureka, our Garberville Station, McKinneville, Willow Creek, and also we have two contract cities, Trinidad and Blue Lake. And, and those kind of round out all of our numbers. Most of our call activities are out of the Eureka area and McKinneville area. Our custody service division takes up 11 million dollars of the general fund. Its budget is 17 million dollars. We have 109 correctional deputies. We have an average daily population of 280 right now. That's significantly less than pre pandemic. We were hovering around 400. But through the pandemic, we had to reduce our population and we still have a quarantine unit. Which means everyone that comes into our, of our facility and they're staying, they have to stay in quarantine a certain amount of days. And then once they're tested and cleared and they clear quarantine, then they can go to a general population or our secured housing unit. And so that in and of itself has limited us in our ability to get to our capacity. So we're hoping as the pandemic wanes, that we can reduce our quarantine time or to do something that, that we can, you know, test more, making sure that, that COVID stays out of the jail.
Virginia, could I?
Yes, please. I was just trying to locate to make sure Supervisor Madron apparently went back to Zoom. I was just trying to keep track of everybody.
Sheriff Consul, what is your capacity in the jail?
417.
Thank you.
Yes. So, one of the programs that we want to highlight in 2021 achievements are, four housing units have been retrofitted to ADA. We are currently still going in our ADA retrofit. And so we can become ADA compliant in our correctional facility. We moved to a video visitation format. So you can do in person video visitation or video visitation. And it's something that's been great for the families and, and for the inmates. We also have body worn cameras that are now enhanced to highlight, to basically keep track of, of all the activities within our correctional facility. It's been a big, great program. We also continue to expand our jail based competency treatment center. So we have more and more incompetent to stand trial cases that are going through our court system. That is people that are declared incompetent. And so it's our job to work with the state hospital trying and, and regain their competency to go to court. We've expanded from six to eight beds and I believe the state hospitals want to expand more if we have the capacity. So, and we're seeing the numbers continue to rise. We, I think we have over 30 that are waiting to get into this unit right now.
So how, how is it, I mean, that was, that's only been up and operating, what, maybe a couple of years?
Yeah, a year and a half.
Yeah, so, so is it, is it doing?
It's doing well. I can't imagine what we'd be like today if we didn't have it. Because the state hospital's been impacted, it's been closed several times due to COVID. And those people that are incompetent standing trial, languishing in cells, is not the most healthy environment for them. So we've worked with the state hospitals and, and worked with our partners at Well Path to try and figure out the best avenues for them and this is a great unit.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And so we're very, very happy about that. We also have new digital camera surveillance throughout the whole, inside and outside of the, of the facility. And it's, and it's hands to our ability to do our, our job. Custody services, one of the highlights of our, of our correctional program is our sheriff's work alternative program. So these are the low, low risk offenders, people that are not serious and violent and that are eligible to get out on our swap program. Where they can work outside of the facility. And one of those, you know, I guess we have 10 locations up there, animal shelter, our sheriff's farm, Hoopah Foods, different schools and then different county buildings. And, and they are able to perform labor jobs. And they work an eight hour day and get credit for a day inside the correctional facility. And so it's an outstanding program and you see at the swap. it's an outstanding program. And you see at the swap farm, we've just continued to grow there. Not only are we raising pigs and cows and chickens now, we also have a ton of vegetables that we're growing out there. As you see, there's, you know, 10,000 pounds of vegetables that we use to feed our correctional facility.
Supervisor Bushnell?
What do you guys do with the produce and the animals and such? Eggs, all that kind of stuff?
So what we do is, is some of the produce is, most of it's used for our correctional facility to offset food costs. We have given it away to the senior, Senior Resource Center. We also have the ability to sell some of the animals, the pigs and so forth, for FFA and 4H projects. And so it's a partnership we've had with local schools and 4H, and it's actually been very, very successful.
On your list, could you, could we put that back up? Thank you for that. What is other? 560 hours for other?
That's a good question.
You can get back to me.
Get back to you. Those are every other category there. Because so sometimes, you know, there are people that can contract with us or ask us, and you know, hey, you can do 20 hours and clean up here or there, or other departments that ask, you know, for additional support. So-
Supervisor Bone?
Thank you.
I think a lot of that is recreational facilities throughout the county. I know you've, I've, I utilize the swap program. I know that McKinneville, Lindley-
Well, anyway.
Others.
They mow our lawns.
Yeah.
Did you mention the, and I'm trying to think, the number, I was trying to think. I heard the other day that 85% of all the pork consumed in the jail is provided from the farm. And the only 15% is processed meats. So-
That seems about right. Absolutely.
And I think, well, that was a number I heard from the farm.
Yeah.
And I know you guys have done tours of the farm. And somebody wants to see an idea of people doing good stuff and how much they're providing. Because I mean, they're also providing beef for the farm and other, so I mean, it's a, it is a great, the farm is a great program. Just no F's.
It's a great program because it also, it gives people the ability to, again, work with their hands, do a hard day's work, and get some sweat equity out of it. And you know what? A lot of people walk away from it knowing that they have a sense of pride of what they did that day. And, and you know, it's a great, it's a great thing. It's a great program that we have in our county. I'm happy that we have it. And we're only looking at more ways that we can expand it if, you know, we can find the budget and that kind of thing to work with it. So.
I have to say, if I may, I've heard from so many younger people, especially DUI, they go to the swap program and they really get great relationships going there. They have long-lasting friendships that come out of there. And with your staff there also, they are, they just really relate to it. And it's, it's not funny to me, but it's great to say, they loved swap at the farm in Fortuna. And that's really great to hear. Not that you want them to go back, but that they really got something out of it.
That's the key there, is like them learning something, but also learning that they can do it. They're there, reporting sober, and they, again, they're learning something. And they actually get to grow something and see something grow and process that. And they think they can bring it back to their own houses.
Well, they also say how hard it is and they don't want to go back.
Yes. Well, some, yeah, absolutely. Some do, definitely do that. Yes, yes. Physical labor. All right. So next slide, we're going to talk about our Office of Emergency Services. As you know, Ryan Derby and his, his staff of two have done quite a bit of work over the last couple of years. And very, very proud of the partnerships we made within the county and the state, and really have done a phenomenal job with emergency management in general. Last year, we had two serious activations. One was our Humboldt Winter Storm at the end of last year, as well as the Knob and Monument Fires. And so some of the projects we've worked on is our Zone Haven evacuation mapping. As you know, that's a really, really great program. Know your zone. And we have our restricted area access pass program for the agriculture producers. We're a part of that drug, drug task force, the drought task force, and auxiliary communications team, disaster animal response team. So all those things are again vital for emergency services. And we're happy to have great partnerships there at the OES. Also want to remind people Humboldt Alert is still active. Please sign up for Humboldt Alert. It's our way of getting mass notifications out to everyone. And we just had that tsunami test this last week, and it was very successful. Coroner Public Administrator. And these are the guys that, that really make a difference on a daily basis. And so the coroner's office is made up of a lieutenant that manages it, a sergeant that is the day-to-day operations, two deputy coroners, a deputy sheriff, and then our support staff there. And what's a key number to look at here is we have 4,000 volunteer hours that are part of it. So people are up there. We've fostered great relationships with a lot of volunteers. And this is hours that are saving the county a ton of money by helping with autopsies, doing various tasks around the coroner's office. We would have to supply, again, two full-time employees to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in order to support those hours. So-
And I have to say, they're very dedicated. I have a friend who's one in, I'm surprised that there are so many hours that are-
Yes.
Donated, basically.
Yeah. So-
Could you give example of what, I'm sorry, I guess it's my first time, but what can, besides doing autopsies, what would be some examples of volunteer hours?
So there's a lot of cleanup that has to happen within the coroner's office. And then just autopsies, every autopsy, you see there's, out of 338 death investigations, 211 autopsies were performed, and sometimes multiple a day. So they're helping the doctor or the pathologist, you know, do the autopsy, you know, by providing instruments and then cleanup and overall support. Sometimes there's two or three volunteers that are needed to do an autopsy correctly. And taking tissue samples and those kind of things. It's all very, very, very complex. But it's also, it's a very tedious task. And so we've had people that have volunteered for years and that, you know, they know exactly what needs to done with our doctors, kind of like an ER nurse, so to speak, that, you know, they're there and they're, and they can really make a difference in how the process goes. So-
Wow, I didn't know that. That's pretty amazing.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Supervisor Bone?
And with that, in the last year, I've had three or four phone calls from people that have had contact with the coroner's office. And they said how much easier it made the situation, the way they handled it, the way they walked them through it at most likely, probably one of the most darkest-
Yes.
-points in their life. And I mean, I can name them all off if you wanted. And they've almost, almost all in the last couple of years been named because they've gone up and beyond. So-
Can I just highlight that? Because I think it's, it needs to be highlighted. You know, you have Sergeant Barney, Charlie Van Buskirk, you have Trevor Enright, Chad Zek. These are four guys that are, that go to people's worst days. And they're there with empathy. They're there with compassion. And anyway, if the thank you cards-
All four of those have been called out-
Yes.
-to me personally. For them to go to that length to call me and tell me or email me, I just, just, thank you.
Yeah.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yeah. So we've had to experience things very, very personal to us. And, you know, it's hard not to get choked up because even I, even though I don't experience it, I hear it and I see it. And, and again, it's that compassion that you can't teach. You can't teach that. You have, you have it or you don't. And these guys have it overwhelmingly. And, you know, just, just last week with Chief Doberstein, too, it was communicated, Trevor Enright went above and beyond. So-
So I really want to say that unfortunately, I've had to deal with them twice with my family. And they were so amazing. And I thank them so much. Sorry.
No. Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate you saying that. And that's, that's what we, that's what we want. And that's exactly who, they're there, and that's exactly who we want, working in that very, very key position. Getting back to the presentation, our public administrator, I'm going to bring a report back to you, a department report regarding where we are with the public administrator. And that is a key function of the office and the coroner's division. And so we will bring another department report talking about that and us moving forward with the public administrator department. Animal Control is another great resource department that we have. They, I'm sorry, this is the-
I was going to say-
Sorry. This is fentanyl, okay?
I see you've got the animals.
We know, I didn't finish the coroner's slide, but we'll touch this real fast. As you, fentanyl has killed a lot of our people in the last year. 34 fentanyl-related deaths. It's a very serious issue. As we know, it's 100 times more potent than, than morphine. And we see this more and more. We had 13 pounds of it seized, 13 pounds, which a grain is, is, can be deadly. And we had 13 pounds that seized by the drug task force. This has now become the number one priority for the drug task force to seize fentanyl. And you all should know, fentanyl is being sold in an open market in San Francisco. So that's where it's coming from. And, and so we're having a really, really hard time with this and other counties' lack of, of-
When you say an open market, what do you mean?
I mean that people are selling it out in plain view. And we have people that, you know, are seeing this. And there's a lack of support from the district attorney in San Francisco. And so about not prosecuting these cases. And drug possession or drug sales are a serious offense. And fentanyl is killing our people. So that is something that we want to address.
I have a question then, following up on that. I mean, we're not the only county that this, that's having to deal with that, with the San Francisco early.
That's correct.
Well, maybe, maybe this is something we can elevate at least as a conversation.
Yeah, I'm willing to talk with you after this. Absolutely. Okay, animal control. Animal control has, we had 2,300 annual, animal-related calls for service, and 1,300 animals are processed in animal shelter. That's between three animal control officers and then an animal shelter manager. So they're all doing a whole lot. But also, again, we need support from our volunteers. And we had 6,000 hours from our volunteers at the animal shelter. And I'm really, really thankful of the partnerships we have with our community and the animal shelter because they do so much. They're out there walking the animals, taking care of the cats and dogs and making sure that they get loved on every day. So we're really, really happy about that. And then again, the compassion and the energy our staff put up there to the animals are pretty fantastic. If you need to adopt an animal, please go visit the animal shelter. It's a great place. You'll be surprised how clean, how orderly, and how friendly people are up there. And we'll make sure that we get you an animal. One of the things that Michael touched on, and I think it's really, really relevant here that we need to bring up today, is increased cost in workers' comp and insurance charges. And I want to just throw this out as an analogy here, or as a, as a graph, that you can see the rise that the Sheriff's Office had to take over the last five years. As you look at 1718, our budget was pretty stable when it comes to insurance rates, $1,800,000. You see, we saw a 17% increase in 1920, and then a 5% increase in 2021. Then what happened in 2122? 51% increase. We went from paying $2,300,000 to 3.5 million in sheriff's budget. And, and then this year, projections are, we're going to pay 4.8 million. That's 37 more percent than last year. I wanted to call your attention to the graph below. And the graph below shows our general fund increase. And then in 1819, we got a 5%. In 1920, we got a 4%. In 2021, we got a 5%. Last year, when we had, you know, a 51% increase in our insurance range, we didn't get a general fund increase. We had to go to the Board and ask that you cover, you know, some of our shortfalls here because we couldn't, we couldn't afford that. And you covered it one time last year. We're going to have to go to you again this year because we cannot afford to pay another $4.8 million out of our existing budget without getting an increase to our general fund. Right now, as you see, increase over the last five years, it's gone up close to $3 million. And our general fund increase has only gone up $3 million. So this is only for these two charges. Everything else has gone sky-high as well. Inflation has hit us all around. And so, so our ISF charges have gone up, and every other category has gone up. So it is something that we're going to need to work with the CAO and this Board to try and, and cover those costs because we can't, we can't do it. Some of the future needs. Some of the emergency projects that we were requesting funding on this year is a jail roof repair in our Phase Two. The other jail roof did get funded last year, but we have the Phase Two that needs to be funded. Animal shelter roof repair. And then we have an overrun in our ADA retrofit of our jail, 30,000. Some projects that are needed but are put on hold are the OES EOC expansion down in the basement, our dispatch expansion, McKinneville station remodel, main station remodel, and our coroner's office lab. Those are things that have been identified as a necessity that need to be taken care of. But obviously, if there's no money, those are put on hold. This year, we put in several Measure Z requests. And one was the radio infrastructure. That was a need. We have, you know, the, the $6 million project has now become a close to $8 million project. And, and part of the cost overruns is just retrofitting the existing sites. And Motorola advised us that we need another $795,000. That is one of the projects that has been prioritized by the Measure Z Committee as being funded for this year. So public safety radio, even though it's not, you know, it's not a boots-on-the-ground, it's something that's a necessity that's going to support a lot of public safety. Our crime scene scanner is another thing that we, that we need to get funded. This is something that, a laser scanner that we able to basically measure out an entire room through laser technology and plotting, so we can recreate crime scenes and document them for digital evidence to present in court. And it's, it's something that we would love to see funded. Bodied DNA testing. DOJ has a backlog of DNA. And you know how important DNA testing is to solving crimes nowadays. Every day, or every crime that we, that we have, we can only send three samples to DOJ to get DNA testing. And sometimes it takes months to get those tested. We have to contract through a private lab, and we had to do that this year a couple of times. And this right here is a service that we can pay for in advance that will provide us the ability to get DNA tested rapidly.
I have a question. And this was something when I was at a conference with NACO, the backlogs and date, date, not, well, and rape kits. Do we have a backlog in those? Or are we fairly caught up on that?
We are fairly caught up on our rape kits, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. But that has been a problem throughout the state.
There's a lot of places aren't, yeah.
Yes. Let's see. Compliance training coordinator. The state has, continues to put more training regulations and compliance regulations on us, both on, on the correctional facility and our operations. And, and training is essential to reduce liability. And how we're going to reduce that liability, and hopefully that liability insurance goes down, is by having a coordinator full-time doing that job. And that's what this, this ask is, is having a compliance and training coordinator to assist us with that function. One of the things that is a priority that you all know about is a consolidated dispatch center and dispatching for fire. That is something that we want to be capable of doing if county fire is to go out to contract and go somewhere besides Cal Fire. We couldn't dispatch for them because we didn't, we don't do emergency medical dispatching. This $132,000 dispatch training gives our dispatchers the ability to, to have the equipment available and the training so we can do emergency medical dispatch. When someone calls us and they have a medical issue, instead of just transferring them to the ambulance, we can actually walk through the emergency with them. If they're having a heart attack, we can go point by point of what they can do over the phone to help the person that's suffering from a potential heart attack. You know, so $132,000 potentially to save one life, I think is, is money well-spent. One of the things that I want to touch upon is Measure Z in general. So Measure Z, as you know, this is a, I think, seven or eight years we've had it. And this year, with the reduction of Measure S, I think it's really a priority that the, the Board prioritize county spending for Measure Z money and really get back to the root of what Measure Z was about. Public safety, fire, and roads. Really prioritize that, prioritize that with the county, and make sure that does happen. And I'll put a plug in here for the DA. They have a, several positions that are part of Measure Z that are essential for prosecuting digital evidence. And we're going to body worn cameras- prosecuting digital evidence. And we're going to body worn cameras here in about two to three weeks. And it's going to be imperative that they have the staffing to process all the evidence that's going to go towards them. So cutting 10% salary, it has been something that we're working with the CIO about. But with all these raises you guys you guys just put forward, the goal was full staffing for public safety. And if you have, if you don't fund those 10%, I have to cut positions. And so it's positions that I have to cut that are not mandatory. So I'm mandated by law to have a jail, to run courts, to have an investigative function, so the detectives, and a coroner's office. Those are my mandated functions. And so the first thing that has to get pulled is patrol. And and so right now, I'm spending patrol overtime for our our correctional facility. And patrol, because we're full-staffed on the street, patrol doesn't have any really any overtime to do right now. And the full staffing is contributed to the raises that you provided. And so we're very, very happy that patrol is is doing very, very well. But again, if we're caused to cut 10% out of our budget next year, number one, we can't do it without laying off people. And some of the people we would, you know, lay off or reassign was our, some of our MET team, our rural law enforcement, our deputy recruitment, sending people to the academy, would likely go away. And then prioritizing correctional staff. And some of the projects swap, even though it's a great program, it's it costs money to operate. And so we would have to reduce the program as much as possible to make it even out. We couldn't expand dispatch services, future K-9 program, and like I said, the deputy recruit program. This is an example of hiring is our number one priority. Correction deputies is the current current priority. This is our vacancy rates, essentially. Last June, we had nine, we were a 9% vacancy rate, and now we're at 23%. 9% to 23. So that is something that that, you know, we're experiencing in the jail. Even though they got a raise, it's still a very difficult job. I'm thankful to say that we're going to be hiring eight here in the next couple of weeks, which will be great. We're going to continue to focus on that. We have rapid hiring days that we're going through and working with HR and trying to get all those things taken care of. And that will wrap up our presentation.
All right. And just so you know, Supervisor Madron did go to Zoom.
Okay.
You've been battling some headaches up here. Any questions? Very thorough. Supervisor Bone?
Nice job, Regina.
Exactly.
Actually, Sam Cardis wrote a lot up.
You nailed it.
I just didn't know.
No, I, no, I understand. And I, and I, I appreciate everything you guys have been doing in your office. And I know the trials and tribulations you've been doing, and I understand with the sheriffs. And I, I know we're sitting here talking about doom and gloom, because we just heard that we're, we're not hiring deputies, we're hiring more insurance agents, or
Right.
paying more insurance agents. We're hearing all these different things. And then the idea is, we still don't know how much money we have or don't have. I mean, we may be, anyway, we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know. And I, and that's, you know, and that's sad. And there's no way you could put a bow on that and make it sound good. So I'm hoping for the better. I know you guys are doing everything you can to to respond to that. I know that with the eight more correctional people is going to be, I don't know what percentage that will drop it, but I mean, that makes, that's, you have 100, so that'd be about 8%, 9% drop there. So we'll get down to 15%. So, and and more coming. And I, and I think, I really appreciate, it's not from lack of effort, because I know you've, I mean, we were recruiting at the logging conference.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
I was impressed. You had guys out there recruiting at the logging conference. We had a booth set up. And in these places where, you know, maybe somebody is at that point, and it's not an age-limited job, you're right. I know you've hired people that don't want to work in the woods anymore, or just don't feel it's it's the best thing for them, and other positions. And it is a hard job. You and I discussed, you know, you're not going to, there, there is incidents up there. You do your job right, it's a good job. And you've set that jail up right with the configuration. But I just, when people think it's a young man's game, there's, I've known a lot of people that have started their careers over there at 50.
That's right.
And worked till 62, been really happy or more, and and been able to do the job and and things like that. So I think people need to realize that there are positions, you just, you know. And and you're right, the pay is better now. And and we can work forward to that, and there's chances for advancement. So I think, you know, the effort has been there on your guys' behalf. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pusnell.
Thank you. I'm sorry about earlier. It just kind of hit me in a wave. But I just want to say my thanks to the Sheriff's Department for your guys' role in the unincorporated areas of Humboldt. Southern Humboldt is one of the hardest areas to patrol, the farthest from the main station, and probably quite scary at times, I hear. Home for me, so not so much. But I really appreciate all the cooperation I've gotten from you, Sheriff Hansel, and your lieutenant, and the communication's been great. And my community has really felt it, the community of the Second District. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. It's a great team. I have a great team and deputies that are dedicated to the job. So I'm really appreciative of that.
All right. I don't see Supervisor Wilson's hand up. You're good. Thumbs up. There you go.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, great presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson.
All right. We'll let you guys leave, so Sean can finally come up. And County Council has to be here anyway, so.
Good night. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, Sean.
CA Hayes, I think probation actually goes before sheriff in the alphabet, but here I am.
I know. I was kind of wondering how that was working, too.
I was wondering, too. Anyway.
Sean compared to Billy, I guess.
Oh, it's coroner or sheriff. That's it. Which is backwards.
So you use that he pulled the coroner card? Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you for sitting there for so long.
It was good to see all the presentations, actually. I, you know, I learn a lot, and it makes me regret some of the things I didn't put in my presentation, give me some thoughts for next year. But yeah, we're here. I will try to make it brief, since we've all been here a long afternoon. I'm Sean Brenneman, the Chief Probation Officer. I'm going to talk a little bit about the probation department. The probation department is the Community Corrections Department for the county. We are focused on community safety through rehabilitation and accountability. Also, because we are officers of the court, we play a large role in the application of justice through investigation, court reports, and sentencing recommendations. So I'm going to briefly go over our projected budget, our various duties, and then highlight some projects and challenges we'll be working on the upcoming year. So this is our projected revenue for 2223. It is our best guess estimate. We haven't yet met with the fiscal officer of the of the CA's office yet, so we have some of this sort of up in the air. 39% of our budget is general fund. We separate it out, Measure Z as its own little category. The county has asked us to hold a 10% vacancy rate in general fund positions to offset Measure S suspension, the county's current fiscal uncertainty and raises. While the county revenue into our budget is going to be down this year, we have seen growth in the state revenues. Generally, they've been strong in AB 109 realignment, SB 678, Prop 172, Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act, YOBAG, Youth Offender Block Grant, and juvenile probation activities have all come in fairly strong. The other thing to note in regards to revenue is that AB 1869 removed the authority to collect probation services fees and some other county fees. The state has provided a backfill to that, and Humboldt County has not really determined how that's going to be dispersed amongst the affected agencies. So that might flow into our budget in some manner as we get closer to the final budget. What we spend our money on is basically salaries. So 73% of our budget is based on salary and benefits. The rest of the money, the mixed majority, is spent on service and supplies, which is running our five different job sites. And one of them is a 24-hour facility. And we do have money in client services rounding out the pie chart. So what that can tell you is that any cut into our revenue basically is going to come out in salary and benefits and positions. So the next couple of slides are going to be about adult services. And to make understanding of this graphic, the green are filled positions, the yellow are bacon positions, and the gray are unfunded positions in our proposed budget, because we've had to reduce some of our allocations. The first thing is court investigation. So probation is the primary investigating entity for the criminal court system. Following conviction, probation provides a detailed pre-sentence report to the court. The report outlines the facts of the offense, the impacts on victims, the person's life history, their criminal history, their psychosocial history. It applies sentencing criteria and makes sentencing recommendations. In addition, probation provides the court with a wide range of supplemental reports as people go through the criminal justice system. We have observed a increase in referrals for reports in the last few months, as the court has resumed operations, and we're now about 40 reports per month. In the first six months of this fiscal year, we filed 583 reports, with only 7.5 being late, which is a 93% on-time rate, which is good. We also, for people who are sentenced to formal probation, when people think about a probation department, this is what they kind of think about. We supervise people who've been granted formal probation for felony offenses in the county. So we apply a risk tool to those cases, determine an appropriate level of supervision, and then provide rehabilitative and accountability services. We supervise them in the field. We go out to their homes. We verify their residence, make sure they're not committing crimes or having things they don't shouldn't have in their residence. We work with them, developing a case plan to address their criminogenic factors, working on getting them to work, building pro-social activities, and making a better version of their lives. Also, we run the drug court program. That is a court program. It's a collaborative court that's 12 months in length, and that really focuses on felony probationers who have drug use involved in the commission of their crime. It is 12 months in length, involves intensive supervision, case planning, and substance abuse treatment. Also, the Adult Services Division contains the Community Service Work Program. This is for people who have been sentenced to community service work by the criminal court. It's usually misdemeanants. Historically, this has been paid out of community service work fees applied to the participants. However, with the aforementioned AB 1869, those fees are no longer being able to be charged, and this has become a county general fund project. I'd also like to note that Measure Z funds five officers in the adult field unit, which makes up 42% of that unit. Also, in adult services, we have realignment and pretrial. So in 2011, probation became responsible for the supervision of people being released from prison on post-release community supervision. Also, in the 2011 realignment, prison commitments that would formerly go to the state prison system were now being housed in the county jail. And as part of that sentence, their trailing portion of their commitment would be served out on something called mandatory supervision. So probation department has assumed responsibility for those cases. We have a special unit dedicated to it. It's being funded out of AB 109 funds. And it also supports the Community Corrections Resource Center, which is the next part of that slide here. And that is a day reporting center run in conjunction with Department of Health and Human Services. And it provides a one-stop shop for substance use, mental health, vocational resources, and probation resources. And finally, AB 109 also pays for pretrial services. So we operate a pretrial program with the jail, is intended to reduce jail populations. The program assesses persons booked into the jail and makes recommendations to the court regarding release. Persons placed on supervised release or supervised by the probation department, making sure they get back to court on time. Next, we have the juvenile hall. And as you can see, we have a large vacancy rate in the juvenile hall right now. The juvenile hall is an 18-bed, 30-unit, I mean, it's an 18-unit, 30-bed facility operated 365 days a year. It's brand new. It serves three purposes. We have, serve due short-term detention for youth who are arrested by law enforcement. So they're brought before us for law enforcement, and they sit there until we can find a safe place for them to go, or their case disposed through the juvenile court system. We also run the New Horizons Program, which is the second bullet there. And that is a six-month treatment program run within the detention facility in conjunction with behavioral health. And that is focused on stabilizing, treating, and reentering the youth back into the community. And finally, we have the Secure Youth Treatment Program, and that is a two-to-seven-year program for youth who have been committed by the court for adjudication of an offense listed in 707B of the Welfare Institution Code. Shorthand, this is the DJJ realignment. This is what used to be state youth prison that's being realigned back to the county. There are currently no youth in this program, but as I will talk about in our accomplishments, we spent a large amount of time in the last year developing the program with our community partners. The last two bullets are the methodology in which we use to interact with the youth in the facility, and those are nonviolent crisis intervention training, which is de-escalation and mediation. So we really focus on not going hands-on unless it's absolutely necessary, taking the time to really talk the kids through the situation and come up with a appropriate outcome. We also, in conjunction with the schools, are doing positive behavioral intervention and supports, which is, instead of identifying negative behavior, is really establishing expectations and boundaries around what good behavior is, and it's sort of acknowledging that as the kids do it. So that is our juvenile hall. Moving on to juvenile services, every police report generated around youth is sent to the probation department for assessment, triage, and appropriate disposition. The lowest level of disposition is diversion services. So it's a brief intervention for youth and their families to address behavior. It's intended for low-level offenses and those without significant referral history. We partner and refer to community agencies to provide these support in many cases. And additional diversion-level services that are included in this, we have someone teaching parent projects. We have an officer trained in that that teaches that to families. And our diversion officer attends school attendance review boards. We also, for more serious cases, refer those to the district attorney for filing delinquency petitions. And the probation department is heavily involved in the court process throughout the life of the delinquency matter. This includes disposition reports, court transports, disposition recommendations, and services and supports to the families during the court process. We run the Healthy Alternatives Program, which is a juvenile version of drug court, essentially. And that is run in conjunction with the juvenile court system. For the most significant and serious cases, we place youth in foster care, transitional independent living programs, and short-term residential treatment programs. There are an intensive set of laws and regulations around placed youth, so it takes a lot of expertise and time to get that completed. And finally, we provide wraparound services for families who are at risk of removal from their home or who are in placement. The Family First Prevention Services Act requires six-month of wraparound services for youth returning to the community. So moving quickly through this, we go to accomplishments. I didn't make a whole lot of bullets here, but I think they're just the most significant ones. First of all, I think I'm really proud of how our staff have handled the pandemic, and the fire, and the dislocation required based on the construction. So throughout these, I'm sorry, throughout the pandemic, a mix of changing rules, supervision, expectations, and processes, staff have been flexible and nimble. They've had to balance public health and public safety, assessing and reassessing how to respond each time the pandemic changed. In balancing all that, staff were able to get their work done. Our reports are on time, and our people that we're responsible for are being supervised and being observed in the community. Next slide there, I mean, the next bullet is development of the Secure Youth Treatment Program. So we were charged by the state through SB 863 to develop a county-level program for youth who commit the most serious offenses in the criminal justice system. Working with community partners, DHHS, the school system, College of the Redwoods, we had a robust discussion over 12 months to come up with a really solid plan. I'm very confident in the plan. I think we've developed a good one. We just haven't ran any kids through it. So as soon as we do that, I'm sure we'll find the flaws in it. But as it stands, it's really a testament to the existing relationships probation has had in the community, both with other departments and with community-based organizations. And finally, you know, I feel like the, it is only a couple of words there, but the transition into the new juvenile hall was a momentous task for our correction staff, moving the kids in the middle of a construction project while they were tearing down the old juvenile hall, trying to figure out how to move them around the facility, how to work all the bugs out when the doors didn't quite work and all that stuff. So they've been troopers about that. And
Plus, also during COVID, if I remember when we did the ribbon cutting, we all
It was COVID, the fire. I mean, there's a whole lot, set of tribulations that have gone on in our department over the last couple of years. At one point, our entire cook At one point, our entire Cook staff was out due to the pandemic, and so the sheriff was kind enough to allow us to go transport meals back and forth for a period of weeks.
How many? How many um, people are we housing at the juvenile hall?
I believe there's fourteen today. It's averaging about ten to eleven. A thirty-bed facility, but there's only sixteen rooms, so some of them are dual beds.
Okay, and, all right. And it's still not done yet, I believe, right?
It is actually completed. There are a couple punch list items, and the main issue is the probation building with the fire, which I'm no surprise I'm going to get to that slide.
I know.
Okay. So some of our opportunities and goals for next year is we're going to be expanding the adult pre-trial program. The state released some monies through the court to expand that, and so we're working with the courts to develop a contract, and we'll be coming back to you with that when that is completed. We're going to expand the Security Youth Treatment Program services with Humboldt County Office Education, the juvenile hall. We're looking at building a horticultural program on the site and also develop a culinary program. We're looking to add tablets inside the juvenile hall to access library services and media and their families, and also educational programming. We're going to pilot body worn cameras for our six armored officers, and we're going to be expanding juvenile community service work to include a supervised volunteer option. So this is our first challenge I wanted to bring up to you, and this is just, I mean, you've heard this over and over again, but this is our staffing issues. So this chart on the left is where our vacancies are within the department. So you can see that most of them are in the detentions program. That has resulted in us requiring probation staff, probation officers, to go work in the facility to make sure that the shifts are all covered. We currently have a twenty-two percent vacancy rate, actually twenty-three percent vacancy rate, and eighty of those are in in sworn positions, which have lengthier higher processes. I would be more unhappy and grumpy with the CAO's office around the ten percent vacancy rate if I didn't have a twenty-three percent vacancy rate. I'm kind of thinking that if I can get to ten percent by the end of the fiscal year, I will actually be doing fairly well. That's not to say I'm still not unhappy about it, as I am.
Yes?
Rex?
Sean, has a, and I see the bottom two are frozen and unfunded. So um, but I'm, but I'm trying to figure out, have you ever been fully staffed? I mean, I I keep hearing these numbers from the sheriff about fully staffed, and I'm I get the that we've never been fully staffed, but that's a number we 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 grab at, and so I'm just.
I I kind of think in my experience is that like a seven to ten percent vacancy rate is kind of how attrition works. I get I get really worried when I see, you know, thirty or forty percent vacancy rate in the juvenile hall. It makes it really difficult to operate it. But I think we're always going to be having vacancy rates. It takes too long to hire a peace officer. It's the county process, and then, you know, we have, we have to do an entire background, and then we have to do a psychological evaluation, and then we have to do a lie detector test, and then the physical, all that. You know, right now, it is taking four weeks to get a psychological evaluation done. So on top of all the county process, there's another four weeks on top of that. So every time somebody retires, it's going to be six months for us to replace that position. We're just never going to get caught up in a hundred and ten positions to do that.
Yeah. Okay.
And this was the last challenge. This is the fire that we had in October. It caught the northwest corner of our building on fire through all three floors. Is resulted in twenty-eight positions being displaced with either working in the regional facility, which is the detention facility that we vacated to save space, or the adult services building where Alicia is crammed into an office currently. This is going to be one of the primary aspirations of the next year. I I know that we're not necessarily driving this train, but it is something that I'm going to be pushing consistently with Public Works and with our partners to try to get this back so we can move into it at some point. Right now, the the abatement work is being done, and Public Works is developing a scope of work for the reconstruction, which is somewhat complicated because of the bringing it up to code, I guess. So there is all that.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
And we've come to an agreement with our insurance carrier that it will be funded. From what I understand, talking with county council, my, did I, and I guess you might not, you're not the county council I talked to, but.
Through the chair, I believe Prism has already fronted most of the money for the remediation. Of course, there'll be a process after that to get the.
Go after the.
Yes.
Go after.
There'll be subrogation claims.
Again.
So I'm not sure what costs will come toward probation department for this. I just know that it is a looming responsibility of something, something will come from this, I'm sure. So we're trying to sort that out and get clarity on it. And I think in the upcoming months, we will, as they develop the scope of work and they start working out, you know, what additions they need to do for ADA and that whatnot. And anyway, I'm going to conclude with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know it's the end of a long day. I'll leave it at that.
Any questions? Supervisor Wilson? You're good? Thumbs up or?
Two thumbs.
Thumbs up, two thumbs up.
Yeah.
They all want to go home.
He.
Jefferson needs to be quick.
Okay, we're good with that. So.
So Nikki, I have a jump drive. I only have twenty-seven slides, but I'm gonna click real fast.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation and all the work you guys do.
Thank you.
And you don't have to stay.
I'm gonna go.
Okay, you can.
All right.
I think that's a wise idea. All right, thank you, Sean. All right, yes, thank you. So we still do have public comment by the time we're done here. County Council.
Yes. Good evening, supervisors. I was going to give a brief overview and some accomplishments, and I do not intend to take too long. The Office of County Council provides legal advice and litigation support to your board, all county departments, agencies, boards, and commissions. One of the largest assignments for advice and litigation support is child welfare services and representation of that group. Attorneys represent child welfare services in all phases of juvenile dependency cases, including appeals. Another large assignment is the public guardian, and that's representation and conservatorship, court proceedings, and related REES and RIT hearings. Both these areas have seen a growing caseload over the last several years. There are currently three full-time attorneys assigned to CWS, and they split a current caseload of four hundred and fifty-eight cases. In addition, there is also an attorney exclusively assigned to CWS appeals, which are frequent and very time-intensive. There is also one dedicated support staff assigned exclusively to child welfare services. Regarding the public guardian, there are now two assigned attorneys that share a caseload of three hundred and sixty-five open conservatorship matters. And there's also been an increase in the probate conservatorships, which are more resource-intensive than the traditional LPS conservatorships that used to make up the bulk of the work. There's also another support staff that is dedicated exclusively to conservatorship matters. In addition, attorneys in the office draft and review all transactional work for the county, including contracts, MOUs, requests for proposals, and updates to the county code, department policies and procedures. They also review all agenda items that come before your board. In addition, I have a, I have an assignment sheet of fifty-five specific assignments that I divide up between the non-CWS attorneys. These are the various departments that work for your board and specific assignments on specific matters such as bail bonds, et cetera. Attorneys also represent code enforcement with advice, warrant drafting, and litigation on administrative and court appeals. And the support staff within the office maintain the county code, provide litigation support to the public guardian and child welfare services. And I just wanted to say for the record that these staff work tirelessly, and they're the backbone of the office. Without them, nothing would be accomplished. I wanted to go through a brief list of accomplishments for the last year. First, the office has enforced laws and regulations by providing internal defense and obtaining dismissal of multiple civil actions against the county. I looked through and I counted six, potentially seven, in the last year that were handled internally. There was the successful dismissal of the longstanding airport litigation, which avoided a potentially, frankly, huge damage award and freed up the grant funding that is now flowing to the airport projects. My office was also responsible for resolving the final phase of the stipulated judgment between the AG and CWS. And I say my office continues to be centrally involved in collaboration and tribal engagement for developing new protocols. My office also helps by enforcing laws and regulations, by advocating before the court in various code enforcement matters, and state administrative hearings on human resources matters, including Cal HR and the Labor Commissioner. I did want to tie in with what Michael said. This is an area where I'm trying to clawback things that have traditionally been farmed out back internally. A lot of these administrative matters are now being handled internally. Traditionally, they had gone to Lieber and Cassidy, and I believe we can handle most of these internally and cut that cost. We've actively involved in the settlement agreement with the longstanding opioid litigation, which will provide the county a funding source for treatment services in the years to come. We provide timely advice and guidance on the increasingly complex interactions between mental health issues, incarceration in the jail, and implementation of Laura's Law. We've provided guidance and oversight during the transition, the recent transition period of risk management. We've secured workplace violence for standing orders on behalf of county staff, and we have, we negotiated a reduction of over four hundred thousand in the final closeout of the ADP contract. One other project I'm working on, we've been centralizing all subpoena responses through one deputy, which I believe is much more efficient for all the departments to have one point of contact for the numerous subpoenas that come in every week. That is all I had for your board. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I haven't seen Supervisor Drone for a while on here. I see he's still on the screen. Just want to make sure, see if he has anything he wanted to add. All right, Supervisor Wilson?
No, nothing to add. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Wilson?
I just, I just want to thank Jefferson for, you know, again, arcing us towards in-house representation. I think that's a good thing. I know that he's heard that from board members in the past, and so I just, I just want to thank, thank him for, you know, keep it in that trajectory. Thanks.
All right, well, this is at the point where we get to go to public comment on all these budgetary reports, if anyone is still with us and wishes to comment.
Nobody on phone.
Nobody's on. All right, well, we'll go back to the board. That's, there's no action to take today other than see you all again tomorrow, and we'll be back at this next Monday with the other departments.
Thank you, Jefferson, for the report.
Yes, even if you're leaving us, we still thank you for the report. Supervisor Bone, oh, I didn't know you were reaching for something. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I. I know, we just did. All right, with that, we're adjourned.